Good afternoon and welcome to the June 26, 2007, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members Draymond.
Here.
Quintero. Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Thank you. May we have your report?
I'd rather do the flag salute.
Well, let's see. Can I have an agenda if someone has a free one?
Yeah, I've got.
That's a good idea. Would you like to do the flag salute, Mr. Weaver, since we'll miss you next week?
Why not, since I won't be here the next two?
Okay.
Please join me in our flag salute.
My flag salute is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Last week's invocation was dedicated to our fathers in honor of Father's Day and afterwards, I could not forgive myself for overlooking our recent graduates from our area high schools and community college. So this week, tonight, please join me in saying a special prayer for these wonderful students and their families on the eve of one of the most momentous occasions in a young person's life. Nineteenth-century American writer and philosopher Ralph Waldo Emerson advocated the following: Do not go where the path may lead; go instead where there is no path and leave a trail. Let us pray that our future community and business leaders will blaze trails and lift that torch that preceding generations have passed on to them. Let us pray that they will work to find solutions to the global, national, and local challenges which they have inherited. Finally, let us pray for and remember to give thanks for the light of knowledge and the lantern of education that continues to burn bright in our local schools and for the teachers, professors, administrators, and support staff who keep this flame lit and pass it on to each subsequent generation. Amen.
Thank you. Now may we have your report?
The agenda for the June 26, 2007, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 21, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
A 3A's agenda preview for the meeting of July 3, 2007.
Mr. McFaul.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week is actually, as a result of the holiday, a very brief agenda. There are no specific action items on the Housing Authority or the Redevelopment Agency. On the city council right now, there is one hearing that we're actually still evaluating if it meets the test of being able to be on the agenda next week. If it does occur, it is a hearing by the interim director of Glendale Water and Power regarding the adoption of standards in accordance with Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act, otherwise known as PURPA. That would be it.
That's it? Well, that'll be a welcome change to our... Yes, Mr. Se-
On the council comments, I'll deal with that issue.
Okay. The next item, please.
A 3B is proclamation designating July 2, 2007 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Who do we have? Ranger Hawk?
Yes, sir. I'll introduce these folks. Would you like me to do it now?
Yes, please, why don't you? And then later, I'll read the commendation.
Certainly. My name is Russ Houck, park ranger supervisor for the city of Glendale. To my right is Kelly Reitz, who's working for us part-time as a naturalist with the ranger section. And behind me is Jeff Weinstein, who is the trails coordinator for the city.
Well, thank you. Nice to meet you. I hope you're enjoying Glendale and our being... learning about our parks. And I know Ranger Hawk really runs everything. Once the pavement ends, it's Hawk territory. So I do have a proclamation, and it reads as follows: Whereas throughout the city of Glendale, we are fortunate to have thirty-six beautiful parks and recreation facilities, two-hundred-and-sixty-four acres of developed parkland, over five-thousand acres of open space, and countless recreation opportunities, which annually serve more than two million citizens and visitors; and whereas the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department promotes health and wellness and offers an array of fitness classes, sports programs, aquatics programs, recreational and competitive leagues, and provides parks, trails, and facilities for fitness and sports activities for all age groups and abilities; and whereas the strength of Glendale has increased through intergenerational recreational offerings for all ages that allow people to play and grow together while providing the opportunity for residents to lead balanced, healthy lives, achieve full potential, and attain satisfaction; and whereas the Parks, Recreation, and Community Department strengthens community safety and security and reduces juvenile crime while fostering young people's development and growth and productive adults through an array of after-school and seasonal programs; and whereas the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department provides outlets for community members to make positive contributions through volunteer services which are satisfying and rewarding experiences. Now, I, Aaron Najarian, mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim July 2, 2007 as Parks and Recreation Month. Congratulations. Thank you. Please say a few words. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, and citizens of Glendale, on behalf of the entire Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department, it's our pleasure to accept this proclamation. As you mentioned in the proclamation, our department is quite diverse in the number of clients that we serve. Each July, we select a theme to go along with July as Parks and Recreation Month, and this year, we have selected the great outdoors. We encourage folks to visit our display, which will be set up next Monday morning, highlighting the many pursuits in the great outdoors. And hopefully, that will inspire everyone to celebrate July as Parks and Recreation Month by getting out into the great outdoors and enjoying the many wonderful experiences we have here in the city of Glendale. I now ask Jeff Weinstein to step up to the microphone and talk about an upcoming program.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everyone that the city trails map is now online on the city parks website, and that our third public workshop dealing with the Verdugo Mountains Trails will be July 12 at 6:30 at the Spar Heights Community Center. And then in late August, we will begin our trail planning efforts for the San Rafael Hills and the Duke Magin Wilderness.
And lastly, certainly, enjoying the great outdoors comes with its risks, and we have prepared a brochure. This is a draft copy. These will be available beginning next Monday morning out in the lobby as well, talking about the hazards encountered in the outdoors. So we ask everyone to be very careful while they're out there. It's a very dry year, so fire is a serious hazard. Because it's dry, the wildlife are now coming farther down. We were seeing a tremendous number of rattlesnakes. You may have seen in the last week or so, there was a bear attack in Utah recently, and I believe it was Duardi. There was a bear cub in a backyard that didn't have too great experience with a couple of German shepherds. So there are hazards out there, and we ask people to take care, but by all means, go out and enjoy themselves in the great outdoors. I thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go off the menu, so to speak, and ask some special people to come forward. Laura Hipke, Ara Vartomian, Ann Arobio, Spencer Hemingway, Pearl Park, Herbert Clark, Laureen Johnson, Cole Johnson, and Sierra Kozakar. Please come forward. Thank you. Now, folks in the audience and those looking at home are probably wondering why this fine group of residents are before you. Well, every mayor gets to move into the mayor's office, and it's tradition for the mayor to decorate the blank walls. And it took me a little while to decide what I was going to do. And with the help of my wife Darlene, she came up with the great idea to highlight local artists from the community with different types of artwork and mount them on the walls. And each one of these folks before you is an artist, and those pieces of art are currently hanging in the mayor's office. And we just had a delightful reception and toured the art, and each artist gave a little background as to what their art represented. Did I forget Mike Morgan? Okay, Mike. Okay, whoops. Sorry, Mike. Hope he didn't leave. So I am here to extend my thanks to these local artists for contributing artwork to the mayor's office, and I think we have a graphic that will highlight some of the artwork that is currently hanging. And this is... Why doesn't each artist come and just briefly tell us what is done? Ara, this first piece is yours?
Although it looks very gloomy, it's supposed to symbolize hope. As you can see, the ship is burning. There's a moonlight shining right above it, which is symbolizes hope, and that's the whole point of the painting.
Thank you. Thank you, Ara. Let's go to the next one, and I'll sort through these. Let's go to the next one, and I'll sort through these commendations. Anne?
Yes.
This is yours. Tell us about those wonderful creatures.
Well, I just love painting animals. It's one of the things I love to do, and I just happened to paint that in just a session or two. And I had just gotten home, and Darlene called me, and I said, "Well, sure, you can take the elephants." So it's just a fun thing for me to do, and I've been doing it most of my life. And I have scads of paintings that are just sitting there in the back room. But anyway, it's fun. It's a fun hobby.
Thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
Here's your commendation.
My pleasure.
And let's see the next one. The next one is by Randy Johnson. Here to accept the commendation is Laureen and her son Cole. Randy is receiving the commendation posthumously. Unfortunately, he passed away two weeks ago, but we're very proud, and he... Laureen, why don't you come forward?
Randy was quite a special person. He was a chemical engineer and a lawyer, and he would just paint in an hour and do amazing flowers, and he was the most beautiful person that I've ever met in my life. And he enjoyed painting, besides being a great dad to Cole, and we're going to miss him very much. And he loved Glendale. He loved all the parks. And I was telling Ara he loved to play frisbee golf in all the parks, and he would take Cole to the gardens and paint flowers, so...
And this young fellow is Cole.
This is Cole's twelve-year-old son.
Thank you very much. Here's the commendation on behalf of Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cole. And the next piece of art... Oh, this is a funny one. Did Pearl Park make it? No. Pearl Park is a second grader at Fremont Elementary School, and this is a portrait of her art instructor. The art instructor happens to be my wife Darlene. So I guess it looks like Darlene. Certainly a caricature. And thank you, Pearl Park. We will have your commendation for you. The next item of art. Okay, Mike Morgan is not here. This is donated by the Crescent Valley Historical Society, and Mike Morgan in particular. I believe the photographer was C.D. Johnson. And this is a picture of the Glendale Hotel, later to become the Glendale Sanitarium, not to be confused with the birthplace of Dave Weaver. This building actually is located... was located on the site where our current police building is located, right on Broadway, next door to us here. It's a wonderful example of... I'm not sure what type of architecture, but Victorian? And apparently, the leaders of the city thought that having such an old-style structure would discourage new investment in Glendale, and it was torn down, unfortunately. But this is a...
Long time ago.
Not us. So this is a wonderful reminder of the type of structures that we used to have... grand structures that we used to have in Glendale. And the next one, please. Here we go.
This is our California state bird, California quail, photographed in the El Arbeleda Canyon right across the street from Ara's house in my backyard. And it's typical of our chaparral habitat, and used to be much more common than it is now, but with the destruction of the habitat and predators, it's kind of rare. But it's our state bird, and probably the prettiest state bird in the country.
Thank you, Herb. That's Herb Clark, who is a nationally renowned naturalist and ornithologist, and is an author and photographer, and does great work, along with his wife Olga. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you very much.
And the next one, please. Great. This is a favorite of ours.
The utensils that I used was crayons, markers, and colored paper. And it took me two weeks to make it. My name is Spencer Hemingway. I go to Balboa Elementary.
Very good. Thank you, Spencer. Congratulations. That's for you. And the next one? This is a favorite.
My name is Laura Hipke. This is a painting titled Anniversary. It's a portrait of an old couple who've been married for many, many years, and they're very much in love, and so they trade places being upside down with one another.
No, no. This is a large item, and it hangs directly behind my desk, and we have discussions as to whether to picture... whether I'm head over heels over my wife, or she should be head over heels over me. But I... The artist rules on that, and her... It's mounted just the way she would like it, so...
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, and the next one?
Hi, I'm Sierra Kozakar, and I made this when I was eight years old for my mom for her birthday. I made it at my art class in Mount Namu Elementary.
Thank you. How old are you now?
I'm ten years old now. Yeah, it's been two years since I painted it.
Is that water for you?
Actually, it's acrylic, so that's all I know how to paint with.
Thank you very much, Sierra.
You're welcome.
Take your hand. Here's this. I'll give you a... Whoops. Can you run to your brother, too? Thank you very much, everyone. If you'd like to see this work in person, please make an appointment with Linda Patrick, and I'll be happy to give you a tour of the new refurbished artistic hip mayor's office. Thank you, everyone. I'm very selective with my artists, Mr. Starbird. Okay, thank you for your indulgence, everyone. The next item, please.
There were no appointments? Okay. The next item is city councilor staff comments.
Let's start with the city attorney. He looks serious today.
He's supposed to look serious every Tuesday. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it gives me great pleasure this evening to take a moment to introduce the most recent addition to our staff. As you know, a number of months ago, our code enforcement attorney, Mr. Early, left us for another city. We were fortunate in our search to find a new code enforcement attorney to find Doreen Margerossian. Doreen started her educational career at Hoover High School here in Glendale. Somewhere along the line, however, she made the wrong turn and went to UCLA, where she obtained a bachelor's degree in English literature. It certainly was some lack of guidance, perhaps, but nonetheless, we still saw some very positive qualities.
According to you?
That's right. I know there's a second perspective to that. From UCLA, she went on to Southwestern, where she received her J.D. in 1999. She has been an extern with the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. She externed for a Court of Appeals Justice, and since 1999, she has been in private practice handling both criminal and civil matters. We're very excited to have her onboard as our new code enforcement attorney. We think she's going to be an excellent addition to the office, and I think she's going to serve the community well in balancing the needs that we have through code enforcements to ensure that the quality of life for this community remains at the high level that it is. So I wanted to introduce her to you this evening and welcome her here.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Council members, thank you very much. Staff, I wanted to say thank you to the city of Glendale for allowing me to come onboard. As a twenty-four-year resident of Glendale, I'm very excited and honored to be working for this beautiful city, and I hope to make my city proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, I went to Glendale High and USC.
Oh, three strikes rule here, that's one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I just wanted to wish my wife a happy birthday. I'm sorry I cannot join her and my daughter-in-law at dinner tonight. I have a feeling we'll be here till about midnight, so happy birthday, my dear, and we'll celebrate in Hawaii next week. Thank you.
You're so romantic, Mr. Weaver.
That's all I can do.
Guess it's not everyone who would give their wife on their anniversary the opportunity to be without them.
That's nasty, though.
I'm kidding, Mr. Weaver, of course.
Better be, because I gotta tell you what you said.
Happy anniversary to you.
Not anniversary.
Birthday to your wife, then.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, it's that time of the year when everyone living in hillsides or even the Verdugo woodlands, et cetera, better start cutting their... the grass that's grown over the winter and all of the brush, et cetera. I spent Friday working with the Glendale Youth Alliance. That's an organization, a nonprofit, that's affiliated with the city of Glendale, and they did a wonderful job of cutting the hillside and pruning and so forth. So I recommend to all of you who live in hillsides or live in heavily brushed areas to contact the Glendale Youth Alliance here in the city of Glendale, and they'll give you a very reasonable rate, plus you'll get to employ some of Glendale's young people.
Just make sure you don't cut any oak trees in the process of clearing up.
No, no. They break out the chainsaws. I'm sure you...
That's right. Our new code enforcement. Yes, Mr. Yusefian.
I guess two of my colleagues are going to be out of town next week, and there's only one item on the agenda that could be kicked to the following item. I was going to be here, but now that I see that there isn't much on the agenda, nothing on... There's no study sessions, there's nothing on G.R.A., there's nothing on housing. I'm letting you guys know that based on that, I have some personal issues to deal with, so I'm going to take that opportunity to do that. So this way, then the staff doesn't have to meet and have a meeting for no reason at all, you know, for one item.
So that we would fail to achieve a quorum, and that would cause... Mr. Starbird, how does that?
Well, the city clerk can note that we've been notified that we'd lack a quorum, so people will know not to come down for the council meeting. The one item was a public hearing, references a PURPA hearing, and that needs to be completed by August 7, so we can reschedule that to a date in July sometime.
And that may not be a hearing that requires actual public notices. Because it's under federal law, normally federal law doesn't use public hearing as a term of art like state law does, so...
If it does, we should probably bring it back to the next regular meeting.
If it does, we could just renotice it.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, we'll just have it back in the next regular meeting.
So that won't be a problem, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know ahead of time on that. Any other item, Mr. Yusefian? Mr. Draymond?
I have a few items. One is related to the status of a proposed park. Is it on Maryland? Related to Pacific BMW in some way. Is it possible to find out where we are with that?
Sure. We'll give you... We can bring you back a written report or give you a status report after the meeting. I'm not sure at this moment. We've had discussions with Nick Lamb regarding that. I don't know exactly where it is, but we'll get your status report on it.
That would be terrific. Secondly, I wanted to... I had the opportunity this last week to go on a very interesting tour. Now, some of you are going to think, "How could that possibly be interesting?", but I'm going to tell you, it really was. I had the pleasure of going on the tour of the Grayson Power Plant, something I've never done before, even though I've grown up in this city. Fantastic place. Absolutely amazing, and my thanks to Larry Morehouse, who was... He's got to be the city of Glendale's version of Heulhauser. It was terrific, and he was terrific. And between his input and our assistant city manager, Bob McFaul's input, and Ramona Buegg and others, it was a great tour. But something I discovered on that tour was that this power plant has never been dedicated. It failed to be dedicated because it opened on December 7, on Pearl Harbor Day. And so I wanted to ask of our city... And so, I wanted to ask of our city if it is possible to belatedly have a dedication for the Grayson Power Plant, at which we can revisit the history of the plant and also make it an opportunity to invite back any and all of our GWP staff and employees from throughout the years. And make it a reunion, celebrate the history of, of Glendale's production of electrical power and finally dedicate this power plant. Don't all jump up and down at once. Okay, nodding will do. No.
Black on the wall?
Reception, some refreshments.
That would, that would memorialize this history and, and make it something more than just a presentation of a plant.
Entertainment, guest speakers.
Absolutely.
The governor.
Abs, the governor.
Mr. Starbird?
GWP, for a number of years, you should do an annual open house. And I, we haven't, that hasn't occurred in the last couple of years. This sort of thing might be a good opportunity to resurrect the open house again at GWP and have that be one of the centerpieces. It's also an excuse to, to bring out the In-N-Out Burger wagon, which they used to do for the open house, so...
Well, anything that'll bring that in, boy.
That rings a bell, I remember the In-N-Out Burger.
It's been several years since they had, they used to do it every year and invite the public to come in and see Grayson Power Plant and it's been several years since they lasted that, so this might be a good opportunity to resurrect that.
You can almost see the history of our city from various vantage points of that building. I don't mean just literally visually see it. You can see the evolution of the city's history through the evolution of, of the production of power in the city. It's an amazing, amazing place. So I'd like to ask if we can pursue that and, and in the near future. And then lastly, I'd like to ask about the, the status of 2,700 Sycamore. I'm getting lots of emails about a property that apparently has a chicken coop that is now inhabited by human beings. I guess you'd file that under the category of code enforcement. So who knows, maybe your first visit will relate to no chickens at home, but a family apparently living in a former chicken coop on that property.
You know, there are people who are kind of chicken.
I know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, there is one other item. Also from a resident asking about a missing one-way only sign, traffic sign. I think that's an important one to get back there. It's on Thompson Court in Montrose. We're having vehicles coming the wrong way down Thompson Court. On to Honolulu Avenue because the, the one-way sign was taken down for some repairs and never found its way back.
Okay, I think we'll take note of that.
Our city engineer just did.
Very good. I have a couple items to bring up. The first is inviting everyone, seniors and those who are not yet seniors, to a seniors' on-the-go lifestyle festival. This is gonna be held at the Glendale YMCA at 140 North Louise on Friday, June 29th, from 9:00 AM to noon. And this event will be a great opportunity for seniors to learn, to learn ways to stay active and healthy and have fun doing it. Many of the city departments will be at the event, as well as private vendors. And we're gonna have the Glendale Venice Hospital there, the Central Library, Secure Horizons, GWP, Visiting Angels Living Assistance, the Glendale Police Department, Physicians' Associates Medical Group, Glendale Parks and Recreation Department. And there will also be a presentation on pedestrian safety for seniors. So this is overall gonna be a very fruitful event. Learn how to stay active, healthy, energetic, and safe on the streets in Glendale. For more information, you can call 548-4844. Glendale YMCA, Friday, June 29th, 9:00 AM to noon. And the mayor may make a special appearance as well. If that won't bring him in, I don't know what will.
Would that be the newly redecorated and hip mayor we heard about?
Certainly. The next item I'd like to request is, those of you who are watching our study session today realize that we are gonna be dealing with many different items on our capital improvement program. From parks to pools to historical locations, libraries, firehouses, et cetera. And while we're on a roll with those study sessions, once, once those are concluded, I would like to continue with the, the study sessions, perhaps once a month. And deal with a presentation, request a presentation from each department or each division of the city. And have them address their functions and their quality of life issues as they relate to our residents. We have questions that come up all the time and a, a constant reminder of the type of services that are provided by each department, be it police, fire, traffic, et cetera. We'll, we'll go on through the list for the, the pertinent departments. And give us a chance to discuss and ask some questions in detail and also give folks from the, from the community a chance to see what's going on in each department and ask questions or make suggestions on their own. The, the last thing I have, and you folks maybe saw the press release for it, but the list of tenants for the Americana have been released. I'll just go through it quickly, there's quite a, quite a few. And as you see, the Americana is growing. We're, I think, up to the second deck right now, pushing for that end of March, early April dedication. We're gonna have Anthropology, Armani Exchange, The Art of Shaving, Avita Lifestyle Salon, PCBG Max Azria, Chico's, H&amp;M, Juicy Couture, Keels, Lacoste, Lucky Kid, Lululemon Athletica, Marciano, Martin and Osa, Planet Funk, Play, Barnes &amp; Noble, Barney's New York, ooh, Brunello Ristorante Italiano, Callidora Spa, Concept 5, Crew Cuts, Divine Boutique, Free People, J. Crew, Kate Spade, Michael Stars, Pinkberry, the frozen yogurt outlet that's causing riots in West Hollywood, Sur la Table, The Cheesecake Factory, True Religion. Stay tuned, folks, it's coming. The Americana is coming. You can almost, you can almost taste it. And that's it for my comments. If there's nothing else from staff at this point, we'll move on to the next item.
Next item is consent items including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Do I have?
There's no cards.
I have no, I have no cards, sorry. I didn't see any. I have no cards, would someone like to move the consent?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman?
Howard.
I'm assuming the motion includes a correction to the minutes, the same correction that was offered up this afternoon?
Yes.
Including the corrections to the minutes.
Detective Drayman?
The correction of the name for Mr. Drayman.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian? Mayor Ngerian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item number six is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision in the matter. May be referred to, the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
Thank you. I have... Mr. Yusefian?
Before we go there, I just wanted some clarification. I read the staff report in one of the items and Mr. Starbird just reminded me on 5E1, even though we voted for it, has to do with Stengel Ball Field. Staff report is telling me it's only lighting in here, it says ball field is being changed? I meant to pull that one. I talked to staff, sleepwalking.
Was trying to get your attention.
Want to reconsider that? Okay, is there a motion for reconsideration?
Move the consent calendar.
Move to reconsider 5.
Reconsider 5E.
Second. Okay, let's have a roll call on the motion to reconsider. 5E.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Ngerian?
Yes. Do we need to read 5E into the record again?
5E, please, into the record.
5E is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding Stengel Ball Field Light Standard Replacement and Turf Renovation. At E1 is motion amending the existing contract with Electro Construction Company in amount of $396,800, inclusive of 5% contingency, $18,717, and 1% project management, $3,743 for design and installation of light standards.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
This was a confusing one because it talked about the turf and we were looking at that as one potential site for astroturfing and putting in soccer fields possibly. If it's turfed, we replace it all, we're certainly not gonna tear it out, put astroturf in. So it didn't look like it was budgeted or whatever in there, but I asked staff to take a look, because we want to leave the door open for our decision whether we want to or not in the future. I'll close it off.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weaver mentioned this to me and I conferred with George Chapchan. This project does indeed include renovating and replacing the turf, not with artificial turf. I'm under the impression that there could possibly be a layout for soccer field and that the turf part of the project can easily be separated from the lighting part of the project. The lighting's outside the outfield fencing. So if you wanted to consider that, I'd recommend that you separate the turf component. Direct staff to proceed with the lighting component, separate the turf component. We will then bring back the discussion of the turf component when we discuss the CIP and the various soccer field alternatives with you.
And, Mr. Mayor, my question is, I'm, I'm agreeing with the city manager, so city attorney, how would you, how would you modify that motion?
We would not need to modify the motion. The motion is 5E1 solely deals with the amendment of the contract with Electro for the lighting. All you need to do is indicate by consensus that you'd like to have the matter of the turf come back separately at some future date.
I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, and, and the motion prepared was probably also under the impression this was just lighting. The staff report, George Chapchan, you hear?
Yeah, because the staff is...
The staff report mentions that this project includes re-turfing and I presume that's what the dollar amount is.
Actually, not according to my discussions with staff. My discussions with staff, the electro construction contract is for the lighting only, which includes the project management fee and also the contingency. And Mr. Chapchan can correct me if I'm wrong.
So this was just noting the future work that's anticipated at Stengel, but it's not part of this contract?
Right, what we thought is, as they're digging up for the conduit, what we'll do is we'll, we'll laser grade at that point. Our guys will do the work. So the, the money in that contract really is just for Electro.
It's just the lighting.
The other work will be done internally.
Then, then if that's your interest, we would hold on the turf work and, and bring it all back at a later time. So city attorney, city attorney is correct.
Captain Jever, look up that overlay that you said you had.
I do, yeah, we do have, we've got a slide of that. We, we actually did that and I think we presented it during the CIP budget process where we did an overlay of a field on Stengel Field. We can get 100 yards by 55 yard soccer field on that.
And that could be subdivided into three small soccer fields, not counting right field.
Right, now we are looking into the use of that. I have to tell you, Stengel Field does get used heavily by baseball year-round. It may make better sense to do it up at the sports complex. Field one is larger.
They do baseball seven days a week?
Well, actually, you know, for instance, this Saturday, the, the field is being used from 8:30 to 7:30 by baseball. They have winter baseball, they've got summer baseball.
Mr. Mayor?
It is.
That's probably why we should hold the topic of the soccer field and take that up when you take up the other options you have for soccer fields. Part of, part of, probably part of the limitation on this field will be the use of the baseball players. We need more information on exactly what that is and, and how much use would be limited. But I think we're best just to bring the matter of the field renovation, artificial turf, back to you at the same time we bring back the CIP discussion on soccer fields.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian?
All due respect to the staff, you have a scope of work will include, and you have all the points. It talks about removing panels, installing service panels, lights, and so on and so forth. And then it gets grinding existing turf, leveling the outfield, reseeding, oh, resetting sprinklers for optimum coverage, re-sodding 68,000 square foot. So I think maybe we should remove the, the re-sodding part.
Yeah, I think what we, we failed to do is, is to mention that while we're at this work, we're gonna have internal staff work on it, so...
So, so that's what is going to be removed out of that? And the resetting sprinklers is gonna be removed out of that?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Starbird?
Okay.
It's, it's, the report, the report could have been clearer. The last sentence of the paragraph preceding that work says, "The park's maintenance staff will commence with the turf and irrigation renovation projects following the light standard replacement." So I, I, like Bob, I thought it was all part of the light work. So the mo, the motion is good just for the light work and we'll hold on any turf renovation until we bring back the CIP to you.
Move 7E?
Second.
Oh, 5E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Ngerian?
Yes.
And now it's oral communication.
Yes, number six, please. And you did read that into the record and I said I had several cards. I have one request for priority by Dalida Corolia.
Good evening, Mayor Ngerian, council members and staff. My name is Dalida and I'm the owner of 702 East Glenox. Been married for 34 years and have beautiful, three beautiful boys. I am here to address the issue of my house and tell you enough is enough. Just because I've been quiet all this time, it does not mean that they are right. I'm here to defend my name and my reputation. My philosophy in life was that you can never fight kindness. That's why I've been quiet all this time and I've been kind. I don't know the legal definition of extortion in this state, but there is no doubt that we have been victimized from our neighbors. Like Mr. Stela Coria said last week, "A statement of one person is a statement of one person. Please do not put weight on, only on that person. Just because they have more time than the rest of us, it does not mean that they are right." As you all know, I'm not afraid to come and speak here every Tuesday, but between my business, my sick mother, my three boys, and my society, I truly have no time left. I have been a good citizen of my city more than 25 years. The way our neighbors invaded our privacy is not fair to us. If my friend comes and visits me, they take pictures. They take pictures of my housekeeper comes and cleans the house. They take pictures if the gardener comes. Took pictures when I was doing the remodeling and used it against me. They took pictures when I was moving to the house and used it against me. If I have new furniture delivered, they take pictures. They scared and took pictures of my 16-year-old son, a four-point student who was studying at home alone. They even stopped my friends and told them that we are bad people. They temper with my mail, they trespass on my property, they steal my invoices and they send it to the city. I spent over $80,000 for remodeling, city fees, and consultation fee. I want to focus only how much value I add in the neighborhood. I will show you before and after pictures when the time comes. Who are we kidding, Mr. Mayor? The whole street is commercialized. They make me laugh when they say it is a residential neighborhood. My next-door neighbors, right on my property limit, sees 75 patients every day. They knock my door, always confused by the doctor's office. My phone neighbor has limo service, the drivers and the cars are there every hour of the hour. Next week, we have the pizza man, the cleaner, and the florist. These people have hundreds of customers every day. The city didn't want our initials, we removed it. The city didn't want anything in the garage, we don't have anything in the garage. What is that the neighbors want? Is it a crime? I am at home alone, I'm cooking and doing my paperwork. My husband is on the field all day long. I don't have one customer who visits me. I don't have workers, I don't have employees. I think there is a fine line between trying to protect the neighborhood than invading someone's life and privacy. From the first day I purchased this house, they have some kind of animosity and vendetta towards me and to my ethnicity. People... People that I don't know, they live so far, have been attacking me. Even you, Mr. Weaver, you had to escort them outside this room last year, if you recall. I guarantee you that in 100% residential neighborhood, there are so many people doing businesses out of their homes. I can get you their names if you want to. From day one, I wanted to do everything legal by applying home occupancy permit. They denied it. Can you believe in a commercialized street, they refused to give me home occupancy permit? With all that money that I spent, consultation fee and legal fees, I could have helped my city and the fiber fighters that I have so much respect for them. Mr. Mayor and dear council members, we elected you to protect us from people like this who do not have anything to do except interfering in other people's lives. We do not have any plans to do anything in this home, except doing our paperwork. Let them leave us alone. I have signatures from the neighbors on Glenox who support me. I will finish it. I'm sure the city will give this matter into consideration and come to a conclusion. But in the meantime, like Mr. Jing Gustafson wrote in the paper, I want to thank you, I want to thank him for that, the complaining neighbors should shut up and mind their own business. I truly thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No comment. Thank you very much. No comments from the council members?
No, Ms. Corlia, as I understand it, this is an item that may be coming before council on an appeal, and it would be inappropriate for us at this point to pass any judgment or reach any conclusions or do anything which would affect our ability to fairly consider the facts when they come before us at that time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. Number of issues. And, first of all, you know, Vanguard represents an awful lot of people in this city, thousands of people. And those thousands of people certainly couldn't be here this evening or this morning. But those who did miss this morning, I think they missed some very interesting information at the council study session. And I think the idea of having study sessions throughout the year is great, but I think you've got 14 or 15 departments, you just won't squeeze them into 12 months. Maybe every other week or something, and then you're going to even get boards and commissions. Find out why some of those boards and commissions don't meet on a regular schedule. They have a schedule, but they cancel their meetings. And you must really consider, why do we have them if the meetings are always canceled? Take a look at the Transportation and Parking Commission, one that has canceled more meetings and that instead calls a special meeting, which is not their regular meeting. It's one issue. There was another issue that last week came about, and a number of people, actually two people, spoke about people standing in front of this council and speaking their minds, representing a number of people. One of those people certainly was representing a client. Obviously, he was probably being paid. Another person representing another issue, defending some of the staff. However, there are people like Herbert Milano, Bruce Philpott, Jolene Taylor, Margaret Hammond, a number of people, and myself, that come before this body without compensation. Because we are here, because we represent the people, the things that we hear, the things that we see, and we're bringing them to you. And I think that's an important part, and I don't think it should be denigrated by any people that come before this council and saying, "One voice doesn't mean anything." One voice, when it represents a lot of people, does mean a lot. And certainly, it will allow you to get out before midnight, because I know there are some council members who'd like to go home early, and I certainly wouldn't blame you. Now, let's go to another issue. Actually, several issues. I was driving on Linda Vista, and I was really surprised when I saw those posts sticking in the road. Why on earth are those posts there? And, you have to go all the way to turn around unless you're making a U-turn in the middle of the street, but I don't think that's really okay. And then, of course, you have an issue where I understand there's going to be banning some parking on Figueroa, and it could really affect that area, and I just wonder who's behind it. Another issue that came up, I had a dead deer in the yard on Saturday. And, at about 7 o'clock, I called the police department. I couldn't find their number on the webpage, and I've since talked to them about it, their non-emergency number. Ultimately, I got someone who gave me two phone numbers. One was for the county that doesn't have jurisdiction, and the one that he said called last is from Pasadena. I called Pasadena, and the phone rang and rang and rang and rang. Finally, somebody answered the phone, and I said, "Here's the situation." And, you know, basically, is the deer dead? I haven't taken its pulse yet, but anyways, yes, the deer is dead. Okay, when will someone be out? Well, I don't know. We only have one person on, you know, the one overnight person. I said, "Well, you know, it's after 7:00. When does the other shift start?" Well, I really don't know. Called back at 8:00, and at 9:00, I checked back with the police department, and I finally had a phone call because of that, back from Pasadena, who said, "We have a terrible answering service. They didn't even log your call. We didn't know that you had this dead deer." And I said, "Well, if you've got an answering service problem, maybe it's time to get rid of it." And my communication with our police department was very good, even though the officer responding to the phone call didn't know which number was which. And I think it goes to the fact that maybe our police department should start taking these calls and hotlining them over to somebody in Pasadena, rather than passing a buck to an answering service that is not responsive to the needs of the city. It's very simple, solution to the issue. Now, can we do that? And I think that the police department could charge back the Pasadena Humane Society for providing those overnight services, and then you would have a record. You would have a record of the number of calls, the number of dispatches, even the response time, something that could be measured, that you're not getting now. And you would have accountability, and that's what Vanguard's about, accountability. Thank you. Barry Allen from Vanguard.
Did they pick up the dead deer?
Oh, yeah, and after, we had to keep chasing coyotes away, but...
Was it a coyote attack?
Yeah.
I had the same thing three years ago. Mr. Strayman.
I have to ask you, Mr. Allen, whether you were intentionally making the pun when you said passing the buck just now.
It could have been the dog.
Okay, thank you very much. Sona Chapchovian. Sona Chapchovian.
Good evening, Mayor of Glendale, Mr. Ngerian, and the city members. My name is Sona Chapchovian, and I am resident in Glendale. I would like to tell you about last year, 2006. I came here and I gathered about 10 or 14 people. We came here 8 August 2006 and asked the council members to open the doors of the cemetery so that we can go and visit our loved ones. And I would like to thank you that you arranged that, but only for twice a month, and it is not enough. And now I've heard that...
Ms. Chapchovian?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We are going to be discussing this item.
Oh, because they called my name?
I understand.
Okay, I will go and sit down.
It's better if we call you when the whole council is discussing this and everyone speaks.
Because I was surprised that you called me first.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the indication on the agenda.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
Thank you. We'll call it. That was your warm-up.
Randy Bridgeford.
It's not Granview, I presume.
Good evening, council members and, Mr. Mayor. I am here tonight to speak about the ongoing issues with car park and the improvements that you guys have.
That's on the agenda, too.
Okay, so...
Car park, yes.
This is my warm-up.
Is it item 8F?
Sorry, my bad.
So, we'll call you then. Let me just make sure we're clear on that. Folks, there's a little blank on the card that says which agenda item you'd like to speak to. So if it's something we're discussing, write the agenda item down. If it's a general comment on something within the city's jurisdiction, you can check the box by oral communications, just so. Some of you I know are...
And agendas are available by then.
And the clerk will be happy to help you before the meeting starts if you're not sure about how to fill it out. Mr. Wintero.
You know what? That oral communications card, yeah, that oral communications card has been around for years. Maybe we can do a more user-friendly card. So many people are...
We have a design, we're just using the ones that we have left.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. The city clerk is on top of that. Okay, Norbert Stile.
Same thing.
Car park, 8F. Okay.
Moving right ahead here.
Linda Lalien. Car park.
But I have something else that I would... Because I gave you two cards.
Okay, then, this card is for your oral communications subject.
It's not Granview, right?
Good evening. I'd like to ask, where's Mr. Zern? Did he retire?
No, not yet.
Mr. Zern is in a seminar in San Diego.
Okay, great. Well, actually, I'm here about the car park, as well as the issue on the traffic and the football games. And I just want to say that I wanted to thank Mr. Zern on May 10th, he's not here, but I'm sure he will hear about it. On May 10th, the City Works Office, Mr. Zern's office, Glendale Unified School District, and Car Park Neighborhood had a meeting, and we did many, many things on, you know, the agenda. And I just want to say that two positive things have come from that, and I want to, you know, thank the City Works Office and Mr. Zern. One is the fact that we have car park issue on the agenda today, and I thank you for that. The second one is the traffic on campus and East Harvard has been reduced, especially during morning hours when the students were being dropped off, because they did have someone at the gate and they were monitoring it. However, after 2 o'clock, the gate was completely wide open, and although the traffic was still much less, but little by little, parents were beginning to realize that the gate is open and the gate was not closed and no one was monitoring it. And so, because it's the end of, it was the end of the school year, it was, you know, the end of May, beginning of June, and, you know, they were trying it for two weeks. I'm just saying that come September, this issue is going to still, you know, be a concern for us. And a couple of other things that we discussed, the parking signs. There was nothing done about any parking signs, and I noticed the parking signs around where my mother lives, which is a very nice neighborhood, on Ethel, Mountain, Royal, Imperial, Moreno. These parking signs read, "No parking except with permit C." And then it gives a time from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., which doesn't allow the Glendale College students to park there. Now, we would like signs like that in our neighborhood, because when I discuss about the park and the recreational things that you're planning for the park, and when football season starts, we are going to have the same problem. And I want to know from these, and the blind spots. Nothing has been done about the blind spots on the corners. And as Dr. Franklin said, now, Mr. Zern did send me the minutes from our meeting and also the schedule of the games for 2004 and 2005. These years were not an issue. 2006 was the issue, and I did not receive any schedule for that. And that was the problem with the cumulative impact that the field had, the mozzie field had after it was, you know, refurbished. So, and Dr. Franklin, which I think he left the city, he did mention that Loyola High School will play two games over there, which again, is not part of Glendale, City of Glendale. And, let's see, a couple of things I would like to ask the city and also I would like to ask the school district. What is being done to divert the crowds from the streets on game nights when September comes? The entrance on campus, which about 300, 400 people enter from, and it's a madhouse, and the parking, which the city allows Glendale High School, you know, they actually block off a whole side of the street, and we get parking tickets. It's our street, we cannot park there. If we park there on these nights, we get parking tickets, but the city allows the school to use it as a parking lot. What is being done about that? And where is the schedule for 2006 and 2007? I'd like to know how many games. I can stand one night a week, going out and not dealing with the crowds, but three nights a week, four nights a week, which happened in 2006, and the following morning, cleaning with the blowers. It's just unbearable, and you need to come and see how unbearable that is. Where will the buses and cars be parked on the football night? And if this is a stadium, where is the soundproof wall around the stadium? Okay? The school is, the district is saying that this is a stadium they're using. Every stadium that I know of has soundproof walls. So I'd like to know where is the soundproof wall for the stadium? And the last thing I'd like to mention is that Crescent Valley, I hear, has a football field now, a new football field, and I'd like to know if any games are being diverted to them, and why not have some bleachers there for them so we can divide the games between these two big schools? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know the answer to one of your questions regarding the preferential parking, and there's an application process that the Transportation Department, Mr. Bagdanyan, may be able to give you the procedure with which to start that.
Mr. Bagdanyan?
Mr. Bagdanyan, the city's Transportation Department.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, alternatively, you can contact Mr. Zern's office, and they'll get you the application form and the procedures.
Application for the...
Permit C.
Okay, thank you. Now, actually, what I'm saying is the signs, in other words, requesting those signs to be put there?
Yes. There has to be a process, has to be reviewed and approved before we can install the signs.
Okay.
Well, if I can, Mr. Mayor, most importantly, and I forget the percentage, but more than the majority of the residents of the neighborhood have to support the use of signs. The feedback I've had is there hasn't been unanimity in the broader neighborhood on the placement of the signs, but if there is, then the signs can be put in.
Right.
So there's a process to do, an election to determine if the neighborhood, if the majority, I think it's 75%, Rupert?
Correct.
If 75% or more want the signs, then the signs can be placed.
Okay, actually...
There's a process for an election. Again, if you'll take it up with Mr. Zern's office this week or next week, they can tell you the whole process.
I'm glad you brought that up, because at the meeting also, there was...
Okay, we need to keep moving, Ms. Lalien.
Okay, can I just mention one thing?
10 seconds.
10 seconds. The neighborhood, things that are being impacted on campus, car park three, four blocks away are not being impacted. So if there is an issue for one street, then we should keep it for one street, not the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Well, also, in addition to the parking issue, the preferential parking, whether the neighbors go for it or not, this lady and others have spoken about the continuing issue with the high school and the many games that have sort of been scheduled there and other activities that have been scheduled there since we put in that artificial turf. So now, it's changed. Basically, they have until September, till the beginning of the new year, to come up with some solution. I'm happy to hear that Mr. Zern is meeting with the school district and so forth, but I hope something gets worked out this summer, or they're going to be right back into the heat of all this activity on a continuing basis. And remember, they talked about colleges practicing on the field, they talked about bands playing, so this has become something more than just Glendale High School's stadium, so.
You have a few months.
I know, Mr. Wintero, Glendale Community College now practices and plays on their own field, but the college, Loyola High School, is used... own field, but the college, Loyola High School, has used Glendale High School at least 30, 40 years for some of their games, because I was there, watching John Wayne's son play against Glendale High School.
Thank you. Mr. Ysefian.
I have a question for the city attorney. On the issue of preferential parking, we do have a process, but outside of the process, is this council allowed to vote to put those signs outside of the process?
The council would have to consider an ordinance to do that. Preferential parking process is established by ordinance. This council, through essentially legislation, can modify that process, meaning that you could sit in judgment over a particular case and decide to put signs up regardless of the process, because you would be essentially amending the ordinance by creating legislation to do it.
Just for that.
Just for this.
And how many votes you would need for that?
You would need three votes for that. I'm not going to-
Thank you. Next speaker is Margaret Hammond.
What do you mean, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, audience, and people out there watching TV? My name is Margaret Hammond. Again, I'm here on the subject of illegal barbecuing by commercial facilities. It has been going on for years and years. Law is on the books that it's illegal. They're allowed to continue and continue, and no matter what is said, they just thumb their nose at the city. Because again, the city council is not enforcing the rules that the neighborhood services have the evidence, the legal department has the evidence that these people are doing this illegal barbecuing, and they're still doing it. The city of L.A. recently has notified residents there that there will be 40 days a year they'll be allowed to use their barbecue or their fireplaces, and not during fire season. I have a friend that lives on El Paso, just over there in Eagle Rock, and she got a notice. So I'm saying there's cutting down more and more. They're not allowing new homes to be built with wood-burning fireplaces, and they are going to be limiting ones that already have them. As far as me getting up here and talking, I don't care. I'll be here, and I'm going to keep coming back. No amount of threatening or badgering or making jokes or whatever is going to deter me, because how would you know about these illegal barbecues that are still ongoing? Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights? There's nobody from the city that monitors it. And even if you call, they don't monitor it. You phone the police department, they say it's not our problem. They put me onto the fire department, and the fire department says, "Well, really? Okay, I guess we could send somebody." Yeah, send somebody. It is against the law. In today, in a report that the fire department was giving, they said if there's fire or flames or smoke, they are required to go out and check on it. So, but if nobody is calling on it, then how can they go out and check? Hello? People out there that have this problem with the smoke and the smell and the whatever, phone. The other thing is, you know, so much time is wasted going over this again and again and again. Not just my time, but staff time, whatever. People are fed up listening to it. The easiest way to do is just enforce the laws, and then you don't have to listen to it. Mind you, there's always other things that come up. For one thing, I'd still like to see San Fernando Road beautified. Keep hoping we're going to get some bushes and trees and whatnot, so we don't look like South L.A. all the time. Other areas have beautiful bushes along there that were, we did have, till they took them all out, and now there's nothing but gravel and dirt, and it looks horrible. And you know, the L.A. River, there was, I know, a discussion on that. Hughle Hauser did a wonderful program a couple weeks, last week, about the L.A. River, the walkways, and what can be done, and how to do it. And it started right at Los Feliz, right at the border of Glendale, and all those little streets that lead into the L.A. River, how they have beautified it. They have fences, but they're open, and they've made parks of them, and now people can, they went all the way down to Long Beach. It would be wonderful if Glendale could get going on ours with the cooperation, maybe of Burbank, and have walkways, driveways for the bicycle ways. I really think it'd be wonderful. And the people, when they showed it, you couldn't believe it. It was like being out in the country, because there was the waterway and all, it was just fantastic. As a matter of fact, I'd like to get a hold of one of his films, just to show it, what can be done with the area. With the help of the neighbors, as well as the city of L.A., they did pay for a lot of that. And I just feel that this would add a huge park area, in a sense. All right, it would be all along the river, the old riverway, but it would be open for the public and of use in a really wonderful way for families and so forth. So if we keep that in mind, it would be great. Talk about dead animals. I came out of my house to come here tonight, and all of a sudden, when I got around the side of my car parked on the street, there's a dead possum lying beside my car. Now, a dead possum.
You sure was dead?
Yeah, well, I didn't touch it. I just looked at it, and it was laying there with its four feet in the air.
They play dead?
And I know they do, and I wasn't about to go poke it, no way. So, but I'm saying, if it was dead, what it was doing there, there was no blood around it or anything, but it looked really pretty ugly. But I just looked at it and said, "I hope somebody calls on it. If it's still there when I go home, I'll call." But, ugh, yuck. Then I'll know for sure it's dead.
Thank you, Margaret. Karina Kasishin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Karina Kasishin. I have lived in Glendale for 26 years. I'm honored to be living in such a wonderful city, Glendale, and simply thank you for your hard work. I'm here today to inform you that I fully and wholeheartedly support the existence of Montrose Collection. There are four reasons why I support this nice facility. First, it adds a family value to our neighborhood. Open-heartedly and unselfishly, free of charge, Montrose Collections provided their facility to be used for kindergarten graduation of Robin's Nest Preschool. I'm very surprised and anguished that the Glendale City officials are giving these nice people such a hard time. Secondly, there is no other restaurant banquet hall that services and contributes to northern Glendale area, La Crocena and Montrose. Our community members have to drive to downtown Glendale to get these services, which in turn increases the traffic and the pollution of our city. Montrose Collection needs to stay in our neighborhood. Thirdly, I think our community needs and demands more of these family-oriented facilities. There are several bars within a block of Montrose Collections on Honolulu Avenue. If the parking and the noise level is an issue, then the study should be conducted on patrons' parking for the bars versus Montrose Collections. Do we want more bars in our community for entertainment or a family restaurant? Both bars and Montrose Collections are not new establishments. Why these bars are not harassed, singled out, but the family facility like Montrose Collection is? I have no idea. Finally, we are penalizing, are we penalizing a single restaurant because it causes pollution through barbecuing? Wintertime, many Glendalians use wood-burning fireplace, creating pollution. According to EPA, wood smoke contains a mixture of gases and fine particles that can aggravate heart or respiratory problems in people of all ages, but especially children, the elderly, and those with chronic conditions. Having said this, are we going to ban everyone who uses wood-burning fireplaces because it causes pollution? This is one restaurant barbecuing versus hundreds of residents using wood-burning fireplace. In conclusion, I would like to ask you kindly to consider my request in regards to this nice family environment, the Montrose Collections, and give them a break. Thank you. By the way, I'm a SC grad, too.
The next speaker, Al Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor Nigerian, council members, staff, and the public. There's been a lot of publicity of late about the helicopter program to catch speeders. Whether or not that's a good deal or not, if it works, I think it's a great idea. The people that complain about noise, we get it up in our area every night. They come by regularly, 10:00, 11:00, and it really isn't a big deal, you hear them. And it's good to know that they're out there, and the police is out watching us, protecting our neighborhoods. But it brought to mind an issue a few years back. We had this big thing about raising the speed limits in Glendale. I could never understand the logic of that. And it was stated, "Well, if we raise the speed limit, then the police department can give out tickets." I didn't understand why they couldn't give tickets out at the lower speed limit if people were violating the speed. But they said it was some kind of state law that if everybody's breaking the law, you bring it up. Well, if the state is putting laws out like this, I think it's up to the council members to go to the state and say, "What in earth are you doing here, proposing to increase speeds?" Especially now, they're worried about pollution and all that. I would like to request how many more citations were written by the police department on speeding when they changed the speed limit and increased it? I'd sure like to see that data. I'd also like to see the data on how many speeders are caught by the helicopters. I think it's important. If, you know, speeding is, it's unbelievable. My daughter has an apartment on Sonora Street, a block away from the little park down there. I go over there a lot, and I work there, and honest to God, they go on Sonora. I keep thinking in my old days at San Fernando Drag Strip, the way they go by. I mean, it is unreal. They either start out at Riverside, or they're coming from under the freeway bridge, from Lake Street, if the light's red there. I mean, they are screaming by there on Sonora, and it's a regular event. One day, there was a motorcycle policeman out there, and he was having a heyday out there. But then, after that, it's all over. So, the speeding is a problem here, and I'd sure like to see the statistics on the two different things. From the time they increased the speed limits, which I found to be absurd, they complained about Glen Oaks, reduce it again, put it back to where it was, slow it down. It's fast enough the way it is. And then how many more tickets, how many citations are issued because of the helicopter program? I think it'd be valuable information. Thank you.
The paradox is, Mr. Hoffman, on that state law, if our police force wants to use radar or laser to enforce speed limits, we cannot set the speed limit lower than the 80th, 85th percentile of the surveyed vehicles. Otherwise, it's considered a speed trap. And so that's why you get the paradox situation where we had to raise the speed limits, let's say from 35 to 40, in order to permit our police officers to use the laser and the radar enforcement. Otherwise, you have to follow in behind them and pace them to get that. So it is a, I'm not disagreeing with you, it is a paradoxical situation, but unfortunately, that's what we're dealing with.
Was there an increase in citations after that?
Maybe we can get a report on it. I think we have something coming shortly, in the next week or two, on the traffic enforcement.
On what we've done, you know, because of the helicopter program, I'm sure they want to get statistics out for that.
We'll keep an eye on that, and I'm sure we'll have the information. Mr. Ysefian.
I have read several articles, also some emails that have come to us also. I think there needs to be a little bit of a clarification. On the helicopter, everybody's assuming that we're flying the helicopters just for that purpose. It is my understanding the helicopters are going to be up on the air anyway. This is just an additional task they do while they're up on the air. Am I correct?
That's correct. They'll be on, when they're on regular patrol, we have marked, right, we have marked West Glen Oaks, and we have the equipment and the helicopter and trained the pilots, so when they're up there, they can time automobiles and determine their speed on the ground, so that if they do see somebody when they're up there on West Glen Oaks, they'll have the tools to radio down and have the individual sighted. Otherwise, before that, they didn't have the ability. They might be up there, but if they saw somebody, unless they're going at a very, very high rate of speed, they wouldn't have the ability to determine their speed from the air.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council member, staff. I have several issues that I'd like to discuss. I had no intention to come in here today, but I was encouraged from a dear friend of mine to come and talk. I know the city doesn't care about us, but the public should know. The first thing I'm concerned about, I found out yesterday from one of the police officers, that the city is trying to put no parking signs on Figueroa in front of the city park across the street from Glinda Vista. We will be the most affected ones. I'd like to know where our guests are going to park. You guys took the off-street parking in front of Glinda Vista, and you guys replaced it with nine ugly signs in a short distance. And that was supposed to be only during construction, and you guys put that one day before the grading, maybe to prevent us from building the home. Anyway, and that was, I have read the city council brief, and it says it was done during the construction. It was supposed to be removed. It's been seven months, you guys give us the, released our occupancy permit, and still the signs are there. So I'm demanding that the city remove those signs. And also, we'd like to be informed if there's any kind of decision about no parking on Figueroa. I'd like to be informed, and I'd like to know all the details about it. The second issue is, since May 16 of 2007, I have requested to see my file under Public Record Act. Until today, I've been given the runaround, and the city is not producing our file. I'd like to know what's going on. Even the employees, they're here to serve the public. I'd like to know why they're hostile against me. And they're telling me, they're telling me to go, "Why don't you go to Building Department? Maybe they have your file there. Why don't you go to Traffic and Transportation? Maybe they have your file there." Even though I got a call from City Attorney's Office that my file is with the city clerk today. And the third issue is, it's again, our dear subject, the median in front of our driveway. I'd like to know when the city will remove this. I have collected 250 signature petition asking the city to remove it, and the city doesn't even respond to that. I mean, I don't know what's going on. I mean, and I understand what Mrs. Coroglian is going through, what kind of harassment he's getting from his neighbors. I'm going through the same thing. Racial slurs are thrown at us. We've been honked, we've been given offensive gestures, and nobody's doing anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, question. Mr. Raymond.
Ma'am.
DeMergen.
Mr. DeMergen? Let me ask you just one question. Actually, I have a question and then a question for staff- Actually, I have a question and then a question for staff, I guess.
Question and a question.
A question and a question, sort of. First of all, about the median, I exchanged some emails with Mr. DeMergen earlier, and I'm kind of curious, because it predates me, what is the story with the median there? And why, no, I understand, but why the median with all the wrong term, but the candlesticks sticking up? And doesn't it create even a larger safety issue when you have to drive so far around it that everybody's making turns, illegal turns to go around it? Are we planning to look at this, or no? Or is it a done deal?
Well, let me ask, would you like to respond to that?
I think, I think Mr. Galanian and both, we can take different issues. The issue of whether or not the current median is dangerous in its current, both its, either its configuration and/or the materials used is something that I think Mr. Galanian can respond to. I can respond to what occurred when this matter was before the city council on a DRB appeal. The city council wanted, based upon the testimony, particularly vehicles that were driving, I think I got my directions right, coming back over the hill, down past this Linda Vista home on a Knoll, there was a quick question of speed and traffic safety for vehicles actually pulling out of the driveway. And the council noted that they would like a median there. Because it was a design review matter, we could not include that as a condition of the design review, but it was the council's intention to do that. We didn't include it as an environmental mitigation measure either. As a result, we could not place the onus on the property owner who was involved in constructing the house to add that median, which is something the council wanted to do. Ultimately, Public Works went out and installed this median, whether or not it's temporary or it's going to be permanent, that's something that Mr. Galanian can respond to. But it was really a request based upon what had happened here, and the notion that once this house is built, there's going to be a situation that's created if there isn't a median, that vehicles are going to have a difficult time making a left turn out of that driveway onto the street without possibly causing a collision.
Mr. Yusefian and Mr. Starbitt.
Mr. Mayor, I have asked for the DVD of that meeting several times, yet to get it. Could somebody please, I don't know the date.
It's September 24, 2002, and there's no way there was a condition.
September 24, 2002?
Two.
My God, it goes back a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, my memory's not that good. Could I get the DVD so I can look at that? Because I can't really recall what happened. I'd like to review that, if possible. Maybe a copy could be given to Mr. Drayman?
I would appreciate it. I appreciate my colleagues' indulgence in this. It predates me, and I, when a constituent asks, I really would like to have a little more information. I understand it, it came up before. I also drove out there, and what I observed was a lot of people, because they couldn't turn there, were going down the hill, turning, making illegal turns to go around to go back the other direction. And so, you know, sometimes there's a lot of unintended consequences, and I just want to look at it.
Mr. Starbitt.
I guess my only advice would be you should watch the DVD. The house was born out of controversy, and the neighborhood continues to be very controversial. So, in fact, if the matter comes back before you, you'll probably have this many people sitting in the audience, possibly on both sides of the issue, but at that time, they were primarily on one side of the issue, and that was from the neighborhood. But we'll get you a copy of the DVD, and you can, you can see the difficulty the staff's had dealing with this ever since.
Right, I'd like one too. I think everyone, why don't you have one for all the council?
We'll make souvenir copies for all the council members.
Souvenir copies.
Yes.
Do you need to respond, Mr. Galanian?
Would you like me to respond?
If you could shed some light, absolutely.
About vertical curves. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Drayman, members of the council, I echo the city attorneys and Mr. Starbitt's comments. Basically, this has been an extremely controversial house development on Figueroa. I wasn't personally involved at the onset of the project. However, I have met with Mrs. DeMergen and her husband several times, including Mr. Zern and our Traffic and Transportation representatives. According to Tom Mitchell, who first initiated the installation of the median, it's an absolute necessity, and there have been several conversations, several letters written, several reports and copies sent to the property owners indicating that there's a need to install the median. The property owners, I won't go into detail, but at some point had agreed that they will install the median, but then later on, towards the end of construction of the house, refused to do so, so the department had to send our own crews to install it. Those candlesticks that you see though, in the median, are semi-permanent, for lack of a better term. We yet have to consider other alternatives.
I mean, let me suggest we'll pull the whole history together and give you a complete report, including the DVD of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, it'll have very long history.
And the other question also was, and I hate to do this, but I really have to know, because now this is coming up over and over, and I'm not trying to pick on yous.
No, no, that's fine.
Please don't be nervous, because I'm not accusing you of anything.
I'd like to ask, I mean.
But I do want to ask, out of curiosity, when you say that the city doesn't care about us.
Yes.
Who are you referring to?
City employees and some politicians, you know.
No, I mean us. Is that the city in general, or?
No, 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 I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to offend anybody, but I know some people there behind it because we are discriminated. I mean, along Linda Vista and Chevy Chase, there are a lot of homes, they have zero sight vision, their driveway is right at the curb, that is okay for them to make a left turn, U-turn, whatever. I mean, we have 265th sight vision from the curb, and there's sufficient time to make the left turn, even if they're speeding on 40 miles. Instead of city finding other solution, putting like maybe stop sign, four-way stop sign, bumps, humps, maybe, maybe a speed limit saying 25 miles, you know, the commuters are, you know, they're speeding, we're getting punished because of that. It's not fair.
Okay, we'll be reviewing this. This will be coming back as further information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman.
Remo Alexandri.
Hello, my name is Remo Alexandri, and first of all, I would like to kind of give a quick response to what Mr. Allen said. With all respect for Mr. Allen, I think he's a great citizen of this city, besides Mr. Milano, Dr. Spirito, who go after boring stuff, obscure stuff, and though maybe their assertions are not always accurate, but the very fact that they do these things is, it should be appreciated, and I appreciate. But I think the study sessions are all-day kind of thing. You have to, study sessions have become a tool for very few people to dominate and this supposedly public input process, and give you excuse that you made your decision based on public's opinion. But we always see who comes to these public study sessions, basically. It never reflects the public. To remedy this, you could send out, I think you could come up with a system and send out surveys. You kind of simplify this, whatever your, the subject of this study session is, and send out all over Glendale, and people just send you back, and I'm sure you'll get a very different public, real public input from whatever you've been getting so far on various issues. And I hate to do this today, Mr. Weaver, I wish your, I also wish your wife's a happy birthday. I don't have anything personally against you, but you're a public figure, and it's a fair game to put you in the spot, in the spotlight. Again, reiterating the allegations that Mr. Weaver, after his reelection, getting 7, 8,000 votes in a city of 210,000, almost, has almost 210,000 residents, he assumed that he has the mandate to kick out Armenians from this city. This political pandering should not be tolerated. Of course, we all know that a good number of people who voted for him were from the 15% non-Aranian white population. And I'm sure many of them would have not voted for him if they, had they known he has harboring such hateful feelings to kind of, I don't know, look good to few disturbed characters in our city. But in any way, Mr. Weaver also has been a subject to an investigation by California, if I'm not mistaken. Fair Political Practices Commission, and I think public deserves a response or an update from Mr. Weaver, and also a response to these allegations. And at least, if he could apologize, we may kind of, we might forgive him, because everyone is, could make mistakes. I mean, that's, we are all human. But in any, any, any case, banquet halls again, banquet halls are part of the social fabric of this community, and they should be dealt accordingly. Another thing I would like to say tonight is the English language. English language, I believe, is our national language, and whoever comes to this country must learn the English language. For your personal advancement, to be exposed to the wonderful English-speaking world, culture, and English common law benefits, you need to learn the English language. And why not to employ our means, like GTV6, and create some programs to teach English to our residents? Because not everyone has the means, has the talent, has the vigor to learn the language. It's a very difficult process. There are very few people like me that have been living here since like eight, nine years ago, and I had very little exposure to English language in the English-speaking world before that world. I'm sorry, sometimes I really flatter this beautiful English language, and I will try to be more careful and pronounce the words more completely. And anyway, we could do more to integrate our community and employ the means that are available to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Guadalessa Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members and staff. I'm Guadalessa Rivera, community advocate from Glendale Adentist Medical Center. And as you know, we've been supporting the city of Glendale to draft a tobacco retail permit, primarily to reduce sale of tobacco products and cigarettes to minors. But tonight, I'm here in support of Amy Clem and the Moms Club, if they're still here. They're a group of young mothers who are concerned about secondhand smoke issues in their daily lives. And I'd just like to read a couple of things from a policy paper from the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County. Secondhand tobacco smoke is a complex mixture of over 4,000 compounds generated from burning tobacco products. It is the third-leading preventable cause of death in the United States. Adverse health effects include heart disease, lung and nasal sinus cancer, sudden infant death syndrome, childhood asthma, bronchitis, pneumonia, even middle ear infection, and low birth rate. The Surgeon's General Report, the Surgeon General's Report, which was released about a year ago, concluded that there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke, and certain populations are especially susceptible, including infants and children, pregnant women, older persons, and persons with pre-existing respiratory conditions and heart disease. The EPA has classified secondhand smoke as a Group A carcinogen, placing it in the most dangerous category, reserved for radon, benzene, and asbestos. More recently, the California Air Resources Board identified secondhand smoke as a toxic air contaminant, a substance known to cause and/or contribute to death or serious illness. So, we support trying to do something to safeguard our children especially from this dangerous substance. And I just want to introduce the Moms Club. I'm sure they'll have more to say about this. All right? Thank you.
Michelle Douglas.
My name's Michelle Douglas, and I'm a resident of Glendale and a supporter of the Montrose Collection. I'm a neighbor, my kids go to school right up the street from Montrose Collection, one street up on Montrose Avenue. And we, I'm here because I understand that they have had issues with saying that they're not open for lunch, or their parking issues, and I'm just here to say that I have had already, since I discovered them, I would say, because I live right up the street, I never even knew they were there. My daughter's best friend lives right across the street. They're such a clean facility, a wonderful facility, a quiet facility, and we didn't know they were there until we were looking for a place to hold my grandmother's funeral. And we walked in, and we were treated with such, they were such a nice, family-owned place. We went there, we had lunch, we thought it was just amazing, and they were able to take us for a reservation in three days, so we were very, very happy. About a month later, we held my parents' 70th birthday there, because we were going to hold it at our home, and we thought this place is so much nicer, and then we can really enjoy the guests so much more. So we went and held it there. And I'd just like to say that Upper Glendale has nothing like this. We have no restaurants. We have a small business, we've had to go into Pasadena for every nice dinner we've wanted to hold, every nice luncheon we've wanted to hold for our employees. It's a wonderful place. I hope that each one of you have a chance to go there and really enjoy it and see the way that you're treated there. It's a different culture, it's different food, it's wonderful, and so many people that don't get to experience that all the time. We loved it, we had a great time, and every person who attended all our functions loved it as well, and many of them Glendale residents who are all willing to come and testify on behalf of this lovely restaurant. So I'd just like you all to take, you know, maybe some time and go up there and see it, but also know that there's a lot of us in Glendale, and especially Upper Glendale, where there's nothing unless you want to go, and we don't like to go into Lower Glendale because of the drive, and there was a lot of older people coming, and it's very confusing Lower Glendale, it's easier Pasadena. So I'd like you to know that you are losing a lot of business to Pasadena if you don't have a place like this where families can go and really enjoy themselves. So I'd like to tell you that we, as residents of Glendale, being less than a mile away, and, and, and people that live right across the street from their facility, they've had no problem with them, they're willing to come testify, they're willing, they're neighbors right down on Ramsdale, and they love it. They, everybody has said how fantastic it is, so I would just like to say that we appreciate a business like this finally coming to Glendale, and we hope it doesn't get shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Gardner. Followed by Amy Clem.
Good evening. My name's Valerie Gardner. I'm here today as a concerned parent. I have two small children who are with a babysitter right now, so I could be here with you tonight. I would like to urge Glendale to ban smoking in all public areas. I suffer from asthma, which is triggered by cigarette smoke. There are certain shopping areas in Glendale, like the Man Marketplace in particular, and restaurants with smoking on the patios, that I must avoid altogether, or else I will have an asthma attack. But beyond my concern of the effects of secondhand smoke on my own health, I'm concerned for my children, which was so clearly stated by the woman before, a couple people before me. I don't want to avoid taking my children to shops or restaurants because smokers, because of smokers are on the sidewalks and patios. I know that smokers are supposed to stay 25 feet away from playgrounds, but they often ignore these signs altogether, and they also leave behind cigarette butts, which are toxic for children, and I have taken them out of my daughter's, my toddler's mouth quite a few times. Thank you for your time and for considering banning smoking in our parks and public areas here in Glendale. Thank you.
Valerie, just as a reminder, if you have kids at home or dinner on the stove, I will afford priority, so if you come next time and your kids are tied up or busy, and there are several reasons, but.
That's really nice to know.
I will offer the courtesy to put you at the very front of the list, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Just on oral communications.
Okay.
Thank you. Amy Clem.
Good evening, City Council. It's good to see so many familiar faces and a new one. I'm glad to be before you again. As you know, my name is Amy Clem, and I'm a resident of Glendale. And I am very happy to hear that July has been designated Parks and Recreation Month. And I am very happy to hear that July has been designated Parks and Recreation Month. We are very fortunate to have some really nice parks in Glendale and I wholeheartedly believe that they deserve special attention, especially as we head outdoors during the summer. In fact, parks are the primary reason I'm here tonight. Our parks have a problem that is much more threatening than we might immediately realize. And I don't think anyone here will be surprised to hear that the problem I'm speaking of is secondhand smoke. Glendale currently has an ordinance that prohibits smoking within 25 feet of a playground. That's great, except that many smokers don't know about or ignore the ordinance completely. And children eventually outgrow monkey bars and slides. Parks are places for running, jumping, sports, and get-togethers. Prohibiting smoking 25 feet around the playground is simply not enough. There have been numerous studies that show how dangerous secondhand smoke is, especially to children, even in an outdoor setting. I'm sure that I don't need to make a case to any of you about the dangers of secondhand smoke, but I feel that there is a lot of apathy in regard to this issue. Most everyone agrees it's a legitimate problem, but nobody wants to do anything about it. Even if you're one of those people who doesn't really think secondhand smoke is that dangerous, then how do you feel about brush fires? Many of us live near parks that are against the hills, where a dropped cigarette on the trail could mean the loss of a park, public buildings, homes, and lives. And despite the impressive list of stores and restaurants you read off tonight, how successful will the Americana be if non-smokers don't want to shop where they and their children are subjected to the smell, not to mention the dangers of secondhand smoke? Burbank has recently adopted a ban on smoking and Pasadena is now considering one, too. Is Glendale prepared to be the designated smoking section for all three cities? I urge you to start looking into banning smoking in parks and all public areas as soon as possible. If not for the health of your constituents, then for the tax dollars you'll lose when people won't shop or do business in a cloud of smoke. And I also have one more thing I need to add. Margaret Hamilton, I brought up San Fernando beautification. And I just wanted to tell you guys that part of the reason Pacific is so busy is because many of us who live in Northwest Glendale don't give directions exiting San Fernando because we're embarrassed by it. And so we give Pacific. And that's a lot of your congestion right there, is just because we're embarrassed by San Fernando Boulevard and how terrible it looks, so we don't give people directions to exit there. And I also have to say that I am a member of Moms Club, but I'm not actually representing them. We cannot be involved in political functions and things like that, but we have a large membership and the very, very large majority of that membership is very concerned about this issue, just so that you know. But it's not a sanctioned issue that we can be involved in as a group, but as citizens, we are going to be very involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Marsh.
Mayor Najarian, City Council, Mr. Starbird. My name is Patricia Marsh. I spoke yesterday at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting regarding the researching the historic status of the early 19th century Bonnetto Stone Cottage. It's in the newspaper today. I'm the preservation activist they quoted. But I live at 2852 Manhattan Avenue and I'd just like to point out the corner of Manhattan and Locust Center Avenue. If you look at it, you'll see, and I have to admit, I've lived there for 15 years and haven't really seen it until recently. If you look, you'll see that we have the, we have the Locust Center Women's Club built in 1925. We have the American Legion Hall built in 1925, destroyed in the flood, and then moved there in 1935. And then we have the historic Bonnetto Meadow, well, it's our Bonnetto Meadow, and then the Bonnetto Home. And what they're now doing is researching the home, the cottage. So I'd just like to point that out to you, that it's, it's a perfect area for a open space, small mini park, and that just kind of, next time you drive by, take a look at it, it's just something we would hate to lose, the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Enslo. Followed by Michael Tehan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Sandy Enslo and I live at 2812 Manhattan Avenue. My house is near the corner of Locust Center Avenue and Manhattan Avenue, and I'm right across the street from what is left of the open land of the Bonnetto Family Farm. And I too spoke yesterday at the Historic Preservation Committee meeting and in regards to this piece of property and the stone and timber cottage that was on it. Mr. Amirian from the Historic Preservation Committee encouraged me to come tonight to speak to you. This land is, is currently in danger of being torn down and developed with new buildings. The history of the Bonnetto family would be lost, as well as the opportunity for a spot park. And I'm hoping, gentlemen, that you will consider this, that you will consider the opportunity to take advantage of this piece of land and save the history. We need a spot park in this area and I think that it would be a fairly easy and cost-effective thing to do. And I did a little drawing, y'all will get it later in the package that's coming up, but I think it would be something that would be really beneficial. So please, if you can, I would appreciate it if you would give it some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Tehan. Followed by Dennis McCoy.
Mayor Najarian, City Council and staff. I never had an opportunity to thank you, actually, for taking the time to reconsider what was happening in Adams, Adams Hill and the mini park. And I wanted to do so today, just to say thank you for even taking a look at it, thank you for revisiting it, thanking you for giving us the consideration and the time to actually take a look at our concerns, reevaluate it, and, and basically support everything that we've done. So I just wanted to do that today and also to express my sincere gratitude and the consideration offered by Parks and Recreation, George Chaffin and Hug Up. Hug Up actually took the time on Sunday to write a rather extensive letter notifying us what the progress was, what the timelines were. They kept us abreast of what was going on. We know things take time and we're very happy with the progress so far. We understand that within about two weeks, they're going to fire it up again and before too long, we're going to have a beautiful park in Adams Hill. So that's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Tehan. Dennis McCoy. Followed by Herbert Milano.
Hi, my name is Dennis McCoy and I think I came and spoke to you about, about a little over a month and a half ago about a traffic situation in Glendale around the Galleria during the Christmas season. Since that time, I've decided to appeal to the Superior Court and they, they charged $25. I've already paid the $50 ticket fine and they charged $25 to file the paperwork. And I also filed a Freedom of Information Act request with the city attorney's office and they charged me $50 for somebody to spend 25 minutes to print out six pages. Okay? That's over 100 bucks an hour. Now, I don't think the city attorney himself makes $208,000 a year, which $100 an hour is $4,000 a week. Okay? And according to the office downstairs of management, the Personnel Management Office, a deputy city attorney in this town makes between $7,100 and $8,800 a month. So why is, why are these fees so incredibly high? Furthermore, if I want the officer, now this is a parking control officer, not a uniformed armed police officer, the parking control officer to come to court so I can question him before the judge, they want to charge me $150 witness fee for a couple of hours' time of that parking control officer. I mean, maybe you feel that running the city on the corporate profit model is better than running it on the welfare of the people of the city. I find it objectionable. And I think these fees need to be looked at and adjusted to a reasonable rate because in effect, what is happening is you are foreclosing justice for everybody who can't afford these excessive fees. And I don't think that's right. I don't think that's fair and I don't think it's just. Okay? So that, that was the major thing. Now, coming here and speaking and, and listening to what has come before, there seems to be a really virulent kind of lynch mob mentality of the people who don't like secondhand smoke. Okay? I'm a smoker and I've smoked for a good part of my life. I'm 62 years old. I'm not recommending it to anybody. But the human lungs maybe hold a quart and a half of air and if you take a really big drag on a cigarette, you may get a cup of smoke. Any diesel semi truck that goes through this town in two or three hours is going to put out more pollutants into the air than all the smokers in LA can put out in a week. The other thing is about cigarette butts, is they're 100% biodegradable. They're gone in six to eight weeks. If they get wet, they're gone probably in 14 days because they're made out of paper, which is cellulose, and tobacco. And those things are completely biodegradable. They disappear. Okay? Bacteria eat them. It's not like Styrofoam cups or beer cans or soda pop bottles. And, you know, in closed spaces, I understand completely the desire of many people not to have cigarette smoke in their lives. But outdoors, where there is always, almost always, air movement and you've got thousands and thousands of cubic meters of air, I really don't see it as a problem compared to the air pollution in the Los Angeles basin that's created by the chemical manufacturing plants, the oil companies, and the trucks and automobiles. I see it as really of no consequence at all. In an enclosed space, yes, but outside, I don't see any reason to have laws banning smoking. Thank you very much for your time.
How do you feel about outdoor grilling? You don't have to answer that.
Well, I mean, you know.
You don't have to.
It's excessive, maybe, but if it's just somebody grilling in their backyard, that's probably not a major thing.
Herbert Milano, followed by Fred Tykert.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Several years ago, when I started coming to, to the city budget sessions, I was, I guess, the lone wolf appearing at these sessions, trying to understand how the city develops and discusses the city budget. And what I found out oftentimes is that the city budget was hardly discussed. And oftentimes, some of the councilmen didn't even show up. So it was taken for granted that things were as they were. And as such, I took a keen interest because I sensed some disparity. And there are a lot of disparities in the city and I think there is some inherent in the budget. One of the key measures of a, the state of the city, I believe, is, for example, the number of students who receive free and subsidized lunches at the, at the high school. As of October of 2006, the percentage of Glendale High School students who received free or subsidized meals is 52%. What does that, is it gives you a measure of the significant number of families who are economically at risk. And these are the families who can least afford increases in the utility tax rate, the utility users' tax. It is the utility users' tax which Glendale City Government partially, with which the Glendale Government partially funds its general fund deficit, take money from the GWP and other fee-for-service increases, and it will impact hardest on those families least able to afford it. The poor, the disabled, seniors on fixed income. It is for this reason that this city council must take every measure to reduce waste and inefficiencies wherever it can find it, not just because it is the fair thing to do, but because it is the right thing to do. This budget as presented to you is unfair. There are many sections in the budget that I believe do not receive the level of scrutiny because of political favors and endorsements. Nowhere is that disparity more salient than in the overtime hours racked up by certain city departments. No department has had a long run without their budget being called to some accountability than our own fire department. The city of Seattle, Washington, has had a fire department with a paramedic program since 1970, but they have established goals not to exceed their overtime by more than 5% of their base pay. In Glendale, we bear a whopping 27% of their base pay, or $5 million in overtime. That is enough money to hire 33 more firefighters and still have an additional $1.5 million every year. Heaven knows, we could use that money to help out our youth programs, we could reduce the backlog of infrastructure repair, or the additional open land that we must obtain to reduce the ever-increasing shortage of green open space. But why should the fire union care? Only 14 of them live in the city of Glendale and their pay is astronomical, given the level of risk. You see, that is by working the overtime that this, the excessive salaries come into being, and I don't think we're doing enough to be able to control overtime across the board. We cannot have a city where many residents have to choose between paying for food or paying for electricity. We owe our residents a sharp pencil to locate any overtime abuse. It is time to bring, I think, the issue of campaign contributions because it is my belief that those campaign contributions unduly influence your decisions or your lack of scrutiny with regard to the city budget. I urge, I urge the city council to move steadfast to reduce overtime pay by at least 20% this year and to move aggressively to amend our city charter and limit campaign contributions to $250 per resident, just as they do in Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Tykert. Mayor. Mr. Yezefyan.
Before Mr. Milano sits down, Mr. Milano appreciates some of your comments. This morning, you made some comments because I understand you had to work, you had to leave. Because of your comments and also Mr. Allen's comments, I had asked the fire department to give us a complete breakdown of what is happening with the overtime. I understand it's a large amount and I wanted to get an understanding of what it is. It was unfortunately, we're not here. I think I'm going to ask staff to give you a copy of, what was it, 46 page?
On our archives.
Okay. If, 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 if they would, yeah, but watching it on TV sometime gets a little bit. If they would give you a copy of the 46-page documents, some of it is fluff, but there are some pertinent numbers that you, being an analyst, would like to get your hands on. So maybe that will be very helpful to you as far as numbers and so on and so, because you did not get an opportunity to hear that.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Yezefyan. Fred Tykert. Followed by Barbara Hanigan.
Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Fred Tykert and I'm here, I have one comment I would like to make and then I'd like to ask a question maybe you could help me with. The comment is on the Montrose Collection. I am the owner of the building and I want to verify that it has been quiet, it has been kept clean, there is plenty of parking. I've even offered much extra parking to, if they need it, across the street. I have extra parking lot, an extra parking lot at the post office, which they're welcome to use. And that is what my comment is, there seems to be no problems. I go by there late at night, I listen, it's quiet, and there's very nice entertainment going on there. My question that I have is completely disconnected with the first comment. I was wondering, maybe I missed it in the newspaper, but it's pertaining to that old oak tree, the one that was on the corner of Glenwood Road and Pacific. I believe it mysteriously disappeared one night and at least I was going, I was driving to school there and it was there one day. And I happen to have known that it fell out of escrow three times because of that tree. And I would like to know, was that tree legally removed? Was it illegally removed? Was there a penalty or was there a fine? Was there anything involved in that? Does anybody have any knowledge on that incident?
Pacific and Stalker, where they have that mini mall now?
Where the new building is, the yellow building, yes.
I know.
Northeast, northeast corner.
I know. If, if that's your last question, we can open it up for a response for you.
That is, yes.
Okay. Mr. Yezefyan.
Yeah, I, I know that place because I used to live on Stalker. That is where there was a Montessori school originally. There was an oak tree there. My understanding is, I asked that question because I'm well aware of what took place. My understanding is, the developer who bought that went to the city, to the regular channels and the, the oak tree was in the way of the development.
I'm sure it was, yes.
The, the, the developer- The developer had the Parks and Recreation people go out, value the oak tree, and they went through the legal means of paying, and I think it was a very large sum that they paid to basically remove the oak tree because it was going to end up being right in the middle of the shopping center.
All right, so the answer is we can remove oak trees then if we pay to have them removed?
Legally.
Legally.
That's not Stalk, you're not talking about Stalker.
You don't do it yourself. This is the one on the corner of Stalker.
Stalker and Pacific.
Let's not leave the individuals with the wrong idea that this overgeneralization of just pay to remove the oak tree, that's not the case.
Let me speak to that because I know that area, my campaign office was located in that house. That house, that tree, as a result of the heavy rains and its heavy limb structure, actually broke away from its roots in the ground and was in danger of collapsing on the house next door. And it was after the arborist inspected it and determined that it could not be saved that it was permitted. Otherwise, the owner had designed plans to work around that and fully intended to preserve that huge, it was a huge tree.
I never heard what that was.
But it had tipped over and it had metal supports. It was a very old tree, metal supports trying to save it for some time, but it did eventually succumb to its own weight in the soft ground. We did have heavy rains in 2005, and that's...
Okay, thank you.
How do you know that?
Yeah, that's what happened.
I know they paid to cut it down, pull the permits.
Barbara Hanigan is our last speaker.
You know the roofs had come out.
Yeah, tilted.
Yeah, exactly. Did you ever do with that?
No, man, no. Don't even say that. I'm a tree lover.
My name is Barbara Hanigan. I live at 2819 Manhattan Avenue in La Cressena, and we prepared a little presentation to see what we're talking about. I understand Glendale is looking for spots for many parks. Well, we have the perfect spot. If you look on this map, on the, here, on the corner of, in La Cressena, on the corner of Manhattan Avenue and La Cressena Avenue is a beautiful lot that has four mature oak trees sitting on it. One of them, the biggest one, is about almost 150 years old. It also has the Stone Cottage that's been in discussion that dates back to the early 1900s, has currently been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. And what makes this spot even more interesting is, it really is the Manhattan Avenue Historic Triangle because we have, on the one corridor, the La Cressena Women's Club that was built in 1925, the American Legion Hall that was built in 1925, and actually was severely damaged in the 1934 earthquake and was moved physically on a truck down to this spot the Bonnetto's donated in 1935. And then across, we have this lot with the Stone House, and right adjacent is the Historic Resource Number 62, the Bonnetto House, right adjacent to this lot. We would like to propose a park be built on this lot. But since there's oak trees and grasses that really grow under it, what we'd really like to see is just have very simply gravel walkways underneath it, some grassy areas, there could be California drought-tolerant native plants and some benches, and the Stone Cottage would then be the cornerstone. And Sandy Insler, that was up here previously, has made a artist's rendering, just sort of, so we can visualize this vision that we have for this lot. We would also like to have, believe it or not, the Bonnetto's grapevines that they used to make wine in the 20s, 30s, and 50s during the prohibition, they are still growing on there, so we'd like to have arbors built so the vines could come up and over.
During the prohibition? They were making wine?
Um, I don't know. I'm not sure. I'm not quite sure about that. So also, we've got another plot that you can take a look at as well. Currently, a developer has plans to construct a 2,000 square foot, two-story stucco box and two duplexes on that lot. And this is in an established neighborhood of one-story 1920s to 1940s homes. It is not harmonious at all with the area and would be quite jarring. This park would be ideal for the neighborhood because there are no grassy areas, open areas in that area. In fact, it's turning into a concrete jungle. Just one street north of us is just row after row of condos and apartments on Montrose Avenue with no grassy areas. We have no green space, and this is the absolute perfect spot. I invite all of you that have not visited, I sent Mayor Najarian an email, to come to this lot, sit under this, stand under this 150-year-old tree, and you could just feel the history of La Cressena at that spot. We would love to have benches that people could just come and visit. And for years, the neighbors have referred to this little open land as the Bonnetto Meadow, so we would love, it would be, to call the park the Bonnetto Meadow Park. And we just came here tonight, all of us, to just plant this seed of an idea because it's very doable, and I invite all of you to come visit, if you have not, to see this in person for yourself because people aren't really aware of it. When they get there and see this little street with these little homes and this park, they're quite impressed. So I urge you to take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, I want to say I did take the time to go up and visit the site.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
And it's a beautiful location, just as the speaker describes it, so hopefully we'll be able to do something about it.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes oral communications. Next item, please.
Next item is action items. And at 8:00 A., it's City Manager regarding update and direction regarding Grandview Cemetery operation and a request for appropriation. At 8:01 A., is motion providing direction to staff pertaining to the ongoing operation of Grandview Cemetery. 8:02 A., is resolution appropriating $187,600. That is option two. And at 8:03 A., is resolution appropriating $160,000, which is option three.
Mr. Starberg.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a status report on the Grandview Cemetery, which really goes beyond a report on the activities for the past numerous months of the city's operation of the, or opening of the cemetery on a semi-monthly basis. Before staff begins a report, I need to note that in just the last several days, we have worked with the firm that has provided us with an assessment and an estimate of costs for doing trimming and removal of trees on the cemetery grounds. Staff will get into the detail. But just recently, in an effort to pin down the cost estimates better than they were described in the report given to us by the arborist firm, the numbers have continued to inch up, to our dismay. Just this afternoon, the individual who prepared the report said that, well, the total cost could be more in the neighborhood of somewhere on the other side of $200,000, possibly closer to $250,000 for removal and trimming as described in their report. With that, having just heard that late this afternoon, my reaction was that when we were coming to you with options laid out with tree trimming to remove, well, tree trimming and removal to address the condition of the trees at somewhere in the neighborhood of $75,000 to $100,000, that was one thing. But I don't think we're quite prepared to recommend to you that if you wish to proceed to operate the cemetery, keep it open on the limited basis that it is now, that we quickly embrace a cost that could get somewhere near a quarter of a million dollars to deal with the trees. So as the staff gives you their report, I'd like you to keep in mind that I think we have more work to do on the issue of the trees, getting our staff arborists together with West Coast Arborists to do a closer review of the costs that they see involved in addressing the issues of the trees. Having said that, let me have Zazette give you the overall reports. Zazette.
Well, before we do that, in view of what you just said, let me ask the city attorney, how about liability releases in Armenian and English and Spanish? Wouldn't that be cheaper for the city than what we've just heard? Clearly stated liability agreements to...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we actually looked at that when the cemetery was first opened and realized that having individuals, having to read liability waivers as they drive into the cemetery, whether it's 150 or 200 cars, would take an inordinate amount of time. We did provide people with essentially enter-at-your-own-risk notices. In addition, we now have insurance that we're paying for, which has essentially, I believe it's a combined single limit of a million dollars. Mr. Grant, correct me if I'm wrong about the coverage. We do have insurance protecting us from liability, at least somewhat, but it's not extensive, it's a million dollars.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, because we've talked about that as well. Beyond the insurance coverage and the waivers that frankly I've often heard are about as good as the paper they're printed on, if somebody were to be severely injured, there's, I think, to some extent, the professional responsibility that your staff and administrators bear if indeed we think we have a hazardous condition in that cemetery. People might be willing to go in until somebody in their family is injured because a limb drops or a tree drops, or somebody falls and injures themselves. And we all know what happens then. Generally, deep pockets is looked to, and what we may think we're protecting ourselves from today could be very different when we get before a jury in a court of law. I'm very reluctant to suggest to you that we not address the tree issue in an effect hope that something doesn't happen when we have a report that tells us there's a considerable number of those trees that can pose a hazard and should be removed and a large number of trees that need to be trimmed because of the condition that they're in, both the issue of fire as well as the issue of a tree limb dropping or falling or somebody getting hurt on the premises. Ultimately, you have to make that decision, but you have a number of professionals, you know, working for you that also bear some responsibility, I think, from a professional standpoint, if indeed we're going to continue to keep the cemetery open. That's not to suggest that you close it. To the contrary, my view has been that although the process can be very frustrating, it is very frustrating to watch the litigation continue to sort of wind its way on in what will likely be several more years. Frankly, watching the importance of the opening for the residents who visit it and having been at the community meetings we held where we had hundreds of people present from areas beyond the state of California, they came to hear about the status of the cemetery. It plays a tremendously important role. So staff's, I think staff's conclusion, recommendation here would be, we think we need to find a way to continue to operate it as we are, to find ways to press for the litigation process to be concluded as quickly as possible, but we recognize that people seem to have a mindset now that that could very well be measured in years, which gives us some concern. But that certainly, most importantly, if we're going to allow people on the premises, we either need to cordon off areas so they won't be exposed to risk, or we need to invest the money and address the risk issue. I was much more comfortable giving you that recommendation when we thought it was $100,000. I'm becoming much more concerned when the number is now looking like it could be two or three times that amount, that we need to pin that down. We need to know what kind of exposure we have relative to cost before we tell a firm to proceed, and we'll likely need to assess whether or not while we do that evaluation, if indeed you want us to proceed, whether or not we have to cordon some areas of the cemetery off from those trees that can pose the greatest hazard while we do that assessment and decide whether we're going to do the work. And I need to apologize to Zazette because I've kind of just given summation of her staff report, but this recent news frankly has given me a great deal of concern.
Mr. Drayman.
How do you do, Zazette?
I'm doing great.
No, how did he do?
He did excellent, thank you.
As I understand it, some of the trees we're talking about are between grave sites. So if you're cordoning off certain trees, it also means you're cordoning off certain grave sites.
Well, that's right. And there'd likely be some large areas of the cemetery that wouldn't be available for people to go into. Mr. Drayman, you're as familiar with it as any of us. You've been up there, walked through the big center field area, the areas over by the mausoleum. Those could probably be accessed, but as you know, the southerly areas where the most trees seem to be, the area south of the center roadway, southerly, those areas, I don't know how you'd pinpoint the trees that need to be addressed, are probably interspersed throughout that entire area. So you could have 50% of the cemetery cordoned off just because of the thick trees in there.
We actually looked, Mr. Chatson and his staff evaluated to how many, what's the percentage, and it was 60% that need, that was, will be impacted directly over the cemetery.
60% of the area?
Exactly. 60% would be affected. And that's the reason why we did an addendum to the staff report to reflect what would cost us right now or close enough to what would cost us with West Coast Arborists. The original report that they have given us did not really address the issue of having to use certain equipment, special equipment that would actually be able to drive over the tombstones. And so we decided we needed some more assessment or further assessment to be done by them today. And the numbers that came back with were very alarming to all of us because we jumped from $69,000 to $192,000, and that's for pruning and also trimming and removal of trees. And so there was a need to come back and let council know that in order to do the one-time maintenance, which includes the trees, the asphalt and curbs that needs to be repaired, to purchase the $14,000 air wick, which is an air tank, air pressure tank that's used to fight fires, and apply some contingency to the report, we're looking now at $265,000. That will be a one-time fee to get us just started, you know, to clean up if council chooses to continue to open the cemetery either twice a month or once a month. The other option that's been presented to you, which is option number one in the report that staff says cease further operation at the cemetery, is also one of the options that we've asked the council to take a look at. But it is very alarming and concerning to us and, you know, fire department and the neighbors, and, you know, we understand as much as it is a sensitive issue and we would like to accommodate the community, but we also have the liability issues Mr. Starberg stated, and that's something we have to deal with. And I want to also mention, and I know you've read it in the report, even if council decides to go ahead and spend the money and allocate the money, we still need to go to court and see if we're allowed to even do the work. From my understanding, that we had some conversations with attorneys and Mr. Grant, to correct me if I'm wrong, but we were denied to be using any of the endowment monies to do some of the maintenance work unless we open the cemetery on full-time basis. And so that's something that we were not representing in our report. So having to take that in consideration is, even the money is approved and allocated to go ahead and spend it, we still need to go back and get an approval from court. So we have to come back to council and let you know.
Mr. Drayman.
Does anybody know how long it would take to go to court, as you say, and find out what it would cost? I mean, whether we have, would have permission to do these, this maintenance?
And I should know, Mr. Grant, it's coming up, that the lead attorney for the plaintiff group is here, Mr. Ayers. Saw him in the audience.
Good evening, Mr. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff. There is an upcoming status conference in July, the first week of July. I can definitely propose and try and find out, you know, what the court's position and what some of the attorney's position is. It is a problem that some attorneys, you know, may object to the city doing, you know, these safety measures, believe it or not. I did have a conversation with one of the owners, separate from what I described here in the report, one of the co-owners, his attorneys expressed concern about that it would alter the aesthetic looks if the city went in there and removed 50-some trees. Those 50-some trees need to be removed for safety reasons because they're dying and they will fall on people. So it's not a slam dunk that, you know, that if the council decides to allocate some funds, that we can go in and do it. Certainly can get sort of an opinion from the court and the attorneys, if I may add.
Well, hold on, Mr. Ayers, let me, let's go to council first. I see you have a card, but, Mr. Drayman, the follow-up.
Yeah, it's related to this. The reason I'm asking about the time factor is because it relates to the estimate on the work on the, on the trees, removal of trees and so on. Is it, I mean, is it possible that there is another company we can be looking at for a competitive bid on this?
Yeah.
Because I'm starting to smell a, starting to smell a gotcha on this bid.
Mr. Mayor, with respect to that, I'm feeling the same way. Frankly, we've always had a lot of confidence in West Coast Arborists. They've been a good firm, they've done good work for us. Frankly, the way in which their report is written, which led us to begin to wonder if the numbers we had in the report were really what we were looking for, because the report is written in a way that if you, if you look at it closely, the numbers they've given us are average costs and they, they do insert in the report periodically, but you can't use these figures to assume what the cost would be for Grandview. With that, we began to go back and press them on what they thought a more realistic cost could be for Grandview. First, we'd want to get some additional... First, we'd want to get some additional estimates of that, given the size of this estimate here. Secondly, we'd want our own in-house arborists to confirm the necessity of both the removals and the extent of the trimming on all the trees that have been recommended.
I haven't--
No, we haven't had our own arborist go through and do that. There has been a very, and what we got with this report was a very good inventory of the trees and the assessment. If you walk out there now, you'll see there's a little aluminum-numbered tag pinned to every tree on the grounds. They've done a very good survey and inventory of the trees, and along with that, their assessment. Certainly in the most critical trees, we would want our own arborist to confirm that they think that that's the course of action that needs to be taken. Secondly, as we've kicked this around, we can cer, we could certainly see the owners of the cemetery wanting to question whether or not the removal of the numbers of trees that's been recommended is really necessary, because they'd argue those trees have value to the property, and if I were in their shoes, I'd certainly want to confirm that there's a necessity for those trees to come out, for the reasons that Mr. Grant has just stated. I would imagine if the issue of costs weren't on the table, then it has struck me, in having watched this from a distance, that I can't imagine the plaintiffs or the court objecting to the maintenance work being done. There might be an issue if we were arguing it should come out of the memorial funds, but I think what Mr. Grant's found out is there's not, there's not enough earnings in the memorial fund to even begin to touch this level of cost. But I can see how the property owner might have second thoughts about permitting this work to be done. And we are on the property at the approval of the consent of the property owners, right, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
I could address a couple of the items that you just talked about.
I'll call your, Mr. Ayers, I do have a card.
Okay, I figured you were--
No, I will call your card now.
Oh, okay.
If you have, because we do have also many--
Many cards.
Well, we have about five other cards that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So let's just get into comment at this time.
Sure. A couple of things that you've already talked about, one is the reluctance of the, well, actually, there's more staff.
Could you, could you give us your name and what capacity you are?
Sure.
I mean, in all due respect--
You weren't here last time.
I don't know who you are.
Yeah, my name is Paul Ayers, I'm the class plaintiff's counsel for the Grandview case.
Okay. I'm going to give you five minutes, Mr. Ayers, as representative of the plaintiffs.
Okay.
Everyone else though is going to get three minutes, so, just so everyone knows, I'm giving you a little bit more deference.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the council for allowing it to be open for as long as it has been. It's been a great community service. There's a couple of things, I got a little bit sidetracked because of what we were talking about before. I wanted to talk to you first about, all about why you shouldn't be as concerned about being stuck into this thing as you may be. Here you are a year later, and it's still going on, you don't know when the litigation is going to be done. Two things are different now. My major focus for the last six months has been getting the primary processes of the cemetery in place, that is, interments, disinterments, and headstone placements. I've now gotten seven interment orders, about eight disinterment orders. I'm placing headstones, so I can stop doing that in terms of putting my efforts into it, it's pretty much an automatic now. I can start looking at finding the resolution or the solution that you guys are looking for, for a long, on a long-term process for the cemetery. We've also basically identified who's not going to help us. The insurance company's not going to help us, the defense attorneys are not going to help us. Frankly, I don't think the owners of the cemetery are going to help us. I don't think they have the capacity financially, and I don't think they have the capacity in their abilities. One of the concerns that has come up has been one of the owners saying that you can't get to the endowment care fund. I'm planning to have the estate case related into the class action case, which has already been talked about, and if he keeps this up, I'm going to try and get him changed out because he's committing waste on the rez of the trust. In other words, he's causing the body of the trust to be degenerated by not allowing you guys to keep it fixed up, by using the money to get the trees removed, et cetera, what you need. In terms of what the judge will do, the judge is going to let you take the trees out. There's no question in my mind. And I don't think there's any way that anybody can stop that from happening, if you guys appropriate the money to do so. Think of any things else I wanted to talk to you about. You have any questions?
I have some questions.
I'm just curious, might be helpful for me to know, how many plaintiff's attorneys are there now? And how many plaintiffs have been, have joined the lawsuit?
Right. There's two firms that are running the class action, and that's the Ayers firm and my firm. And then there's another firm, Aristine and Associates, the attorney's here today, and she has a number of individual clients. There's 140 that she's already filed, and there'll be another 200 coming in soon. So it's a large lawsuit.
And how many you represent?
Of the class, the class is probably going to be somewhere around 5,000 to 6,000, but we won't know until we put out notice after certification. One thing that you also have to keep in mind is, the length of litigation is not the same as the length of resolving your issue about access, continued access. The litigation is going to take as long as it's going to take. But in terms of finding a solution that gets you out of this, this role, I think that can be done sooner. Well, the last time that the council talked seriously about it was in August of last year, when we were still thinking, well, maybe the insurance companies will help, which is what they did in my case, where I was defense on Woodlawn Cemetery, where the insurance company stepped in and basically funded all the things that we're talking about tonight, because they realized by doing that, they minimized their claims, which they did. And they got out for probably about half as much as these guys are going to pay in this case. But I can't make them do anything about it. But at that time, we were talking about a three-day opening every week, and at that time, we figured it to be a $5,000 a month shortfall. So if we went to the back and looked at it, at the level you're doing it, which is one Sunday, two Sundays, three Sundays, or four Sundays a month, we may be able to find a way to do it, given all the, the resources that are at the cemetery. The cemetery is a lot better cemetery than I thought, last time I talked to you. Since talking to you, I've talked to some cemetery-ians. We've discovered the ability to put 4,000 grave spaces in there, which add about $4,000 to $5,000 a grave space. You can figure the numbers right there. So the cemetery can be an operating cemetery. Any other questions?
What, what coverage did the insurance companies provide?
You mean in my case, the Woodlawn case?
Yeah, what, no, in this particular case, what coverage did they provide?
There's $6 million in insurance proceeds. Is that what you're asking? How much coverage there is right now? We are in the process of bringing in other defendants. We are hoping to have $10 to $20 million of coverage.
And they provided what type of coverage for the property owners or the cemetery?
It's a million dollars general liability, every year. And because the wrongdoings go back at least to the 60s, all policy years are implicated. This is a fairly common situation, million dollars a year, we get every year.
Mr. Ayers, you, you have no objection to the tree work being done?
Absolutely not.
You would support the city in obtaining funds from the endowment for that?
Absolutely.
Would you give us a lien on your proceeds to fund the repair work of a quarter million dollars, perhaps more?
I would, I would, I'll tell you what's happened in other cases. In the Woodlawn case, we had over, we had six figures worth of volunteer work compensated in the class action. I don't know if I'd give you a lien, but I'd certainly support a fee request to the judge.
To come out of the ultimate settlement?
Absolutely.
And how it--
I'm not sure if I, if I would support dollar-to-dollar if you're, and this is the other thing now, I remember. When we first started doing interments out there, we came across the same problem that your tree guys coming across, which is, how do you drive onto the grass without breaking through to the vaults? And ultimately, we basically went to handwork. Maybe that's what you should be looking for in terms of the tree work. They may be trying to do stuff with machines that you're going to have to do with hand, it might end up being cheaper for you to do it that way. Because once you start getting into 60-foot booms, 100-foot booms, you're talking about a lot of money. And we just gave up on it.
See, my concern is that we did open the cemetery at the request of the residents who were deeply disturbed by it being closed.
Sure.
We got into it, and we soon realized, well, I think we realized going into it, that there wasn't going to be an easy exit.
Sure.
It's not so much now the, the buy, the semi-monthly openings that are causing us the pain, but this quarter million dollar bill that we're looking at, and you were here all meeting, you're here, you hear the reports from other residents, they want parks here, they want recreational facilities there, turf on our athletic fields. It seems to be a situation where we're just getting into it deeper and deeper, and we can't just open it up for the residents to view anymore. We've got to do this work. God forbid, you know, a limb fall down, and I've seen a falling limb by chance, and, you know, they fall from 30, 40 feet up and easily could kill a person. And what would we be faced with, let alone the liability releases or that? I don't so much care about that, but just having that on our heads, knowing that, that we permitted someone to go in, we didn't do the work, bang, a fatality or something, or a severe injury occurs. I would feel much more comfortable knowing that there's some compensation for us as a city. Maybe not even dollar-for-dollar.
Right.
But some support from the plaintiffs, the class attorneys, the individual plaintiff's attorneys, that they would support a reimbursement or funding from an ultimate settlement that does occur--
We have done it--
--for the judge.
We have done it before, where we've had people that have, for instance, people who volunteered and organized meetings for citizens to come together and voice their grievances. We've created compensation funds for them. I don't see any reason why, if you're doing a capital improvement on the trust property, on the rez, why you shouldn't be compensated for it. The only concern I have is, I don't know if I want to buy the Cadillac, I might want to buy the Ford, but I'm not sure I want to buy the Cadillac, and so it wouldn't necessarily be dollar-to-dollar. But I'd certainly support some sort of compensation for the city. And I think that it is something that could occur.
I mean, there's other things we can do, knowing, were we to understand that there would be some compensation coming back? Turning on the water itself for limited purposes, knowing that some of those utilities would be coming back to us--
I just got through restoring Woodlawn. It's an 11-acre cemetery. Costs $548,000 to do it. Put in an automatic sprinkler system where there never was one, just like Grandview. Woodlawn's about half the size. I did it for 550. So I doing it, as opposed to you doing it, I could probably do it a lot cheaper. And so, at the end of the day, that's probably what's going to happen. When the class settles, I'm going to have a fund to restore the cemetery. And the other part of it is, more than likely, class plaintiffs are going to own the cemetery, because the cemetery is going to be part of the judgment of the settlement, because there's certain aspects of the wrongdoings that we're seeing that are not going to be covered by insurance. And that asset is going to be taken, and we've done it at other cemeteries. Class plaintiffs run Paradise Cemetery in Commerce. It's probably going to happen that way.
I don't--
So maybe that the end of the day, after the class is settled, and the other part of the class settlement is, it stops all the prior claims, so we don't have to worry about being a lawsuit magnet, is that at that point, we'll restore the cemetery with the funds from the, from the settlement funds. So if you need, feel the need to remove trees to keep it open, I would say that's a, that's a great thing. I'm not necessarily looking for you guys to put in a, an automatic sprinkler system at this point.
I don't think the city, I mean, were the plaintiffs be interested in operating the cemetery, I don't think you'll hear an objection from anyone on the council or on staff.
There are municipalities that run them. Long Beach runs one. But I'm not suggesting that either. I have cemetery-ians who want to buy this thing as soon as the class settlement is done.
Mr. Sefian.
I have a couple of questions. One of the questions is that I, I agree with you as far as whether it's a Cadillac or a Ford, so much-- As Mr. Quintero asked a question about the insurance.
Yes.
Part of the reason, even if we wanted to turn on the water, there is a leak somewhere that the water is going somewhere, we have no idea where it's going.
It's where the grass is green.
And it's going, right. So the question is, and, and my issue with this whole report is, this is going to deal with the dead trees. And the reason they died is because there was no water.
Right.
This is in the middle of the summer, and there's not going to be rain for at least another six months. So they'll be, after I remove all these dead trees, since I'm not watering, and the end of the six months, I'll have more dead trees, which I have to spend more money to go and remove. So the question is, is there some kind of insurance that at least pays for the repair? It's like a homeowner insurance, you have a, you know, something goes wrong, they pay for the plumbing to be fixed. Does this cemetery have some kind of a cemetery insurance that pays for that type of a repair?
No.
No, it doesn't.
No. It has general liability insurance.
That's it.
It does not cover that kind of casualty, no. And frankly, I'm not an arborist, so I don't know if more trees are going to die. So maybe we're at the end of that, that cycle, that the trees that are so stressed out by the lack of water have reached their end, but the other ones are going to survive. I just don't know.
Why don't we hear from the five or six people--
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ayers, real quickly, what's the status of class certification?
It's, it's a point of upset with me, with my co-plaintiff's counsel. It's basically a question of getting the other defendants in. As soon as the other defendants are in, then we can certify. This is a no-brainer certification. I, I haven't seen anything that would be easier than falling out of a boat and falling into water with this one.
So, but so far, that, that boat hasn't left the dock yet?
The prob, it was supposed to leave the dock in January. We've brought in, there's two prior owners, the Grossman Group and the Hepburns. Both of them have been served. They keep saying they're going to appear. Judge Moore is a very congenial jurist, but I think as soon as they're in, we certify, and then we get going, we send out the notice, and we'll see how many people we really got in the class.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Drayman.
I have one question for Mr. Ayers, and I mean no disrespect at all. When you're talking about the potential for selling, creating new plots--
Yes.
How many?
4,000.
4,000.
Yeah. You want me to tell you how you do it?
No. I, you, I pretty much understand how and where.
Yeah.
But what I guess I'm getting at is, you're talking about after the cemetery is restored. I mean, I'm trying to think as a consumer--
Mm-hmm.
Why in the world I would buy a plot in the cemetery at this point, with the litigation and the history, and all of the press, and all that's going on, why would anybody want to, want to walk in and buy a plot now?
You wouldn't now.
Yeah.
You will later.
So you're talking down the line somewhere?
I'm not talking about selling plots now. Now, we could start, we could start cremations probably next month, if, if, you know, if we didn't have problems with the owners. Really, this is, this cemetery is dogged in a lot of ways. We have a real problem with the ownership setup, because 49% of it is with Mr. Goldsman, who's a fairly nice guy, but not a good businessman. And the other percent, the 51% is in the estate, and that's Mr. Trimble, and I'm sure you all read Mr. Trimble's suggestions. So, and, and quite frankly, in my opinion, the Cemetery and Funeral Bureau is never going to allow any of the people that have been talked about, and so, you know, with the ownership, they're never going to let them run a cemetery, because they're going to end up right back where we are right now. So they're going to be looking for, there are some very good, solid cemetery-ians that were interested in this cemetery, at a million dollars, when it was out for a million bucks. But nobody's going to buy it now. They're going to wait until the class gets it fixed up for them, and all the claims are washed away by the class settlement. So--
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last question from Mr. Ayers, and let's get to the other folks.
How do you get 4,000 places there? I've been in that cemetery. It looks pretty full to me.
If you notice, Kenneth Road was supposed to go not where it is, through Kenneth Village, but actually behind the north mausoleum. There's essentially a roadway-wide area there that was going to be de-consecrated and sold by Marsha Howard, and the Cemetery and Funeral Bureau washed it. That area and the area around the north mausoleum and the old shops, there are probably about 2,000. And then the other part of it is, this is very typical, is the roadways are very wide, and you take about half the roadways in turn of integrators.
So where the cleaners is?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about? So the cleaner is actually on the cemetery property?
Where the, where the fence is.
Okay.
Back of the cleaners, where they throw their cigarettes.
Okay, 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 now I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lenore Devlin?
Lenore Devlin, remember, I'm only going to give you three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, and council and staff. After this discussion, I realized a lot of my questions were answered, and I am a teacher, and I visit one of my students' graves. He was like a son to me, Otto Zarian. And I want to thank you for keeping the cemetery open. It means a great deal to his family and to me. I go there, before we had this dilemma, I was there on a weekly basis, and I see a lot of ladies that I see on a weekly basis at the cemetery, and it does us a great deal of good, and I know it costs a great deal of money for the city to do this, but we are truly honored that you are doing this. And I know that there's a stunning amount that you're looking at. I came up here thinking, if I could offer a monthly amount to keep you, to allow you to keep this open, I would do that, if that would help at all. I did work for Los Angeles County Office of Education, and they do have camps for juvenile delinquents. And those camps are often, they're called fire camps, and they do do work that you're thinking of. And possibly, you could pull them in or talk to the Los Angeles County Office of Ed or the probation department, where these students would actually be employed doing something very positive, and at the same time, they would do the work for no cost at all. And that's a suggestion, but again, I want to thank you for keeping the cemetery open.
Thank you. Followed by Michael Morgan.
My name is Sona Chapchovian. I've been here in August 6th. I gathered people, we came to see you regarding the cemetery, and you were so kind that you opened the doors of the cemetery. But enough is enough. It's already two years, and nobody can do anything. I don't understand. In the third countries, in the third world countries, it never happens such a thing. Here is because it's too much freedom. They give to people that they want whatever they want, they are doing it, and they can get away with these things. And it is very heartbreaking for us. It is two and a half years. I cannot put my mother's gravestone. It's half finished, I paid the money, but I cannot put it. And it was, I had a suggestion for you, and I've heard that right now you were talking about. I wanted, instead of spending that much money to bring down the trees, you could have opened the sprinklers, and it won't happen like that. Let the states take the responsibility, because they don't let you to do anything. It's not your fault. But let them to just give you something so that you can open the sprinklers, and there won't be any dangers, and there won't be any fire hazard for all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Morgan. Followed by Kerry Hicks Hoffman.
Mayor Najarian, City Council staff, Mr. Starburg, my name's Mike Morgan. I'd like to thank you also for keeping the cemetery open as much as you have. I have a very brief statement. I would like to address you briefly about Grandview. I have a list, published in 1924 for the decoration day, later named Memorial Day, of the 75 Civil War soldiers buried at Grandview, along with the 49 American Legion veterans, that's Spanish-American and World War I veterans. As you know, Grandview is an old, honored cemetery, over 100 years. It was once considered the Arlington of the West, and was a site for many a grand memorial day, with flags flying over each grave. I have no answer to how the city of Glendale should solve this problem, but this last weekend, I was at San Gabriel Cemetery, which is older and similar to Grandview. The city of San Gabriel has partnered with the Episcopal Church of Our Savior in San Gabriel, who maintains the grounds, while the board oversees the administration of the cemetery. Maybe Grandview could be administered along those lines. I have talked to City of San Gabriel Vice Mayor, Harry Baldwin, who gave me his card, who seems happy to explain how the city of San Gabriel administers the cemetery for the benefit of all. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kerry Hicks Hoffman.
Mr. Weaver, I also was born at Glendale Sanitarium and currently have worked there for the last 20 years, Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
That explains both of us.
See? And they give me the key. I can go in and out of the site yet. My dad was Bob Hicks, and he worked as a mortician.
Your name for the record?
Kerry Hicks Hoffman, for today's purposes. My husband said, "No, you're not Hicks anymore." But for tonight, I am. My dad was Bob Hicks, and he was buried at Grandview in June of 2004. My father worked for Kiefer and Eric Mortuary for 40 years, and no doubt helped a lot of people who were buried at Grandview, helped their families bury their loved ones with dignity and respect. My grandfather, uncle, and father were all in the funeral business, so you can say I've been around it all my life. My father always taught my sister and I to respect the dead, and it's not so many people who can say they spent many times visiting their parents after school at the mortuary. My point is this, I'm having trouble teaching my kids that here in America, here in Glendale, that we respect the dead. I know it's not your problem, and like the lady a couple times ago, I really appreciate, I've gotten a lot of answers to my questions by coming tonight. I see that you are working hard, you're not just, being at the cemetery also last week, a lot of people were saying, there's going to be condos coming up here, and the city council doesn't care, and there, just a whole bunch of things that don't even fit if you come down here and listen to you guys. So thank you very much for what you're trying to do. I also appreciate you keeping it open. I just want to remind you that there are families behind those plots, and they're not graves to us. They are a little piece of our heart. They are our fathers, and our mothers, and our brothers and sisters. They are, they were once loving, vibrant members of society, and it sickens us, as I know it sickens you, to see the way the park is now. And again, I appreciate what you're doing to help, but I would encourage you to continue to look beyond the fiscal cost of reopening the sacred place, and to the human cost of keeping it closed. How can we restore this park to a beautiful place that it should be? And I get the sense that you are trying to do that, and as a family member that would like to continue going there, I would hope that, you know, even if it's twice a month, even if it's once a month, that you don't just lock the doors permanently. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Starburg, we have several items. Number one is the visitation, ceasing it, maintaining it, or reducing it. The other is the estimates for the trees, getting a second estimate. Is it a danger if we keep the current visitation until we get that second estimate?
Well, I think, I guess, my sense is, we'd need to have our arborists fairly quickly get a sense of those trees to be removed and trimmed, and which ones might actually pose what, I guess, we term more of an immediate hazard. With the nature of the report that we're given, there's always a concern that we have notification that there's trees in a condition that they should be removed, other trees that should be trimmed, so that if something were to occur out there, the city has received some notice that there could have been, could be a hazard. So we'd want to do some immediate assessment. Indeed, if we think there is a situation where people shouldn't be allowed in certain areas of the cemetery, I think we need to cordon them off until we can resolve the situation. We had that, for example, with the wall that has leaned for I don't know how many years, and frankly, we had our engineering staff take a look at it, and they said that wall will probably remain as it is for who knows how many more years. Well, we were prepared to cordon that off if we needed to. So we'd need to do that type of an assessment with the trees as quickly as we can. Frankly, I was anticipating you would likely tell us to proceed with the work, and we'd get the work done, and then we wouldn't have the issue, at least to the hazardous trees to deal with. But now that we don't have a good handle on that cost, we can't recommend that you tell us to proceed until we pin that down.
Mr. Howard?
In addition.
Then Mr. Weaver.
I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Howard, then Mr. Weaver.
In addition, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if we were to follow that suggestion, I would like to have Mr. Grant have the opportunity to take Mr. Ayers up on what I will call, for lack of a better word at this time, an offer to discuss with him the notion of possibly looking at sharing in some of the settlement down the line to compensate the city, whether it's on a dollar-for-dollar or other basis, for the costs incurred, whether it's the past or on a going-forward basis for some of the maintenance, and also look at some potential legal actions that we might have to be able to possibly look at, moving that endowment fund out of where it is right now and into possibly a receivership, to see if there's some availability, some available avenue there that we can tap into.
That'll take at least a couple of weeks to get through that, those processes. Mr. Weaver.
I guess you're talking like a reimbursement, like certain grants, we do the work and now we get reimbursed for having done the work. I guess that's what you're talking about, in terms of settlement, but it'd be a longer range. But beyond that, I was wondering, with that report already done, do you have any ideas, does anybody have any idea how long it will take to go out with an existing report? I mean, I assume that the assessment of the trees was good, was a good one. It's a question of getting another estimate on cost of the trimming or whatever.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weaver, the comment was made about possibly being able to do it more efficiently, cost-effectively, with hand crews as opposed to large equipment. West Coast Arborist is a very large firm. They come in and they trim street trees very effectively, at a very low cost, because they bring in lots of very large equipment, they do blocks at a time, and they'll go through an area, do a very good job, and do it very cost-effectively. This is kind of the opposite situation, where they have to go in gingerly and work around tombstones. Frankly, they might be the wrong firm to do this work, because they generally bring in an army, they take a very large area, they move through it with all of their equipment, and they emerge with, frankly, a very good job, done very inexpensively per tree. This is a situation where you can't go in, move in a bunch of heavy equipment, and move through the cemetery, come out the other end, and having trimmed trees that are virtually all the same as they might be on a street.
If you call up another firm tomorrow, how long does it take them to come out and assess the situation and give an estimate?
We might also begin to try to get a sense of the trees that are most critical, and utilize smaller firms, maybe some handwork, that can address the highest hazardous situations out there, so we can open up the largest areas of the park that we can, while we continue to figure out how to deal with the bigger problem. It would be useful for us to get a sense of where the council is relative to the continued openings, as well as, had the first numbers been good, what your thoughts would have been. That'll give us some sense of how you'd like us to begin to proceed on this.
Well, let me tell you where I'm at. First of all, public safety. I don't think we, any of us want a limb falling on someone. So to the extent that our arborists can go out and identify the most dangerous situations and cordon off that area, I think we have to keep the cemetery open, at least on the current schedule. I'd like the idea of getting the second estimate, and I also am very confident and hopeful of the item that Mr. Ayers raised about somehow looking for some compensation at the end of the litigation, which would in some way compensate us for certain remedial actions. And I don't want to sell them a Cadillac, but let's go with the bare bones to keep it operating and safe at a certain level. So that's where I'm at, and I spoke before everybody else. So Mr. Yefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also read this report. I will tell you, they have some pictures, and there are some trees that look like they are going to have some problems somewhere down the line, but not an arborist, but I've been around trees a lot, and I don't think some of these things are going to fall tomorrow. Number one. Number two, I think we should open, continue to open the cemetery. We do have an insurance, according to Mr. Howard. I think we're going to be covered on that. Number two, we've talked about all these different companies coming and doing the work. My understanding is, city has crews that deal with tree trimming? Why can't we use the city crews to go in and take out, there's several, there are several dead trees that are in really bad shape. Then there's a whole bunch of camphor trees, that they're still green, but they're extremely distressed. So have them go and take out the dead trees with the city crews, and then have somebody else go in there and take care of the rest of it. So this way, we eliminate the imminent danger right away, and then deal with the other part of it later. I also, and I know some people in management are not going to be happy with what I have to say, I still think we should fix the sprinkler system, or the water line, or whatever it is, so we can have water to the park, or if we don't fix it, then get a truck there to water the trees. I think that you're going to lose more trees the longer you wait. I have no problem, I think there is an opportunity with some of these crews that can go there and cut the grass down. We can use the GYA, that'll be a good thing for them to do. But I look at this cemetery a different way than just a cemetery. I did not realize this list, and unfortunately, I had the opportunity to live in this city as long as Mr. Drayman has, or Mr. Weaver has, to know all of these issues. This, to me, is a very historic cemetery. You have a lot of the veterans from the Spanish-American War in here, for God's sake. We read about it in our history books, but we don't realize that we do have something of this nature there. So to me, we go out of our way, try to preserve some building in some little corner, whether it's made out of rock or whatever, because somebody made, I don't know, we're being asked to preserve an area because somebody made some wine during the Depression area or whatever, or prohibition. This, when there is hundreds of people, Americans, who died for this country for many, many years, that's a historic place. So for me, and I'm not one of those guys who wants to spend money, what I like to do, open it, keep it open for two weeks, I mean, the schedule that we're continuing, get some kind of an estimate, what it will cost to fix the water issue. You can get an estimate from a plumber or whatever it is. Then I'd like to see if we can reduce or eliminate some of the real dead trees through our city crews, so that will reduce our liability until such time as our city staff takes a look at this thing and verify that, and, which I think they will probably verify the same things, because West Coast Arborists are not going to tell you the wrong thing. But I think we can look at some other companies that are much smaller, they don't have this huge equipment that have to get in there, there are people who basically climb the tree and they cut it out and load it by ropes or whatever, and we may be able to do that. But that's where I'm at. But I think we need to deal with it, and I do like the fact that attorney for one group of the class did mention that there is a willingness to create some type of thing, and I understand it's not going to be dollar-for-dollar, and I hope the other attorneys who are here representing the other classes, we hope that they also will try to meet us somewhere halfway. And I see another head nodding.
You're bargaining against ourselves.
Well, what I'm saying, I didn't say exactly number.
Now we're at halfway. We'll let the attorneys discuss that.
Right. It's a figure of speech. I didn't say double.
No, but it could be misconstrued.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. So that's where I'm at, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I also want to keep the cemetery open with the same schedule. Then in terms of the maintenance, I think we can be creative. We don't have to go in there in one fell swoop and do it all at one time. We can obviously identify what appears to be the most dangerous trees, get them cut down. We can certainly use some city staff, we can hire some outside companies, organizations like the GYA, while they may not be able to cut the tree, they can sure haul the dead limbs away and so forth. So even when we contract with an outside firm, there's a lot of options to hold down the cost. But overall, we've embarked on this together quite a while ago, so we have to keep going and see it through to the end. And actually, what Mr. Ayers said tonight, I feel much more comfortable about the possibilities and the hope that this is going to come to a reasonable conclusion fairly soon, at least to the point where there'll be some operations taking place. So anyway, I feel much more positive after hearing from the plaintiff attorneys.
And we're going to need court permission before we cut anything, just so we know that. There's some time involved, and legal procedures involved. Mr. Drayman.
Right ahead, Mr. [inaudible]. Listen to you, and then I'll talk.
Okay. I want to agree with Mayor Najarian. In this case, I think that safety is a huge issue. And for that reason, and by the way, for the record, I also want to see And for that reason, and by the way, for the record, I also want to see us keep the cemetery open on the same visitation schedule for now. However, I think that we want to, I would recommend that we leave the facility closed until there is a professional assessment of the priority of these trees. I know you've been around trees your whole life, Mr. Yusefian, and I appreciate your thoughts, and I also believe that we should invest in some water there too, because it's a bad investment to go in and take down trees and to go through all of this, and then discover in six months, eight months, or a year, we're right back here asking the same questions again, spending the same money again. However, I would like some kind of professional evaluation of priorities on these trees, as to which ones need to come down. Then I'd like to see the facility reopened on the same schedule that it has been open. It is not the city's responsibility, as everybody's pointed out, to where, you know, we clearly are not in the cemetery business, but we are in the human being business, and this is all a part of running a city, and it's all a part of inter-human relations. So just to recap again, I would support what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, but in that interim, while we're getting permission from the court, I'd like to see a prioritizing of these trees. If our staff can take the trees down with the help of GYA, so much the better. But I would recommend that we keep the facility closed until that facility is made safe, and then reopen it as soon as possible on the regular schedule that we've established.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, do you have any comment?
Well, I'm trying to recall back when this all started, and it seems we're starting to go down the path that we didn't want to go down, getting more and more involved for the right reasons, to keep the cemetery open, and keep thinking, come on, courts, get moving, and are thinking that the more we get involved, the more the courts will just sit back and kind of let this go on forever. It's a private cemetery, has nothing to do with the city, and I don't think we can get involved in court cases between the state and the entities. But we are going down that road. Safety is number one. I don't know how long it should take to get our arborists or somebody else to go in there and prioritize, see which trees are most imminent of going down. Now we start watering, the grass starts growing, then we're going to be told, well, can't see headstones, you got to cut the grass. So we'll be in there cutting the grass, and then we'll be fixing the pavement. How far do you go down the road? It's just, it's a gradual, very gradual slippery slope. Most promising thing is to hear from the attorney that maybe we can work some kind of reimbursement out, so it's not 100% the City of Glendale's cost. But the cemetery's got to stay open, I think, on the same timeframe that it has been. But I just can't see where it would take too long to take that report and let our arborists go out and take a look and say, okay, this one, this one, this one, get down. And I'm just kind of curious, Mr. Starbird, the watering, we, staff knew about that a long time ago, we could have fixed the watering. We know we have city staff that could do it. We've seen the trees, and we haven't done it. I've been suggesting we do it. Well, gee, I think staff is aware of it, but there had to be reasons up to now why we haven't done either one of those. And, oh, here comes an attorney to tell me why.
Well, let me respond before you get a legal view. You're right. We've known about the water from day one, we've known about the implications of lack of water, and we discussed, as you recall, on the last two status reports, the implications of watering. You water and things grow. And if things grow, in order for people to find the headstones and grave sites, there's an expectation that you'll then be mowing and weeding, and once again, we get further and further into this. As I noted earlier in a conversation I had, the dry winter hasn't been good for lots of reasons. It's been good from the standpoint that the grass there hasn't been growing, or we'd be dealing with three-foot-high dry weeds today that we'd need to be out there cutting and making sure it was cleared off. Not to mention, we don't have an assessment of how broken the water system is, and there was a concern very early on, and we discussed it here, that if you turn the water on, and then later those allegations that somehow that continue to cause damage on the property, we're being held responsible for the time that we use that property by the property owners. We can't assure you that the property owners aren't going to try and come back on the city for damages of that property. We don't have great confidence in the owners being willing to continue to hold us harmless for the activities. In fact, to the contrary, you saw the response from the majority owner to the inquiry about possibly looking to the earnings on the endowment fund to cover some of our costs when it was a smaller number. And that was, he wouldn't agree to that unless we opened the cemetery full-time. So I'm not very confident about that kind of cooperation, so.
The only thing I can think of is you bring a water truck in and you start watering the trees and...
Well, I was just telling Mr. McFaul, we have three very capable arborists on staff. We have an urban forester on staff. My thought is, we're going to get them all together, we're going to have them spend a day out there with this report, and look at the entire situation and give us their collective opinion. For example, can you do some deep root watering of those trees and possibly help them in a way that we're not watering the entire cemetery and growing the grass? We'll have them take a look at that. We don't have a desire to have to trim or take out any more trees than absolutely necessary to protect the public that's using the cemetery.
Today, you want us to give direction to do some of that, like continue the same opening, but after the assessment is made? I mean, you're looking for direction today, right?
Clearly, the council wants to see the cemetery, whether now or after the trimming's done, remain on the current schedule of openings.
You got that.
We've got that. I guess the question is, do we close it while we try and do this assessment, or do we stay with the current hours and try and get the assessment fit in between those?
That's why I asked early, how long would it take for our three hours to go out and look?
When is the next scheduled opening?
Next opening?
We don't have a date.
There isn't one.
Well, if we stayed on the normal schedule...
July.
So if we stayed on the normal schedule, this weekend it would be closed, following weekend it would be open. And again, without conferring with the department heads, again, we have very capable arborists on staff. We used West Coast Arborists because frankly, it was going to take a lot of time to go out there and do the work that they did. I think that cost us about $8,000 for that work. Money well invested just to get the inventory, frankly. But it does seem to me, we can pull together our small cadre of very qualified arborists, and we'll have them walk the site as quickly as possible and give us their assessment.
Let them take red tape, put it around the trees that are really bad, so we can see, whoop, that's one to stay away from.
And frankly, and let me suggest this, if we do that assessment, and if they tell us that there are so many of those trees they really do believe poses a hazard, that if we cordon them off, you wouldn't be able to have access to the cemetery, then we probably need to walk down the path that Mr. Drayman is suggesting, which is, we're going to have to close it until we can go in and solve the tree issue. If they think we can keep it open while keeping it safe and address the tree issue, then that's probably the preferred way to go.
And we do have crews that could go in and selectively take out the worst trees.
Well, we don't know about that. We need to see our ability to go and do that.
With the court's permission.
Right.
We have staff.
And we don't know how long getting that permission will take. That's going to involve both the owner, as a property owner, as well as all the parties in the litigation and the judge.
Would that be a notice motion or an ex-party motion, which would require 20 plus five or whatever?
This next task conference is July 9th.
July 9th. We could probably do it on an ex-party basis if we do it on July 9th.
Yes.
The question is really how the court is going to look at the...
No, no, this is getting on tape. You're not on tape.
Mr. Ayers, you'll need to come forward. But let me just interject, not being an attorney, it does seem to me, however, that we'll not only need to have the court's permission, but the property owner will have to give us permission.
Well, and that's, I think he was going to mention that everyone's going to be at the same place at the same time, and that would be the time to do it.
The way this can work, it's a public safety issue. He can make an order based on the fact that we're going to have people on the property, and it's a safety issue. He can make that order regardless of what the owner...
The judge has seemed to, at least the feedback I've had, the judge has been very concerned about the continued limited openings that we've had. He has seemed to have been sensitive to the need of the public to get into the cemetery, at least on a limited basis. The other part of the recommendation here, as part of the cost that we'd like to proceed and purchase and get, is that pressurized water device. I will tell you, we had one of those on a ranger unit that was there the day we had the small fire. We would have had a tragedy if that unit hadn't been on site, but because of that and the quick actions of our ranger, that unit put that fire out before it got out of control, and it was moving very quickly.
Would we have any other use for that?
Oh, yes, definitely. No question about it. After we're done with this venture, it'll go in one of our ranger units and can be used out on patrol. They're very effective.
Mr. Yusefian, I'd like to, we're sort of giving them, I think, good parameters. Let's nail it down.
My question is from the city attorney. Can we have a modified motion that deals with, can we pass that apparatus?
Air quick.
And also pass the funding required to keep the cemetery open?
We'll have to work...
Can we vote on those two items with the exception of the tree issue until we get that resolved?
You can certainly vote in giving us direction on the issue of the appropriation. We're going to have to, and Mr. Allers is here. We've got the general fund, designated fund balance of $107,000 moving into a certain number of accounts, and I guess I could, we could quickly work with Mr. Allers to get some of these modified, so you could adopt a resolution of appropriation. It's a $14,000 acquisition.
It is. And Mr. Mayor, there's also the street improvements, which was about $15,000. Here's a suggestion. If you approve the approach that I just described, within the limitations spelled out in the staff report, the original dollar amounts assigned to it, and we'll come back and give you a report on this, but we would look for ways to stay within that appropriation or less if we can, and address the situation and keep the cemetery open. And we'll give you a report on what we find out, but that way, we don't have to come back and have a conversation about a further appropriation. If we could get, for example, if we can get a firm to move quickly and address some of the more hazardous trees, we'd have the ability to do that.
And you work out all the details.
We'd work out the details.
Gives you the flexibility. Legal, arborist details, et cetera.
Essentially, you're looking at option two then, which is a twice...
The recommendation would be not necessarily, though, if the motion included retaining West Coast Arborists, we'd exclude that and allow us to utilize either in-house or contract crews to the extent necessary within the appropriations identified in the staff report.
I'll move Mr. Starbird's motion.
Okay. Motion? You understood it.
Option two.
You have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second.
For what? Whatever.
Option two, there's a dollar limit there, and we're going to leave them the details.
Motion.
Including the purchase of the...
We need to divide it up. You've got a motion, if you look at 8A1...
Starbird one and Starbird two.
8A1 is the options, and the options don't deal with the arborist or the tree removal. It's just keeping the cemetery open.
Option two keeps it open.
Option two keeps it open, I think, on the current schedule, and I looked at Zet for confirmation.
Yeah.
Move 8A1.
Yeah, that's correct.
Option two.
Option two.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please. Council members? Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Now, I think Mr. Starbird mentioned the resolution of appropriation at 8A2, if you just move that resolution, which is $107,800. Well, and again, that's what the resolution is before you, is the staff, the addendum to the staff report indicates, there could be a potentially much greater cost, but at this point, I think we're not worried about that greater cost.
We would stay within that, report to you under any circumstance. That'll let us address the roadwork issues by the fire equipment.
Fund to draw.
Leave us another $70,000 that we could draw on if we found a way to immediately address some portion of the tree issues to keep it open.
That would be 8A2.
Excuse me, Mayor Najarian?
Yes, Ms. Ayers.
We're also looking at staff costs to operate the cemetery, and I have an additional exhibit that's attached there. If we are going to leave it open twice, as we have been...
Do we have to pay staff?
Well, $79,000 that is also need to be allocated.
Actually, two appropriations.
Yes, there is. So there is a total that we need to...
With a total, to a total of 187,600.
Correct. And that's under option two.
The 798 takes us through, what, a year?
It is a year from fiscally of July to June.
It'll be a whole year allocation. You could do less if you want to come back and have us report to you.
That's resolution two.
That's 8A2.
Right. So I would move 8A2 with the exception that the West Coast Arborists...
Is removed?
Are removed from that resolution.
Okay, a second.
Roll call, please. Council members? Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Now, you've got some money to work with.
Thank you.
Got the flexibility to work.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Next item, please.
8B is fire chief regarding proposed appropriation for fire department expenses. D1 is resolution appropriating $1,226,500.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute stretch and resume council at 9:30.
Sharp.
Sharp. Thank you. Please come to order again. This is the Glendale City Council meeting of June 26, 2007. We are returning from a brief recess, and we are at item 8B.
At 8B is Fire Chief regarding proposed appropriation for fire department expenses. At 1, B1 is resolution appropriating $1,226,500 for continuing operation of the fire department.
Mr. Weaver?
Move 8B1. Second.
Motion a second. I have a card from Mr. Allen, who is not present. Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Njerian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, at 8C is Acting Director of Administrative Services regarding adoption of city's 2007-2008 appropriations limit. At C1 is a resolution adopting 2007-2008 appropriations limit.
Mr. Weaver?
Move 8C1.
Second.
I have a card, Mr. Allen, who apparently has left. Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Njerian?
Yes. Next item, please.
At D is Acting Director of Administrative Services regarding annual Glendale water and power transfer. D1 is resolution reducing the percentage of operating revenues by transferring from the Glendale Water and Power Surplus Fund to the Glendale General Fund for fiscal year 2006 to 2007.
Mr. Yusefian?
Move 8D1.
Second.
Motion a second. No speakers on this one. Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Njerian?
Yes. Next item, please.
At D is Acting Director of Administrative Services regarding adoption of city of Glendale '07-'08 budget. At E1 is resolution adopting the 2007 to 2008 budget.
Mr. Yusefian?
Move 8E1.
Do you need a hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's not a hearing, but you have an amended resolution in front of you, and Mr. Allers, I believe, is prepared to provide you with information about the changes that have occurred since the resolution got into the pack-up last week.
Move E1 with modifications.
Mr. Allers doesn't want to fall behind.
They don't need to be read in or addressed.
No, sir, unless you have any questions.
I have a comment.
Resolution is amended.
I'll let you comment if you second it.
I did.
Okay. Now you make your...
You can sit down. There's something, based on the hearings I've sat through over the months and over the years, lived here 68 years, and I believe this is a very well-run city. I believe that the overwhelming majority of the public, as assessed to by polling, says this is a good city, a good, well-run city. It's not perfect. There is no such thing as perfect, but well-run. People, for the most part, in this city will look at the city budget, that document, whatever, and say, "This is a good city." There might be a typo in here, there might be something, but we know the staff is going to do the right thing. There's procedures all set up for audits, whatever. It's okay, go. Then there's a few that say they represent the public that come in here, and they come in with a different attitude. This city is corrupt, and I'm going to find where it's corrupt. And they dig into a document like this, they find a typo or something, say, "Ha-ha, tip of the iceberg. Now I'm going to dig until I expose the entire city." It's a totally different approach, and you're either in one camp or the other. The vast majority of the people in this city are the camp that this is a good city. If it wasn't, we would be inundated with emails, letters, the state attorney general, you name it, they'd be on top of us. So my hat's off to the staff and whatever to keep this city running as well as it is. Okay, now you can do well.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. I mean, Mr. Weaver.
Now, that was nice. That was not nice.
Motion?
I was rapping Draymond this morning.
It was. I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's amazing how you can convince two people at the same time.
It's been a long night. With no other comments, let's take roll on it.
Members, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Njerian?
Yes. Thank you. And the next item.
At 8F is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding proposed improvements at Car Park. 88F1 is motion authorizing a design and construction of the Car Park Group picnic facility, B, the completion of basketball court, and C, the installation of security improvements as specified by council, and authorize Parks Recreation and Community Services complete necessary drawings and specifications for implementation of these improvements. At 2 is a resolution appropriating $100,000.
Mr. Chapchan?
Good evening, Mayor Njerian, members of the city council. What we have before you, and what we'd like some direction from city council, are three things at Car Park, and I'm sure you'll hear from the neighborhood. One is we've installed part of the basketball court, having completed it, but I know that there is some concern by the neighbors, one way or another, in terms of whether or not we continue with the completion of the basketball court and what impact that may have to the neighborhood. Second is a picnic shelter that we are proposing to build there. Again, we've heard some members of the public who may or may not want a picnic shelter there, again, because of the potential drawl, but we would like to show you the proposed design of the picnic shelter, the location of the picnic shelter, and have you make a decision on whether or not we proceed with it. Third would be some security issues at Car Park. Because there was a recent stabbing, we've looked at the park, we've looked at how we may be able to bring more light into the park, we've looked at some options on security, we also have some options on potential fencing, if that's something that the city council desires, based on input from the public. So with that, I'd like to do is ask, we have two project managers on this project. Lila Batar is working on the restroom renovation and the picnic shelter at the park, and George Baltieri is working on the security issues and also whether or not we complete the basketball court. So I'd like to ask Lila to come up. We'll try to make this as brief as possible, but we do have some slides, just to give you a sense of where this park is, or give the public a sense of where it is, some of the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood, and also the look of the park at this point. It is kind of, it's pretty a dark park because of the canopies of the trees, and one of the recommendations, one of the things we will do is thin out the trees, but Lila will give you a sense of what that looks like. So with that, I'd like to call Lila up here, so she can do a presentation.
And I see that we're not making the same mistake we did on Adams. We're not leaving anything to the imagination in terms of the park design.
We even have a model here, which really, one of our staff did a great job on that model. Didn't cost us a...
After you thinned the trees out, yeah.
Yeah, just amazing. Evan did a wonderful job with his model on his own time, so we're not leaving anything to chance, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Lila.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Lila Batar, architect with the Parks Department. I have a PowerPoint for you. I'll give some general information on the site, and then I'll proceed with the shelter presentation. If I may have the laser pointer also?
Sure.
Lila, just remember, Mr. Weaver has to get back to his wife's birthday, or he's going to have a problem.
I thought it was dinner.
They ate a carnita. They're done. They went home. They're done.
I'll try to be polite.
He's getting leftovers. They're packing for Hawaii.
The park is a neighborhood park, and neighborhood parks have half-mile radius, and I wanted to include this slide for you because I wanted to show you also the service area for this park. You have, the majority of the residents are actually south of Colorado. It's a 3.22 acre site. I drove some of those streets, south of Colorado and east of Verdugo, and I took some photos for you. It's a mix of single and multifamily dwellings. It's a nice neighborhoods. Here's some pictures of the park. This is the north portion of the park, and you can see, this park has three sections. The north is dense acacia trees, very low canopies, and this is the north section.
What street is that?
This is Harvard. Has a picnic area in that north section. Then we have the middle section, which is somewhat of a blighted section. It has the restroom, the basketball court, a lot of concrete area. And then we have the south section, which has the playground, and it has a nice, open lawn area. It's a view from Colorado. In April 2004, the city council adopted a resolution approving an application for funding under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program for the development of a new picnic facility and restroom renovation at Car Park. The grant amount was $100,000. The project description included construction of a 100-person sheltered picnic facility, so we needed the canopies, barbecues, sinks, and utilities, and proving also existing picnic table gathering area. Some of the information I thought would be interesting to share in the grant application, it's a .252 acres of parkland per thousand persons in the neighborhood service area, which adds up to several thousand residents that this park serves. And it also states that Car Park is one of the most popular weekend and holiday, birthday and celebratory venues with the city. It is not unusual to count in excess of 300 park visitors at the site. That's on the weekends, approximately 200 are picnickers. It's a very popular site. I also included for you some comparison with neighborhood parks, three of them that are within the ballpark, the similar area. We have Glenox Parks at 2.16 acres, Car is at 3.22 acres. At Glenox Park, we have a volleyball court, a half-basketball court, tennis court, we have a community building, a wading pool, and of course, a playground. And nearby, we have Shoal Canyon Park, which has three picnic pavilions. Each of them has about 80 people. Then at Maple, which is a 3.8 acres, we have a community building and indoor gym, we have a tennis court, picnic areas, and a playground. And in addition, we are going to master plan that park and do a complete renovation for it. And the third one is Palmer Park, which is a 2.8 acres. It has picnic shelters, two of them. Each of them has about 70 people, and we have two half-basketball courts, a wading pool, a community garden, and of course, a playground. The user beneficiaries of project is service area families, nonprofit organizations serving disabled adults and children, service area school students, parks and recreation, day camps, youth and social service organizations.
Could you go back? Is that the fencing on Palmer?
Yes. That is the fencing on Palmer. Yeah. And we have this gate and pile-esters. They have actually two gates, and they're bounded by the pile-esters and so on. Decorative.
And there's sophisticated sensors on Palmer Park, is there not?
You know, I'm sure there are.
Along with the gates.
There is, yes. I get that there is answer.
The reason I'm asking, because somewhere down the line, when we deal with the security issues...
Yeah, we'll refer to some fencing. In this case, I just want to point out to you that this fence is similar to what the school district uses sometimes in their schools. What we did in Palmer is we reversed it. The curve is to the outside, in Palmer, the curve is to the inside. So that's the difference.
So school district fence keeps kids in the school.
I guess. Jim probably have an answer, our security expert for you. Okay? Next item. We have two custom picnic facilities, and that's the standards we had, is one is, as I indicated, at Palmer Park, and then one is at Shoal Canyon. In comparison, I have the low end of it, is that when you look at catalog prefabricated shelters for large group of users, generally, they're ship-type shelters that they house a lot of people under.
That's prefab?
That's prefab of the catalog, and...
The other one?
The other one is what we have, the quality we have in Glendale, they're custom-made shelters. This one is at Palmer.
Okay. And the one down below is also custom?
That's, yeah, at Shoal Canyon. We have three pavilions there. Yeah, pretty nice pavilions.
The slide, just looking at it, my guess is that Palmer Park covering is probably at the upper end of expense?
Yes.
With the Shoal Canyon, the more typical, lesser expensive custom?
It's happywood beams. I looked at that. Very interesting. If you look at the structure, very interesting structure, a lot of connections, then you get the concrete...
Well, I see, it isn't flat, it's actually peak roof, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a peak roof, and they have a hexagon in the middle. It's pretty complicated.
And a lot of heavy timber.
Heavy timber. But in general, I think in longevity here, it's all steel, and it probably has more longevity. The wood tends to, starting, some of the beams are trying, starting to deteriorate right now. I have issues actually with the layout of the tables in these shelters. Anyway, this is the existing tables at Car. So we have four seven-foot tables and three 14-foot tables at this time, picnic tables. I looked at the site, trying to pick the shelter location, and the north portion of Car has almost a natural shelter. This is the picnic area I showed you earlier in the slide, and it's, as I said, it's heavily dense area. Then I found that this area is almost a natural bowl for a shelter to be in it. It's a way, it leaves all this open area free. So I kind of looked at this and proceeded with this site. This is the first option I looked at, again, housing 100 people, and this option has some special, nice arrangement in it. One is that you can actually section it into several little areas. People have some distance and privacy, and you can, for example, reserve portion of that, and the public uses the rest. You have full ADA accessibility all around the shelter. Well, this one came at, the shelter itself install is at $230,000. The total project cost was $367,000.
How many square feet is that?
Gosh, I gave...
It's a 60 by 56?
Yeah, by 56. I gave some distances, so you get a feel for them.
That's a 3,000 square foot.
It's a large shelter.
So that's, is that the amount of concrete?
Yes. And that's why I tried to look at how to soften some of that concrete and break it into different colors.
So the picture you have on top, all those different colors, they're all concrete?
They're all concrete, correct.
Okay.
And then we have actually a sycamore tree there, so the sycamore tree is, comes through the shelter.
I just wanted to know how much concrete it is after...
You're absolutely correct, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of concrete.
And is that the cross-section of the shelter?
Yes.
On the right-hand side?
Yeah, and it would be the top...
14 feet high?
Yeah, and the low feet, the lower one is 11 feet. And this, the wings slope down, these two wings. And this is the high portion.
You say on one side, installed is $230,000. On the other one, it says $367,000. That, what is the difference?
This is cost prefabricated shelter, this is the installed cost of the shelter itself. Means the canopy, including foundation of it.
Does not include the concrete?
Does not include the concrete, does not include the furnishing, does not include sink, utility for the sink, trash, you know, all these items. It does not include them.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Tried to value-engineer it, cut out the wing. This is about 60 people shelter, and still came at shelter cost to install at $198,000. Then I went back to the catalogs and looked at an off-the-shelf item. I found that they provide these shelters, they call them dugout shelters, they use them in the, in baseball areas to protect the players. And these shelters are cantilevered, canopies about 10 feet wide and, you know, the length that you need. So I picked two shelters, two canopies, and I tried to place them in a creative way and have a courtyard in the middle. And that would house 60 people. And the cost of the shelter installed came at $55,000.
For both?
For both. And the total project cost is $152,000. I will also use copper color roof on it to be more natural and fit with the site. And again, this is the shelter located on the site, so you see that.
How many square feet of concrete do you have there?
This is about, if you look at 30 feet, let's say, 40 by...
That's 300, 300, that's 600, so...
Looks like...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's less than 3,000?
It's a smaller, much smaller area. Now with this one, again, I use the concrete stain to soften the concrete and break it into an interesting shape. And with this, I added also some tables on the, on the path to the shelter. These tables have shade from the trees, actually, existing trees, and that adds about 40 people. So the total seating capacity is 100 person.
Which, which tables are those? The ADA tables?
These guys here.
Okay.
These tables.
And, and is there concrete underneath it?
There'll be concrete pad under the table.
Okay. Question, if it's ADA tables, how do people on wheelchairs, are they able to go over the grass and get to the...
Into the ADA? It depends on the elevation that you have in there.
I know.
But generally, the ADA path is actually this. This is an ADA table, two ADA tables here and two ADA tables here.
Okay, so even though they're ADA tables, but regular people can use it, but if ADA people want to use those, you have two other ones that they could use?
Yeah. You don't have to provide every single table, yeah. And these are, I brought this for you, I included it. This gives you an idea of ADA table. Actually, all these tables also, the ends are open, so you can use them for ADA. Anyway, so the picnic shelters, the other advantage of these is that this can be reserved separate from this, so you have an option of reserving them separately or together. You can reserve one and the public use the other. It gives flexibility. Usually, it's about $150 a day if it's reserved, and can be reserved the whole day. And this is, this is the stain colors. I'm also proposing staining all the concrete around the restroom area. And this represents the actual color of the concrete, and it would be similar to what I have done at Far Heights on the existing concrete.
You're keeping all the existing furniture?
In the site, in general, the rest of it. That I haven't addressed in my cost. Right now, my cost is, is providing new furniture, not necessarily replacing it.
I know. What I wanted to know is you are keeping the existing tables?
At the site, yes, at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what would be the total capacity with this addition?
I have to look at that. We said four seven-foot tables, right? So say that would seat six each, 32. And then we have another 314, say another 214, that would be another 32, and 50 additional. So you're looking at, you're looking at almost 150, 180 total?
After it's done?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
I'm sorry?
Currently, you said there's 300 people there sometime?
200.
Where do they sit?
I'll tell you. I went last Saturday. A friend of my daughter had a birthday. It was almost 30 people. They had blankets on the grass, and they were sitting.
That's not uncommon, is it?
No.
To have blankets?
That's why you do picnicking, real picnicking.
That's what I used to do in parks.
Typically, people would go almost 5:00 AM to 6:00 AM to reserve a table there. And if they have a birthday party at 1:00 or 3:00, they have to be there at that time to be able to get a table. That's one of the things, is that they don't have the flexibility of reserving a picnic shelter there. And it seems to be in demand. It's a model of the, a side picture of the model. Other photos of the model shows different views.
Are you doing anything to the restrooms?
Yeah, we're renovating the restrooms. We're replacing the roof, and we're renovating interior and exterior. And here, and the roof of the shelter ties with the roof of the restroom in the staining. It's a flow in the renovation between the two. This is option four, which locates the picnic facility at the existing basketball court. And what's interesting about the basketball court is we have this row of large sycamores that provide really nice shade. Similarly, we have one sycamore here, and I used that in the proposal. And this is the proposal for that. I have the two picnic canopies here, shelters, and then I added some tables on the side to enlarge the capacity, and then used more tables in the shade. And I've noticed that people tend to walk around the park. They use, they walk along here, so I kind of provided a path for them and used stains to bring more interest and break all that concrete that we have.
What is this? This is to remove the basketball court?
No, this is in case we want to put the picnic shelters at the basketball court.
And then what happens to the basketball court?
That would mean eliminating the basketball court.
Right, that's an option.
Slab for picnic.
If we don't put the basketball court there, that's a fourth option that we're providing for you.
Again, you're gonna hear from residents who have issues with the basketball courts. What staff has looked at is, well, if we don't put in basketball courts, which had been the plan, although we've held up installing the backboards with the poles in...
The backboards, yeah.
Okay, haven't installed the basketball. If you held up doing that, could the concrete be used for something else? Well, you could relocate the picnic pavilion onto the basketball courts, essentially, and then you wouldn't have basketball courts.
So that meandering walkway is actually just staining?
Staining in the concrete. Yeah, it's a lot of concrete there.
Yeah, it's a basketball court. That's why there's a lot of concrete. And the checker thing is what? It's also staining?
Staining, yeah. It's just trying to provide interest, visual interest.
I like staining.
Hmm? And the total project cost here is still $152,000, similarly, similar to if we put it on the other side.
Boy, I couldn't have dreamed up that pattern of... How long take you to think up those colors and that combination? Just came to you, yeah?
Yeah, just came to you. And that concludes my presentation.
The engineer, he would let me do that.
Okay, thank you, Lila. George, phase two?
Phase two, yeah. And as you can see, we didn't have a lot of money and forcing staff to really look at some creative ways. Lila's really good at that, and I think you'll agree. And I like the colors too, in case we want to do something with that pad. Now I'll call George up to talk about, again, the security issues, maybe possibly fencing, and of course, the basketball court.
Before you go there, all of these things are more than $100,000?
Yeah, there was a matching from the grant.
So the most we can, so you're asking $100,000 for another $100,000 in matching?
No, we have the $52,000.
So we have $52,000?
Right. It's the $100,000 that we're gonna be getting from the state.
Okay, so that makes it 152.
Banana Water Council, right.
But some of the other ones were over 200. So if we go over 200, I mean, if we go over 152, we'd have to add to this number?
Oh, absolutely. I think the bigger picnic facility, the picnic shelter, was way overpriced in terms of what we had for the budget. That's why we reduced the scale and took an off-the-shelf rather than custom-built.
Right. What I'm trying to understand is, I understand those. He's gonna talk about security and all the stuff. That's gonna be in addition to this?
Right. Correct. The security, we didn't have any money for that. You asked us to come back and talk about...
Oh, okay, got it.
Right.
Briefly?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, George. Hit it. Hit it. Briefly, at a clock.
All right, good evening. George Balterio, Parks and Recreation. We looked at the basketball court area. This is its traditional location since the 1980s. So we were looking at options where we might, what we might do. Currently, its status is, as you saw, was incomplete. We are still waiting for direction regarding its final disposition. But we do have the basketball standard. We have the backboards. We have yet to stripe it. So essentially, it's, as you saw, it's just a kind of a blank piece of concrete where skaters are actually using it quite heavily right now on the weekends. And just, it's a large, it's, right now, it's about, about a 90 by 50-something foot area. And you see the, the large sycamore tree down at the end of the, down at the end of the park.
When did we do the basketball court?
The basketball court was, actually, the original AC basketball court.
The latest.
Was demoed last year, and we replaced it in April of this year. And then because of the complaints and concerns of the neighbors, we stopped completion.
After we put it in, then we stopped?
Correct. So it's, there it was. We did not anticipate the concerns that were expressed. So it was just one of our normal projects, something that most of our neighborhood parks have. They have basketball courts, very typical. And so we were just doing our due diligence and keeping everything up to date. So anyway, so that's what we got there, just a nice big hunk of concrete. Some of the options that we looked at, well, if we retain the basketball court in this location and install it, perhaps go ahead and come in with some additional landscaping, perhaps a sound wall, a buffer, you know, additional buffer to be installed along this perimeter. Some of those could actually be a prefabbed, kind of a concrete rail system. They're a little cheaper than putting in a block wall. If we went ahead and went along the perimeter of this area, put in a block wall, it would probably be about $40,000 just for a sound wall. And if we were looking at the prefab concrete rail type system, again, you know, just bordering that area, I'm getting a good signal here, we would be looking at a system of railing that would go in similar to this fence installation. This is pretty typical with post and rail type systems. It slides in. It goes up, you know, fairly quick. And then that's kind of the appearance that you have.
Have you seen the kind that actually looks like stone wall?
Yes, yes.
Same concept?
Yeah, same, same systems.
What's the material, George? I'm sorry.
Concrete, all concrete, lightweight, thin concrete, and just a rail system.
Lightweight, doesn't need a lot of foundation?
Right.
And goes in very quickly?
Right. And the problem with Carr Park is that we don't have a lot of space in that area, in the perimeter, that goes between, well, in this area here, where this is the same area. And Lila previously showed you this option, so where this is the perimeter or the boundary right here, the existing footprint of the existing concrete. So we would be looking at installing that additional buffering material along this perimeter right here. So, and again...
What do you have on the sides?
I'm sorry?
I know one side is facing Colorado.
Correct.
What do you have on the other two sides?
On the other two sides of the park, this is right in the middle of the park.
Yeah.
Right? So the basketball court is right there in the middle, exactly where you see it.
Right.
And Harvard is the closest...
So one side is Harvard, the other side is Colorado.
Right.
So on top, you got residential?
Correct.
Like there. And on the bottom, do you have residential still?
Oh, that's the motel, isn't it?
The motel, right in here, in this area.
I want to ask a dumb question. What if you did the option four, where the current slab is for the basketball court, put the picnic area there, like Lila's talked about, then put a basketball court down at Colorado, which backs up against the motel, which is very visible for the street, so police cruising by can see it easily. It's not hidden, clear up in the park, and it's away from residential?
That's, that is a possibility, and we looked at the cost associated with doing that.
Oh, yeah, the cost, yeah.
Our, our basketball court, if we finish it the way we had intended, a change order through a contractor that we had working on another project, we would finish up that change order. That bill tops out at $87,000 to complete this basketball court. If we looked at relocating that court farther down in that motel area, so, you can't see the laser, so...
Clear down.
In this area, again, if we...
I'm talking about...
If we relocated...
Right near the motel.
Yeah, if we relocated, this seemed to be the best fit for a relocated basketball court. It would cost us approximately $150,000 to put that down there. So...
That does give more visibility for police patrolling. Does get it away from the residential.
Correct. The, again, we lose more green space in the park when we do that, so that's another concern.
But you don't have to put that others, if we kept the basketball court, you still have to generate another 2,400 or 3,000 square foot of concrete to put your, your new shelters on?
Correct.
If you didn't do that and, and did what Mr. Weaver was saying is, use that option four that she had come up with, you put the shelters there, and then you just build a new basketball court. A new basketball court will cost you $150,000 from scratch.
Approximately.
Okay. So it will actually cost us another $150,000 if we decide to do that, because it's $156,000 to do that plan, option four, plus another $150,000 to provide the basketball.
That's correct. And then that's less if you didn't want to put any sound wall. Again, we have the hotel as our neighbor, and it may be prudent to maybe install a sound wall there as well, so it doesn't become a future problem.
The tenants there stay overnight.
Well, would, would, when you were suggesting to put a sound wall, how far it was going?
Only the, to buffer the perimeter of the basketball court.
Not as far as Orange Park.
So it was not going all the way?
No, no.
Now, how do you deal with the security?
And that is the next item. As Lila had shown you a pretty good view of the, of the park, it does have a lot of, a lot of trees that are very dense. We proposed three levels of security that we could address the park with, and trying to go from the least expensive, we believe, and most practical things that we could be implemented fairly quickly, and then move into the, maybe a little more exotic or more expensive, based on our efforts with the initial security. Successful? Did that do the job? Do we need to go to another level of security? So we propose to look at repairing some of the fencing. I'm sorry, this, this slide and the next couple slides just gives you an idea, again, how dark it does get. This is, you know, full sunlight, and this is what the canopy of the trees is doing to the park. So we proposed initially coming in with a tree trimming and shaping contract to get in there to address the 166 trees that we have. have growing in there, and to actually thin them, shape them. That, that would cost approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars to do. So that's the initial effort. Then, once we are able to accomplish that, we look at the sixteen existing lights. That's all we have in the park, or sixteen of these type of pumpkin head lights, we call them. And they are low-pressure sodium, and they throw off an orange glow. They're not high-pressure. So what we would do is replace all sixteen of these poles. The power is probably adequate, in fact, we've had it checked out, to replace the entire pole and fixture, and then upgrade that to more of a metal halide white light. And so we work with the existing sixteen poles that we have and replace them. And that would then increase the level of lighting that we have within the park.
Question. The service area that that serves, when it's a hundred, hundred-and-ten degrees out, you thin it out too much-
You cook.
-in the summer, it's, it's not going to be that appealing. That, that canopy right now really, I would think, would be great.
Looks nice.
It is appealing, and the, a lot of the trees there, as you saw, a lot of them were sycamores, and those, you know, have a certain growing rate, the elm trees, which there's, there are very high number of those there as well. And they grow back fairly quick. And it's, it's, again, the initial eighty-seven thousand dollars to address them now for security, and then it'd be a kind of an ongoing thing.
So if you trimmed in October, November, going into the winter months, by the spring, summer next year, it will have canopied again?
Some of the trees are fairly aggressive, and they, some of them would, others would stay trimmed, because like I said, there's quite a variety of trees in there. They're from various Arbor Day programs, plus certain dedication trees as well.
Well, for myself, I'm not into trimming trees because of security. I mean, it's a park. It should be green. If we trim them because we want them to grow a certain way or just for maintenance purposes, but that's, I'm not into trimming trees for security. That's why we have fences and all the rest of the things we're going to talk about.
It's also, you know, health of the trees, because they're so large, and we want to, want them to be around for a long time. And the, like I said, it's actually a healthy thing for the turf. You might have seen a lot of several muddy areas, kind of dirt and stuff like that. And it turns to mud, obviously, when the sprinklers hit it, but we, we know that it will help grow grass better.
Water conservation program in the city. Cut back on the watering.
Yeah. I think we have reclaimed water here as well for irrigation. So that takes care of the, again, one of the initial things to upgrade the existing lighting. We know that if we install some, this is not the sign exactly we would have, but essentially it represents a typical parks rules and regulations sign, so that we do have it signed and that we know that, that the users do understand there's rules and regulations about using the park. And perhaps we'd even look at maybe closing the park a little earlier, perhaps another hour earlier or something like that.
They never follow the rules.
How much is the cost of the sign, and how much was the cost of the sixteen light replacements?
The sixteen light replacements was about forty-five thousand dollars approximately.
Okay. As you looked at that, and I tend to agree with Mr. Quintero, I don't think we need to trim them so severely that turn it into a coat rack.
Oh, no.
I, I'd rather put some extra light fixtures. Did you look to see if extra light fixtures?
Again, looking, looking at the, the most cost-effective initial, you know, go at it. We thought that we would upgrade the existing light standards, and that would take care of the initially. But after that, evaluating the overall effect, and probably looking at at least putting in as many, as many lights, again, we actually proposed that in a, in another phase of security.
There were some pictures of some overhead lights. I guess that was for the basketball court?
Yes.
So any, any, you want to modify those? You want to remove them?
We would probably replace this one or redirect the lamps on this. In fact, this was more for security within the very heart of the park. But most of those lights, they probably hit the neighbors a little bit more than they do the areas that we really want them to light up, which is the restroom area.
So you're going to use, you're going to replace this with maybe some of those lights we use for the ballparks that you have more control over?
Yeah, with shields and things like this. So it's more direct.
If you moved the basketball down to Colorado, the basketball court down there, you're not going to bother the neighbors with the lighting either.
True. True. And then we'll have an opportunity to upgrade the, you know, the, the light standards that we install there as well.
Right down to the sidewalk, Colorado.
Okay. This is forty-five grand.
This is just to give you an example, you know, ultimately, not initially, but maybe later on, we could consider establishing off Colorado, perhaps a main entrance like we do at Palmer Park, and provide some security fencing both at the Harvard area and along Colorado. Maybe some decorative plaster, maybe an entry statement like you see at Palmer. That's really a nice one. Looking down at the landscaping that we could install, again, adjacent to sidewalk, perhaps in conjunction with some, some low-growing trees or just, maybe just a nice landscaping in conjunction with the fencing. It breaks it up pretty nice. And this is just another park, this is what they, it's another agency. This is their solution to that. We wouldn't want to make it so harsh or stark as they have done here. This is one of their older facilities, too. This is in the city of Riverside. They do have a nice entry statement, again, with plasters and some lights, decorative-looking. So it, it's the same idea as that we have at Palmer.
I liked the Palmer one better.
I did, too.
Did you cost out what that would cost?
We were looking at about, to redo the, the fencing, fencing treatment, we were probably looking at approximately one-hundred-and-ten thousand, somewhere around there, to do some initial repairs and then to do some fencing on both ends of the park.
When you say initial repairs, is there already a fence there?
There are, there are, there are only fences on the-
On the side?
-on the east and the west side, yes.
And what do they look like? I mean-
They're also-
They have the little-
Yes, wrought iron fence.
Wrought iron hook on top?
Yeah. And they tried to adjust it with the level, with the elevation as it went up, a little bit higher from the low end at Colorado going up. And there are some low ends there. So it's not a consistent eight-foot tight perimeter fencing, but it's-
And what is the problem with the fence? Is it because you have rusting? What, what-
It's more of the-
Somebody tried to jump over and broke things?
Yes, it's low in some areas enough that they could actually climb over.
And get to the neighbor's yard or something like that?
Yeah, they use the neighbor's yards to get through and things like that.
Hmm. Okay.
I believe, this just shows, again, the layout, but we did propose some, on a future or another level, another phase of, of security, potential loop detection systems. This would have to work in conjunction with containing the park. In other words, we would have to close the park, and then we would have these loop detection devices installed. You wouldn't see it, but it would be, it would let us know, it would set off an alarm to let us know that there's an intruder in there.
Ground motion?
Yeah.
Ground motion sensors.
And we do have Mr. Jim Batterby, our security consultant, who would be glad to answer any questions you may have technically related to this. But we were looking at zones that would be probably the most desirable areas for people to come and hang out after, you know, after hours if they went in there.
How much are these systems?
They're fairly expensive. But we were looking at about, initially, for about four or five of these loop detection systems tied into some basic security areas, about one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Wow.
And that's no cameras. Cameras are, again, on another level of security that we would propose, should this not be effective.
Is that what we paid at Palmer, more or less?
I think we paid probably around, at Palmer, I would say about fifty to sixty thousand for that system there at that time. That was quite a few years ago.
Is it this type of system or-
It's not. It's actually, it's an infrared detection system. And it was not as effective as we hoped it would be, just because there's a lot of variables at effect. It's, it's the beams, light beams and things like this.
Yeah, I got some cards.
And if there's anything else that you'd like to know about?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Yes, we have four cards.
We got five cards.
Five cards. John Kima?
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. First of all, I want to talk to Mr. Weaver. I've been in this town for forty-two years. He's done a great job, and he didn't need to have that character assassination. That was happened today.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Carr Park. I live up that street. I've been there for, going on sixteen years. I've seen it go from a gang-bang neighborhood to where kids were coming back into the park and playing on the swings again. And you know what? It's starting to get to be a problem again. What's happening is, is that I came to this council three, three, three and a half months ago. And I told the council, I says, you know what? Carr Park needs some security. Why? Because as I was coming here to speak, a kid got stabbed in the park that night, if you remember. And the thing is, is that, you know, you got, you're talking about more parks, more recreation, more everything. My God, man, you only got two men to do all these parks, to close them up. You got a man in the morning that's a park ranger, and you got a man at night. And you're expecting him to close all the parks? Impossible. If he has a problem at one park, one park is not going to get shut down. So if you're talking about putting a security system in there, it may be open all night. Now, you also talked about putting a fence over there. What's going to happen with that? And I can guarantee you this, because I know the neighborhood. What's going to happen is your skateboarders are coming in now, and they're tagging Gondel High School, and they tagged Carr Park here on Friday night. And they tagged the bag inside the restrooms and outside. They did the steps. The basketball court, I'm going to address, because, see, it's a very important issue about that court. What happened is, is that you guys put that, that pad up there, you have no place where kids can ride their little tricycles. I've watched kids up there with three to five years old with the parents, and they're on their tricycles, because, see, that's the only place they can play or go around. So the thing is, if you put that basketball court back up again, what you're going to do is breed another element coming into that park. It was a blessing when you took it down. Behind that there house where, where Louis is, what's happening is, is that at night, you can't see. Cops can't see it from Colorado. You can't see it from Harvard, and you can't see it from Carr. And what happens is, there's a lot of activity going there. I came to this council like three and a half months ago, three months ago, to ask for help on, on doing that there park. Send some more patrol cars in there, have another park ranger, do something, because people are going to get hurt in there. Now, I've also told you, now I'm going to bring, to address with the skateboarders. The skateboarders, number one, are the main menace of what's happening in that park right now. They tagged that park. They're the one that tagged the park. You don't got bangers coming up anymore. You got the skateboarders. And if you realize Carr Park right now is number nine on the best parks, it's on the internet, the number nine best parks to go to skateboarding. Yeah. Look on the internet, and you'll see it. I've been there at that park-
If you could conclude your remarks, Mr. Kima.
Okay, I'll reconclude. I watched them where they came in with van loads of people. You have people that are disabled, that are scared to death of these skateboarders. Now, all I want to do, is I brought it here three months ago, I would like to see some action done. I got a lot of nod of heads. Everybody go, yeah, okay, we're going to do something. And nothing was done. You've got that place down there where it's all grass, and you worked hard to get that there, to get grass in there. That fence comes down tomorrow. You know what's going to happen? Soccer players are going to get in there, and they're going to tear it back up again. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kima.
Where's the money on the skateboard?
Linda LaLionne.
I hope we get a little bit more time, since we've been waiting for so many hours. Okay, I, I'm here to actually-
It's three minutes. I can give you a little bit of extra time to wrap up.
Okay, my time is running, huh?
Well, no. I'm, just want to tell you that. It's three. I can afford you a little bit of extra time to conclude it, but like five minutes, I can't give you five minutes or anything, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay, but we can have conversation, so I would like to have some, some kind of feedback from you, because that's what I was told when we come up here doing-
It would depend on council. If council wants to ask you a question or make a comment, that's-
Okay. Okay. About the basketball court, I, I don't live directly close to the park, but from what I hear, it's, it's pretty, pretty bad with, you know, all the activities, the vandalism, the drug use, the, all the activities that are going. So I'm hundred percent with my, my neighbors. I'd like to, about the proposal to create picnic areas, I just want to say that the presentation was very beautiful. And however, there's one thing that you are not realizing. Our neighborhood is not Shoal Park, and it's not, you know, Glen Oaks. Glen Oaks, the residents, they're single home, single-family homes there, where they have driveways where they can park, and they have garages. As it is, we don't have enough parking spaces. So you are proposing to bring more picnic tables to bring more people to our area. On Memorial Day, which was a Sunday, I came home from church, and I could not find parking on campus, on East Harvard, Orange Grove. At Maynard, I didn't go, but in the area where I live, I could not find parking. So by bringing picnic tables and, you know, bringing more people, how are you going to accommodate parking spaces for them? You're going to escalate the problem for us that cannot park over there. We already have a very congested area with the school activities. It's not the same as the other parks in residential neighborhoods away from, you know, the buildings. We have a lot of multifamily buildings. We need a quiet oasis to go there. I propose a nice garden with fountains. In addition to that, I would like to propose that with your bigger parks, in order to provide more activities for, you know, the residents, residents of Glendale, why don't we do more arts in the parks? Jazz music, dance concerts, Shakespeare in the park. I lived in New York City for twenty years, and these things happen in a very beautiful, quiet way, very cultured way. Why don't we bring more culture to our parks instead of bringing more basketball courts, more picnic, where more noise, more trash? Everything is just going to become more and more escalated for a very small, very congested neighborhood. I'd like to hear your comments.
Yeah. You're saying, you're suggesting the things, water fountains, jazz in the park, everything won't-
Not in that park. I'm saying in the, in the bigger parks, for example, Verdugo Park. If you have more activities for during the summer weekends-
Okay.
-you can have very beautiful activities where people will want to come and get some culture and some entertainment and fun.
But you, you think if we put a few picnic tables in there, more people are going to rush to park and come to that park?
What I'm saying, that's, as it is, as the person who was doing the presentation said, that there were three hundred people that come to use the, the place. What we are saying is that we're having problems with parking, especially during the weekends. I came home and I could not find parking. And I don't have a parking. My parking, I have given to my tenants. So I have two cars that are, that I use to park on the street.
But you're saying the picnic tables will make the situation worse?
Of course, because more people come to picnic.
Well, we're talking about residents who live within a half mile. That is their park.
Okay, if you can have people walking-
I don't understand your logic, how-
Okay, my logic is this. If you can provide parking space for the people that are coming to picnic there, fine. But if they're going to come and park on residential streets where the residents living there cannot park, then it's an issue for us. So what you're suggesting is that people that live ten blocks away come and use the park, and we, you know, give up our parking spaces and not park where?
But they don't walk to the park then?
Pardon me?
They don't walk to the park? They all drive?
No, most people, most people come in their cars, and, you know, they park in our spaces.
We'd have to evaluate that, that traffic analysis.
Come during the weekend, on Saturdays and Sundays in the summertime, and you'll see.
There? I've been there.
Mr. Drayman?
So, just to follow up on, on Mr. Weaver's comment. So basically, the idea that you're communicating is if you build a, a larger facility, a picnic facility, you know, if you build- you build it, they will come. That, that's-
They'll build it, they will come, yes.
Is the idea. Is that what you're saying? In other words, if you have, if you have picnicking facilities for X number of people, and you're, and you're impacted already, and now you build a picnicking facility for X times ten, you're saying it's going to compound the problem?
Yes, hundred, hundred percent. And I, what I'm saying is also that if, if the area is residential and quiet for most of the time, like other, like Glen Oaks, which I drive by many times, and I see people, you know, using the park, the tennis courts, but it's very far away from the residential areas. Shoal Park, I was there for Father's Day. They actually rent, um, you know, the, our church paid six hundred dollars to rent the facility, uh, to use the facility, uh, at Shoal. Uh, but these are very exclusive areas. Our area already is impacted by a lot of activities from the school, plus some , uh, commercial activity. So you're bringing more activity into the, into the park, more tables, more facility, uh, you're just, you know, accumulating the problem that we already have. We, the residents of the several streets over there, would like to have some quiet parks to go to and enjoy. Do we have the right to go and enjoy a, a, a nice quiet stroll? Or do we have to constantly bombard it during the week, Monday through Friday? We have the school, the noise impacted, we're impacted by that. And then on the weekends, we've got all these picnickers that come. You don't know where they're coming from. Many of them come from not our neighborhoods either.
Pam, Glen Oaks Park, I-
Sir Weaver, what do you call-
I've lived by Glen Oaks Park for sixty-eight years.
I got my answer. Thank you.
And I'll tell you, the parks nowadays, Glen Oaks Park, I bet you ninety-five percent of the people in there come from Los Angeles or whatever. They find that park. We can't stop them. We have a park. They can come. That's true of any park. It's not just yours or ours.
No, I'm not, I'm not claiming the park as my park.
I, but I, I agree with the speaker. I mean, quite frankly, I'm a little bit surprised that we're thinking in terms of, you know, this huge picnic type of situation. I, I don't think it's appropriate for this park. I think we need to have some picnic facilities and tables and so forth, but I don't think we have to really over, overdo it. I find, and I've gone there five times, not only to your neighborhood, check out the, uh, the parking situation, but also, or rather, the school situation, but also two car park. And, uh, I mean, to me, it should be a park that people will walk to. And some people may drive there, and they may picnic there, but I don't think this is the right location to do something really extravagant, to tell you the truth. I mean, I think we have to upgrade it. We have to provide some picnic facilities, but not for any large number.
You know, it's okay to upgrade the park and the existing, uh, tables that are there, but to make it more, the bigger, it's just going to explode our problem that we already have. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
It's been a long one, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Um, the presentation was great, but they didn't touch on several bases, such as the, uh, trash that's left after these huge picnic events during Memorial Day on the weekends. Uh, people are blocking the driveway into the park at Carr and Harvard. Uh, it's difficult for, um, uh, emergency vehicles to drive in. Um, in addition to the traffic, Mr. Weaver, there is traffic that comes from outside of Glendale. They don't walk, unfortunately. I wish they walked.
Oh, outside Glendale, yeah, they're driving.
Yeah, they're driving. And we're, like, uh, Linda said, we have, um, nothing but apartment buildings up Carr. We've got very little residential or single family dwellings. And we're impacted, we're sandwiched between Glendale High School and Carr Park. I mean, give us a break, gentlemen. You know, I mean, you know, you live right next to Glen Oaks Park or in that area. It's nice and quiet over there. I wish I could have that, you know? I wish I could have, you know, less traffic in my neighborhood, you know? Uh, the, uh, city attorney mentioned, uh, um, a higher quality of life. I would love a higher quality of life in my neighborhood.
Would you say the park is an attractive nuisance? It'd be better if it was gone?
I've been there, well, no.
Then nobody would be coming in because there'd be no park.
No, but I've been there for thirty years, and the violence, it has gotten better, okay?
Better, okay.
It has gotten better since nineteen seventy-eight, when I moved there, till now. But we still have, because of the basketball court, the violence, the, you know, I mentioned it before. I've been here since September of last year, discussing this issue with, when you were mayor.
And you wanted the basketball court out?
That is correct, but you mentioned, you know, possibly moving it or relocating it to, uh, right next to the motels with better-
At Colorado, where there's better visibility for the police.
Yes, you know, so-
Is that okay?
Yeah, that, that, you know, hey, they, they've got, uh, if the cops are going to be coming, and they're going to be, uh, there's going to be better visibility, that's not a terrible or horrendous idea. On the flip side, Linda mentioned, you know, a garden or, or something, you know, in, in, instead of the, uh, basketball court there. But, gentlemen, by, you know, uh, the designer of the park, she mentioned that, uh, just the tables will accommodate three hundred people. But she's not talking about, you know, all the other people in the party. So you're talking about, you know, five to, five hundred to a thousand people, you know, and, and, and not to mention the litter in, in front of our homes, our streets, you know, on, on the Fourth of July. You could go there on the Fourth of July. There's trash. Oh, the place looks like a pigsty, okay? It does. You know, I, I, I just ask that you give George better guidance, you know? If you want to relocate the basketball court down to Colorado, where there's better visibility, you know, for, uh, uh, GPD to drive by and, and see fights.
Anything you haven't said yet, Mr. Styles? The trash, the courts, the crime. I want to give you a chance to say everything.
That's it.
Every point that, uh-
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Parking, you mentioned parking.
Parking.
Thank you. Randy Bridgeford.
Same speech. Good evening. Randy Bridgeford here. Uh, I am a thirty-five-year resident on that street. And about three or four years ago, the city implemented, uh, us to grow green grass on our parkway. Now, I'm not trying to mix apples with oranges, but when Saturday and Sunday comes, or a three-day weekend, everybody and their mother's brother puts their coolers, their barbecue, their everything on the area that you guys implemented us to grow. I've had to replace, I think, fourteen sprinkler heads. I didn't know anything about sprinkler heads until people started stepping on them and breaking them and stepping on them. I even put little fences around a couple of them, and they still step on them and that. So, and I, I just want to ask one question. I mean, who, who in the Army Corps of Engineers built a gate against Carr Park there, where there's, you have Orange Grove there, but the, the gate is locked. They don't open it on the weekend. That would free up a little bit of traffic. There's people in this room that would adamantly oppose to me asking that gate to be open. But the lady that lives next to her to the park, she has a key. I don't know if anybody knows that. She has the key to that gate. I asked the guy in the park one time, why don't you guys open up that gate? It might free up a little area because I live on Harvard. This is on, oh, we can't do that because the kids would come from the school, and we'll do it on the weekends and free up some of that traffic. One thing I want to point out, Maple Park, these other parks, they have places to accommodate park people to park. They have parking areas. You know, why don't you just scratch the idea of the basketball court, knock down some of those trees, and then make a parking area? Then you can have a basketball court in the lower half of that place. But I'm going to tell you this much. Those people don't, that come to play basketball at that park, they don't know when it's ten o'clock. Police officers aren't coming around at ten PM and offering citations to people because they're playing after hours. My mom's house is four doors away. She's eighty years old. Norbert lives right next to the park. You could hear that basketball going till one and two o'clock in the morning. And you guys want to build another basketball court? You want to bring more picnic tables in? I want to know who's on the Army Corps of Engineers who's deciding, who's thinking, let's, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this.
Project.
We designed that gate.
I worked for the Corps for over thirty years, and I didn't know we had a flood control channel there. We have a flood control channel there?
No, there's a, there is a gate on Orange Grove that stays locked, and nobody will open it to three-
But it says US Army Corps of Engineers?
Well, I don't know who it is, you guys hired to do it, but they, they got, they got the, they-
That was at the Corps.
They built the, I call it the Army Corps of Engineers because somebody was asleep at the wheel.
Oh, no, that's a federal agency.
If the Corps had built it, there wouldn't have been-
It's a disaster. The Corps built it, that's right.
It wouldn't be standing now.
I don't like people putting coolers on my grass. I don't like people stepping on my sprinklers. You know how bad the, the parking situation is? Three years ago, at the, at the Glendale High School, uh, graduation, I let somebody park in my driveway for seventy-five dollars. That's how bad the parking is in that area, you know? And you bring more people in, and more people in, and more people in, and it's just going to get worse. He, he made an understatement. I've seen that park look like, I don't even want to say ghetto, but they throw their diapers, they throw their garbage, their beer cans. It's all over the place. And you got one guy who cleaned the park. The next day, he's like shaking his head going, Randy, I don't know what I'm going to do about, it's that bad. It's really bad. And, and I, I'm-
Thank you.
I think that, uh, if you build more picnic tables, I, I've seen two hundred people in that park. It's true. I've seen two hundred. But if you're asking for another three hundred or four hundred people to come into that park, you're just asking for more trouble, and more, uh, residents are just going to, just, just dislike the whole park situation. I'm not saying knock the park down. I love the park. But how are you going to accommodate these, but how are you going to accommodate more and more people if, if like-
Thank you.
Maple Park has parking, Glen Oaks, Shoal Park, they all have parking spaces. But there is no parking. There's, there's Carr Drive, there's Harvard, there's Orange Grove, and there's Colorado. And that's all I got to say. It's something to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Bridgeford. Armando Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the council minister, Armando Martinez. I live in Orange Grove in twenty, twenty years. I just got to call your attention and a couple little things that everybody look, overlook. The playground for the kids is just a few foot away from the service road. Traffic in there is getting heavy. Police, city traffic, bicycles, skaters. I have seen about three times accidents with the little kids. We asking for big troubles. The best thing to do with the park, I'm not in favor of the, what the, I mean, the, the basketball courts either. It's bad as else. I live a hundred and feet away from, from there. So I propose that we move the children's place to the present, uh, cement path for the, for the basketball. If we move the, the children's place in there and we fence it, the city saves a lot of problems and a lot of bothersome to us, the, the neighbors of the street. The other thing we consider, isn't it, well, bringing a lot more people to the park, it's a lot more traffic. We already got enough of them. Dirt and, and bad traffic problems. We don't even have to build a retaining wall, a sound wall against our, our, Orange Grove. Just a little better to clean, to look the park with. That's it.
Thank you. Nancy Kent, last speaker.
My name's Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of southeast Glendale, but I live closer to Maple Park than I do to Carr Park. But I just wanted to mention some details on this. Um, it sounds like from the staff report, people, hundreds of people are already coming to picnic at this park, but a lot of them are doing it on blankets if they're in a large group. And I generally am in favor of the city offering picnic table shelters at parks. And whenever a shelter is built, I would advocate a solid roof rather than the lattice roofs that are at Palmer Park or, uh, canvas, uh, roof. And it looks like, from what was shown, that, that solid roofs are, um, proposed to be used at this park. Next point is, on the model, and in some of the slides, I noticed the ground looks terraced, and I don't know if that is the actual plan to have it terraced like that, or that was just done to make that model. But I-
Grade elevation. The changing grade from Colorado north.
It actually drops.
But is it to be terraced like that? Okay, so it's a gradual slope. Okay, good. Um, and another detail in some of the plans, was it my imagination, or did we see concrete that was again shown in the color green? And if that's happening, I would advocate to the staff, the staff and all consultants not to show concrete with the color green on plans for a park. Um, last point is, when the idea of, uh, an entryway and landscaping was brought up, and also the checkerboard pattern of the cement stains, uh, all these things are pleasing to the eye, but whenever we add things to the park, it also needs constant maintenance. So I hope that will be factored in, and I would advocate to keep it simpler rather than to add, uh, impressive entryways. Today, as I passed by Elk Mini Park, I noticed a new crop of graffiti on the very beautiful pillars at Elk Mini Park. So somebody's going to have to clean that off. Anyway, thank you very much.
Mr. Drayman and Mr. Quintero.
I apologize if I missed this earlier. It's, it's-
Yeah, you missed it.
You sure I did, Mr. Weaver? Where is the closest to Carr Park, the next closest pocket park, mini park with children's facilities and picnicking? Just that alone, or some combination of that and basketball? Even without the basketball, whereas?
Think it would be Maple.
Maple.
Don't shout out the answer. It's Mr. Chapchan's.
I'm sorry. No, I think it would be Maple. Maple Park would be the closest, I think.
Do we have that on a map, by chance? The, the relation, the correlation between the two maps?
Not tonight.
I mean, the two parks on a map?
You want, yeah, if you can.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver.
It's okay. It's okay. You know, we're not going to make a decision tonight. There's no way. Quarter of eleven, we're going to design this thing out and, and make a motion. It's not going to happen.
Well, we can give some direction to staff. I think that's-
Well, that's what I think we better be doing.
If I may, while I'm up here-
Should we go to Ms., you have a-
Oh, just a, a comment on where we got the picnic shelter idea from. It was when Don Zabinski went out there and actually surveyed people at the park. He went out there several weekends and asked what they would like to see in that park in terms of amenities. And Don used to be our, our grant writer, so-
When you say he surveyed people at, at the park?
Right.
Or the residents near the park?
Well, the people that were using the park, yeah.
Wow, that's a prop.
Did Don ask if the people, the people he surveyed were Glendale residents?
He didn't. No.
He didn't?
No.
They could come from Eagle Rock. It'd be the closest for Eagle Rock.
Okay, while you guys-
Getting close.
Site the location. Let's go to Mr. Quintero.
Right there. That's Maple. It's probably Maple. Palmer would be, yeah.
Maple would be, Maple would be the closest park to that. And that's, was that about a mile?
Yeah, because it was outside the half-mile radius. My radius was about here.
Yep. It's, it's like when we talk about, and some of our sta-
And Palmer's south.
Fire station right on the border.
About Palmer. Yeah, that's Maple. Palmer goes all the way down, right there. There is Palmer.
It's like when we talk-
Here comes another map.
It's like, it's like when we talk about a fire station on the border of the city. This is a park on the city border.
Yeah, well, wait a minute.
So the sphere of influence is Eagle Rock, too.
Let's wait our turn. Let's wait our turn for, uh, Mr. Drayman to finish, and then Mr. Quintero.
Okay, well, this park has had issues for many, many years. This isn't a recent thing. And my feeling is, if we introduce a basketball court, we're going to continue to have issues there. We can mitigate it with a fence that would be closed in the evenings and so forth, but the bottom line is, we're going to have issues there. Moving it near the motel, that's going to, you know, be a little bit of a, a better bet for the neighbors, the single-family homes that front the current court. But we're going to attract people that aren't necessarily, you know, going to just play basketball. Um, so my feeling is, we should just pass on the basketball court, period. We should put up a well-designed fence like we've done at Palmer with wrought iron and so forth, and close the park at ten or eight or nine or whatever- so forth, and close the park at 10, or 8, or 9, or whatever, whatever time we decide to close it. We should use a little higher, a little more powerful lights. I think that's a, I think that's a good idea. But in terms of the, and then the fencing along the side, other, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we can go with what we have there now, or, or do the metal fence, but the fencing along the two sides seem just fine. What's missing is the, is the metal fences to sort of enclose the entire, enclose the entire park. And once again, to me, it's just too much in the way of picnicking opportunities. There's other picnicking opportunities throughout the city of Glendale. We don't have to focus on this, on this situation, or rather, on this park. I just think the parking issues in that neighborhood, and, I mean, it's just too much. It's just too much. And, and when I drove by these past few weeks, I mean, there's people using that park that obviously are transients, there's no question about it. Whether perhaps they're staying in some of the motels, I know the police are always actively involved with different law enforcement activities for that stretch of Motel Row. So, I don't know who the people were necessarily that were in that park, but they sure, you know, they didn't look like they were doing too well, let's put it that way. So, I think we just have to redo it and upgrade it, but let's not attract more, more people to this park. I think it needs to stay in a sort of neighborhood, neighborhood setting.
I'd like to ask Mr. Starbird a question. Based on everything you heard, Starbird, do you think it'd be best for staff to revisit at all, based on comments you're hearing from us and the public? I mean, you know, I'd hate to go down the road we did with Adams Square and end up doing something we'll regret doing. I just don't know. Go ahead, Mr.
If I can ask my quick reaction, I'd like to get a sense of the council. I mean, the issues are pretty clear, and you seem to be going one by one, giving, you know, your sense of those. And I'd like to finish that, and we'll probably have a consensus.
That's why we're here, yeah.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, I haven't made a comment about my views on this park yet. I've asked some questions. So, here's what I'm hearing, and these are my thoughts. First of all, I don't see a direct correlation between, necessarily, between improved facilities and more visitors. I don't think we've, we've proven that. However, if the visitors are driving to the park, and to the extent that they are driving to the park, they can also drive elsewhere, to other parks. I think also, one of the reasons they're driving to the park is because they're not coming there just to shoot some hoops, they're also coming there to picnic, which means they're bringing family, and they're bringing coolers, and they're bringing things to barbecue with, and, and all of that. So, I do believe they're driving. Neighborhood parks are meant to accommodate and foster a better quality of life for the residents of the neighborhood. That's the whole idea of the pocket park. That's why you set up this, this half-mile area. So, it seems to me that the residents surrounding Car Park are not asking for the park to go away, they're, they appear to want a park that suits the needs of those most directly impacted, the people surrounding the park. That's what it sounds like. Gangs, skateboarders, trash, traffic, parking, I have to rely on them a little more than, than just what I imagine it's like. They're the ones that are impacted. And I, I want to urge us all to learn a different lesson from the Adams Square Park that you mentioned, Mr. Weaver. One size does not fit all in terms of facilities. And although there is the impetus we all have, we have a park, let's put everything we can put in there so we can accommodate every need, I don't think that's where we want to go. That's one of the lessons from, from Adams Square. We lost sight of the fact that it was to be a different kind of theme. It was to focus around a historic element. We lost track of that and tried to cram that, plus everything we could possibly put in a park there as well. Seems to me that the need here is for a more tranquil setting than a, than a high-use facility because we've seen what that, what that's brought. So, to me, that's one of the, the lessons of the Adams Square Mini Park, is that one size does not fit all in terms of facilities. And in this case, it would appear that more is less. So, I'm inclined to give, if someone asked to give these folks a break, and would urge a, a more scaled-back design, and a more scaled-back use of the park. And definitely, it should be, in my view, definitely it should be fenced, so there is some control of this park. They're the ones living with it. And I don't see anybody else here telling me anything else.
Mr. Yusefian, you have comments before I go back to Mr. Weaver? I just want to give you a chance before we go back.
I only said relocating the basketball court because when we did the adult recreation, we took out tennis courts. And they would say, oh my God, we need tennis courts, everybody plays tennis. So, we're hunting all over to find tennis courts. Now, I can live with what you're saying, Mr. Draymond, you take out the basketball court. Well, if we don't need a basketball court, and there are other places to go, and there's plenty of them, fine, take it out. Make it a more laid-back, bring your blankets, sit-down kind of park. Even the current pad that we just paid a lot of money to put in, I don't know what we do with that now.
Leave it.
Put it, can leave it there, I don't know what you put on top of it. Kids can, they could do any number of things on the surface, just leave it there for them. Like I said, fence it, north, south, close it down at certain hours, leave it as a laid-back park. If you want to come down, you bring your blanket. There is no basketball court, there is no tables.
In terms of, in terms of that concrete pad, one of the speakers suggested the sort of kid, but that, will that work? I mean, the rubber manning that we used, does that go over concrete, or does it go over?
Well, I think they suggested relocating the playground equipment to that area.
That's what I'm saying.
We would, no, we would have to, we'd have to dig it up, we'd have to tear it up.
Yeah, because you can't put, the rubber pad has to go on a different, that's what I thought.
Okay, my thoughts are, number one, I'm not a fervent believer that the basketball court needs to be completed or moved. I have no problem with it being, remaining as a slab there. What I am hearing is that there's a lot of management issues, there's a lot of operational issues, cleaning issues. That appears, with regard to the garbage, that's certainly what we're hearing, with regard to playing and use of the park after 10 o'clock. I think a fence, a completed circumference fence to the park is what is needed. However, we're losing sight that this is a park, that the fact that we see 200 people using it on a every, on a weekend, assume it's an average weekend, is an indication of the need for the residents to have a park. These are folks that are going there, don't have a backyard, to have a, you know, a birthday party or a little get-together. They're coming to this park even without the tables there, they're sitting on the grass. I think we owe it to the residents to, to put some amenities there, some shade, some picnic tables. The model, if that's in any way correct, doesn't appear to be an obtrusive or a huge structure. There's four nine-foot tables and some ADA tables. I think at the very least, we need to provide some decent amenities for the folks there. People are going to come to that park whether you have the tables or not. And in one of the, and we've heard it, we've, we hear it every, we didn't hear it this week, Mr. Milano wasn't here. But the folks that champion the issues of southern Glendale say there's just not enough park space, there's not enough attention drawn, and if we can encourage comfortable seating at the parks, we should do that. We can't keep the folks from Los Angeles out, or from whatever city they come from. That's just the nature of this park, being near the border of Los Angeles. But we should try to keep it as user-friendly as possible. I think if we install the fences, if we can work on the management and the cleanup issues involved, whether there's an entrance issue, this gate should be locked, or that gate should be locked, or the neighbor has the key, I don't, that's kind of an unusual situation if it's true. In that manner, we should accommodate the residents of the neighborhood, but I don't want to make it seem as though we're putting up a sign saying, Car Park, you know, now go home. We don't want you here, we want a, a quiet park. I think the need is for a park that serves various functions. Yes, from the pictures, and from my experience at Park, at Car Park, which has been some years ago, there are many little quiet areas, and they're shady, very idyllic locations. But there's also that need for the neighborhoods and the apartment owners, excuse me, not the apartment owners, but the apartment dwellers in the surrounding areas for a place to go and have a birthday party, or an anniversary, or just a picnic, so. You know, I can get rid of the park, I can get rid of the basketball court, I can agree with the fencing, but I hate to start knocking out all the picnic tables because I think it's just a, it's a reflection of the demand and the need of the, of the community. Oh, you, Mr. Yusefian?
I haven't said anything except ask questions. So, I've been very quiet, I've been keeping track of my time, and I think so far I've spoken about 13 minutes during the whole thing, so, so Mr. Weaver can't blame me.
You're not counting since.
You've just burned up another minute and a half.
You're not counting since 9:00 AM, though, right?
We made it to 11 o'clock with Adam.
That's why he has a second counter.
Go ahead, Mr. Yusefian, go ahead. You're keeping track since 9:00 AM.
How big is this park?
2.8 acres.
3.2 acres.
3.2 acres. How big is Wilson Mini Park?
About 16,000 square feet, so, yeah.
Third of an acre? Okay, how many people do you have at Wilson Mini Park?
Well, that's usually at least 70, 50, 70 people at one time.
Okay, 70 people on a third of an acre. Third of an acre. You have 200 people on a three-and-a-half acre lot size. This is no mini park. I hate to tell this to you guys, this is not a mini park. This is a park for a larger area. If you look at the design, if you look at the map, there isn't much there. I hate to say to the speaker, Mr. Weaver doesn't live right next to the park, he lives actually on the hill, he drives by the park, I live next to the park.
And I used to play in the park, man.
But he used to play in the park.
Glen Oaks Park.
And for you to think that Glen Oaks Park is a very quiet, serene, and nothing happens, that's further from the truth. You come there Saturday and Sunday, and you will see what happens on Glen Oaks Park. They are there at 7:00 in the morning, and they're already spreading out, and picking up all their picnic tables and so on and so forth, and setting all the stuff up. Cars get parked all the way around. I hear them until sometimes 10:00 at night, when the guys are chasing the girls, and the girls are giggling very loudly, mind you, I hear it inside my house with all the doors and the windows closed.
Double-pane windows.
And they are double-painted. I just recently bought double-painted, and that doesn't still help. The reality is, I chose to live next to a park. You will not see me come in here and complain to shut down that park. There is a reason, there's a park there. Parks, they have a reason for it. Park is there for people to use them. I do not want to build a cemetery that nobody goes. It's for people to go and have laughter and enjoy. So, there are issues with this park, and some other parks, just there were with Palmer. Believe me, if you ask Margaret, she'll tell you, Palmer Park wasn't exactly the safest park in the neighborhood. There were many issues in Palmer Park, we took care of them. We resolved the issues. We put fencing around it, and so on and so forth. I'll tell you what I'm for, cut to the chase. I think we should do something similar to Palmer Park, put a fence in the front and the back, fix the existing fencing that is there. I think leave the play court as is. I'd like to see some staining design that you have done actually on Exhibit 3, or maybe Exhibit 4 to be included, so the, the, the ground doesn't look so bleak, you know, so bland.
Concrete.
Concrete, you know, so you stain them. I want to make sure that you take care of the bathrooms, they need to be, I went inside, and I'll tell you, it needs remodeling, the bathrooms need to be worked. And, and I don't have a problem with some of those picnic tables. I have a problem with all of them. I think there's too many. I think a cutback on that will be helpful, but to be honest with you, I think whether you have the picnic tables there, or you don't have them there, you're going to have the same 200 people or 300 people showing. Because people need a place to go. I'll tell you where my people come to my park, or next to me. They come from McArthur Park, they come from North Hollywood. Because I have gone there and asked them if they're Glendale residents, because they don't know who the heck I am in the first place. And when I go there, and I go, by the way, I'm Bobby Seffian, Councilman, oh, we didn't know that. I go, where are you from? And they tell me where they come from. And that's what it is, that's the reality of the world. When we lived in Hollywood, guess where we came? We went to Verdugo Park. And that's, that's the way it is. So, that's my direction at this point.
Well, I think we have a few points of mutual acceptance.
Fencing you got.
Fencing, no one's crazy.
Fighting.
Basketball court.
No basketball court.
To be rebuilt.
Restrooms.
And restrooms.
Let me just ask a question, George. This is a $100,000 grant for, for these picnic tables. Will we still be able to make use of it if we just cut down the, the number?
We certainly will work on that. Mark is working with the state, the land and water conservation folks.
They need to put more money.
We talked about, what if we don't end up building it, or can we use the money somewhere else? And I think, Mark, we're still looking for that, or did we get clarification?
Well, the fact of the matter is, it was a.
Come forward, Mark.
Why, you know better. There's another good Trojan.
Mayor Najarion, members of council, we have looked at possible alternatives to that. It was a competitive grant for $100,000. And a competitive grant is much harder to change than a per capita grant or a block grant, where we simply specify the use that we want for it. In a competitive situation, Don Zabinski went out in 2004 and competed against, I would say, probably a couple hundred other agencies who were looking to get land and water conservation funds for their cities. And Land and Water Conservation Fund only has about $2 million a year divided throughout the state, so I would say he was probably one of, or we were probably one of 15 or so winners of that award. That having been said, it, it is much more difficult for us to change the nature or the scope of work on a competitive grant. What we probably can do, if we decide not to have a picnic facility at Car Park, is to look to have a picnic facility perhaps at a similar park, a park with a similar demographic usage, park that is in a similar part of the city, maybe Maple Park.
Glen Oaks Park.
I don't know about Glen Oaks Park. Griffith Manor, Griffith Manor Park might be a candidate. So, I would have to pick up the phone tomorrow and call up to Sacramento, thinking seriously about not doing a picnic facility at Car. How would you feel about us changing the scope of work and do a picnic facility at another one of our parks that have so much, a much similar demographic? I mean, when Don did this grant, he really spoke about the need for facilities in this particular area and these particular residents. So, it's, it's kind of like no good deed goes unpunished. He was trying to do something, and the department was trying to do something for the benefit of that service area. At least some of those folks would prefer to have something else.
I thought we said we didn't want a few.
Well, I was, I was running through some points, and I didn't, I mean, I, I think there's some individual differing opinions.
Right.
But I wasn't hearing from a majority of you, no improvement in the picnic facilities. I was hearing, I was hearing more modest improvement, not necessarily the level that was being described here.
Is that correctly, Mr. Draymond?
Yes, what I was going to say is, you know, I understand exactly what my colleague, Mr. Yusefian, is saying. But I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting, and I'm not hearing from anybody else, that it's, that it's one extreme or the other. I'm not hearing from these residents that what they want is a barren piece of land there. And I under, what I'm hearing is they acknowledge it's, it's, it has a use and it's going to serve a use. I certainly was not advocating no picnic facilities whatsoever. I was saying that I don't think, I'm not hearing a need to increase them. That's what I'm saying. And that's why, I think it's, especially when it gets late. And that's why, I think it's, especially when it gets late, and all this, when you have, you know, and we all do it, I do it too, soaring rhetoric that goes to one extreme or the other, it's not a cemetery, nobody's suggesting it become one, but I know that's not literally what--
No, that's not what I was saying.
But, but the, the point is, you know, we're discovering, I'm discovering anyway, some specifics about this particular neighborhood, and this particular neighborhood park, and as far as I've understood, not sitting up here, but sitting out there, but that's what you gentlemen, and your predecessors decided that these mini parks were supposed to do, they were supposed to serve the needs of these individual neighborhoods, where we can't put in a gigantic park. So let's try to do that.
But it's not a mini park.
I can't, I think the problem is--
Even if it's not a mini park, even if it's not a mini park.
Well, it's a neighborhood park.
Right.
It's a neighborhood park, and I don't think the neighborhood extends a mile on either side. That's not how I define neighborhood parks.
Technically, in the field, it's, it extends half a mile radius.
Yeah, I know.
But just a clarification, because the, the proposed picnic facility would add about sixty seats, I'm, I'm, want to try to understand, is that okay?
I can only speak for myself, Mr. Chapchin, what I'm saying is that I'm not talking about adding picnic facilities in addition, I mean, I'm not, what I'm saying is, I'm not hearing anybody saying, "No picnic facilities." I'm trying to, the extent of it.
I'd like to know what we have to do to keep the grant.
Well, let me, let me just--
Mr. Starber.
Just a basic question, without building a pavilion, and we already have a slab of concrete, just some additional picnic tables, for example, because we know people are sitting on blankets on the, on the grass. We have more picnic tables.
Can we see option four?
If we do the staining of the concrete, and we add more picnic tables, whether we put a cover over them or not, I mean, they, you noted that the, that the basketball court area is, is rather shaded by the existing trees.
I can add one other, add one other example and experience here, I grew up in an area where, as I grew up, we had a very large park, and Mr. Yusefian, it was not a mini park, it was a, and bigger than a, a neighborhood park, it was called Hindenburg Park, and it was owned by the American Nazi Party, American National Bund. It wasn't something that exactly reflected the, the needs and wishes of the local residents, but it was there, and eventually, the state of California and the county decided it doesn't reflect the needs of the neighborhood, and they eventually bought it, and now it's part of C V Park.
Oh, it is.
So, I mean, you know, it's, the whole idea here is to, to provide something that fosters the, a sense of, of quality of life for the residents in that neighborhood, so.
Which is?
Which is, apparently, some, something less heavy, facility-wise.
Okay, we all agree on that.
Option four, Mr. Draven, option four, staff showed it, I don't have option four here, I don't think any of us have options.
I don't have options.
Oh, yes.
That was moving everything over onto the court.
See, how, how big was the picnic?
Now, does that keep the grant, if we do that? Because that's what I'm concerned about.
Does the grant pay for the bathroom remodels?
No, well, that's a different, that's a different grant.
Oh, it's a different grant.
Right, and there is a deadline on that grant, I mean, we need to get the bathrooms renovated by March or June of this upcoming year.
What about the grant?
And the shelter as well.
The Mark was talking about.
Well, if we don't do it here, if we can't relocate it, we lose the grant.
What, what is that grant?
The Land and Water Conservation Fund?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars. For picnic shelter facility.
It has to be a shelter.
Right.
Picnic shelter.
A picnic shelter.
Okay.
Well, picnic facility is not necessarily a covered shelter. It has to be sheltered.
Yeah, forget it.
Okay, this is option four.
On the basketball court.
Where are your shelters?
Right.
Also, you have those two shelters there.
Right here, here.
Yeah.
If just the picnic tables under the shelter, all by itself, how many seating?
Sixty people.
Okay, are we, do we have to put that many, can we put like, three tables?
We can put less, and the only reason I added the extra tables is to fill up that slab, there's a lot of concrete, but we don't have to put--
Let's not, let's not put, let's not put any of those tables.
Mm-hmm.
Just what's under the, the, the shelter itself, how many?
Sixty people.
You're going to put sixty people under the shelters, all by itself?
The two ADA's, and the six.
Okay, and if you took--
About thirty each.
Four tables each, one, two, three, four.
Why don't you just do the round tables and spread them out?
Yeah, I, I mean, we could do that, the, the grant said a hundred people, but--
We scaled it back, at this point.
We scaled it back.
But you compressed them all together.
I think Mark may speak to the number of people.
Why don't you spread them out?
Go ahead, Mark, call us about that grant restrictions that we have.
Well, the original grant, the scope of work was larger than this, it was a shelter large enough to accommodate a hundred people, it had a number of sinks and barbecues involved, it was a very ambitious project, certainly much larger than this, and obviously much larger than what the, the local residents would be in mind. What I'm looking to do, once we have direction from council, I'm, I'm going to have to go back and change the scope of work on this grant, regardless of what's decided, because even in our changing it down to sixty, that's a different scope of work than what we had originally told the state we were going to attempt to accomplish. Now, I think, given the rising costs that we've seen in construction over the last, you know, four years, I think they would be agreeable to reducing the scope of the grant to accommodate sixty people. Not so sure that we get rid of the shelters and just scatter some tables around, that the state is going to consider that to be a, a fair use of the funds that they want to supply to us.
Well, by putting those, can we, can we deduct the, the cost of the slab, because now there's an existing slab, we don't have to put it in?
I can answer--
Part of the grant.
She expanded the slab.
What happens is that, it gets a little bit more complicated, because we can't, we now we have to core in the slab to put the foot in.
I understand that.
So it adds more cost to it, so you can't just deduct the slab out of it.
Okay.
We will get some savings if we don't have to put all these tables, the extra tables that are added, because I said here, it's, the balance is still about a hundred and fifty-two thousand for the project.
I see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve tables.
Twelve extra, yeah.
So if those twelve tables weren't there, and just had those two shelters with, let's say, four tables underneath it, so they weren't exactly right on the edge of the, the cover, would that, we can, can we do that?
We, we, yes, I have, I have to look at it a little bit, some of the tables may extend a little bit outside the edge of the shelter, but you're still talking about eight people each table.
Right, so you have one, two--
Four each.
If you have four, if you have a total of four, not each, total of four, for both sides.
A total of four, two under each?
Right, so you have eight, eight, sixteen, 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 thirty-two, so you're basically adding thirty-two.
Yeah, half of that.
So you do a scope of work for thirty-two.
Yeah, we could do that, certainly.
But you're assuming every table's going to be loaded to capacity.
That's how you calculate typically, and some even say--
But that's not the reality.
Yeah, I mean, reality will be different, maybe.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have the staff explore whether we can take this money and go to another location. I definitely want you to do that, and then the second behind that would be to, to try to lower the amount of--
And Councilman Conter, we certainly can do that, again, I think what you may end up facing is, you, what we're seeing really is the pressure on the parks at this point, they're all overused, if you go to Nibley Park on a weekend, you'll see that it's tremendously overused, all our parks are, we simply don't have enough space, so you may get the same pushback at the other parks at this point, on all of our parks that are near or abut neighborhoods, so we certainly can look at that, we can ask the state about that, the only parks that would qualify probably would be Palmer and Maple, that are in the same kind of geographic area, that serve the same demographics as this park does.
You, you made a good point, we're so underparked in this city, so tremendously underparked, I mean, and anybody living there is going to complain that it's being used too much, because we don't have--
And I have to tell you, I mean, we have weekend crews going through that, that park twice a day, through all our parks, and it's still a chore just to keep up with the use, let alone the maintenance of it from, from the overuse.
Mr. Starber, remind me where Cedar Park is going to be going?
Cedar is, um, it's only about six blocks from here, so Cedar's further out, it's, it's closer here to City Hall than it is, it's at Harvard and Cedar.
Much further.
Yeah.
Well, is, is there, is there a consensus on behalf of my colleagues to at least have the two shelters, but have only two tables under each shelter, which, this way, we can get part of the grant, but not have as many?
Mark is coming out of his chair again, I think we got to send it back to check that out.
Yeah.
We've given the other direction, we want fencing.
Mr. Starber.
If I can, this almost starts to be the tail wagging the dog, I mean, it is a hundred thousand dollar grant, it's, we hate to lose it.
Yeah.
But frankly, at the end of the day, it's not a very big grant, and if, if the concern is, you don't want to intensify the picnic use here, then I, it seems to me we don't go with the picnic shelter, if we, if we can transfer the grant, great, if we can't transfer the grant, then it's a grant we couldn't get, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant, it's not a three million dollar grant, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant. Again, staff works very hard, I'm not demeaning that, but we need to keep this in perspective, there's a bit of the tail wagging the dog here.
Yeah.
And if we don't think the use is right for this park, then let's conclude that, and we'll try and save the grant as best we can.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Okay, that--
I don't care, I just want--
That, that burning that you guys smell is me going down in flames, once again, I think it is--
No, 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 don't, don't be burning, flaming, none of that stuff, you know?
I just want to reiterate my concerns that--
Definitely don't do it outside, Mr. Mayor, it's outdoor, outdoor grilling.
It, it is a park, and one of, that is in a very high-demand area, we're talking about increasing facilities of picnic tables, not basketball courts, or skate park, or archery range, or a shooting gallery, these are parks where grandparents and grandkids and parents are going to come in and sit down and keep their backsides dry when the grass is, is damp, and off the dirt, and off the ants, and off the bugs, and have a peaceful, quiet evening, or day, or morning. The Car Park residents have a lot of issues going on, and it's not just a park, there's a lot of the, the high school parking and all that going on, I don't want you folks to transfer that animosity towards the school buses, and the outside high schools coming in and taking up your parking, to what is a park in a very sorely neglected part of town. I think we should at least add the picnic tables up to the--
Limit on the shelter.
Up to the limit of our shelter, so, Mr. Yusef.
I'm not going to vote for anything today, I think we're just going to give, because I have no clue, their stuff needs to come back, let me know what the cost is to do the front and the back, they gave me a number of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, I have no clue how they're going to fund that.
The fencing, you're saying.
The fencing, forty-five thousand dollars for the lights, we don't know where that money is coming, eighty-seven thousand dollars for trimming the trees, these are security stuff, and we don't know where that money is coming, and so the only thing that I am resolute to is the fact that I do not want to complete the basketball. What I would like to do, and if the staff will do the work, I'll be more than happy to pay for it, I want to send a notice to at least a thousand feet, or, or no, more than that, you know what, send it to a thousand residents around that park, letting them know that we would like to have their opinion, what they think of this park. I do not want to make a decision at this point, based on four people here, coming there, and considering this to be the residence. If we want to know the residents, I really want to know the residents, I will pay for the cost of that mailing, personally from my account, I will pay for it, I want to know what people think about that, and if they say we don't want any use of, of, whatever picnic parks, so be it, by golly, I'll vote for it, but I want to know what they think, truly.
If you do that, then you send those letters to the people in Los Angeles.
No, 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 no.
Because it's right on the border.
Thousand people in city of Glendale.
Well, then you're leaving--
In this area.
On the holy side, that's not logical.
No, 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 on this area, now, I don't care about Los Angeles, let, let Viragosa take care of Los Angeles.
How did we know?
I could throw a stone and hit Los Angeles from that park.
Right. Um, we notified the people that, we notified the people that showed up at the, at the neighborhood meeting that we held with Public Works, we took that list.
And then how was that posted?
Um, George, you, you notified them, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, by email, or by?
By email and by--
Phone, yeah.
You've had community meetings down there, right?
We didn't have a community meeting down there, no, regarding this issue, we let them know that this was an issue that was coming up before the council.
That pretty much how we always do it?
Um, well, we normally have a community meeting when there's a new park design, um, and this is ju, this was just a replacement of a, of an element.
So we haven't done that?
No, we certainly can do that, so.
As I said an hour ago, we weren't going to make a decision today.
That's a motion, are you making a motion for staff to?
They didn't even do a community meeting, so how do we know? This is based on four people.
Well, I know one thing, that we need to start working on security there, so we don't need to send any--
We agree with that.
Questions about, we need to start designing the fence, to close it up at night, and--
And no basketball, we agree with that, and better maintenance and cleanup, we agree with that.
And the trees.
Not, don't mess with the trees too much.
Yeah, right, not too much.
Thinning them because of the security.
Right.
It wouldn't be thinning too much, it would just raise the level.
We're okay with the sixteen lights, or whatever was proposed, so it's really just this picnic table issue that I think we're, we're stuck on, right, I mean, everything except that, I think we're all on the same page.
Pretty much, number, yeah.
Right, so, what can you do for us?
Certainly can send out notices and have a meeting at the park, about the picnic shelter, if that's what you'd like us to.
He's paying for it.
Let me know when that meeting is, I want to be there, and my colleagues are welcome, I assume.
Good idea.
So, uh, let's, you know, I'll be more than happy, just, just let me know what the cost is, be writing your check.
Okay. We're sending those registered mail, by the way.
Oh, so it'll cost me--
We're not, we're overnighting them.
You know what?
Return receipt requested.
You know what? Send them registered mail.
Okay.
It'll cost me a dollar fifty a piece.
Now, do we need a motion on this, or are we sending it back for direction with these comments?
Going back for direction with these comments.
Okay, so that's--
You certainly can't adopt the resolution, because that transfers grant money, which we, which you may not have.
Right, and they need to come to us and give us a source where they're going to do all this and design.
Let's go, let's get out of here before midnight, guys.
Please, please.
Okay, thank you, George, and George, and Lila, and Mark, and Mr. Consultant, I forgot your name, sorry, and residents for coming by, and everyone, okay, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, H is interim director of Glendale Water and Power regarding implementation of city of Glendale voluntary water conservation, at G1 is resolution implementing section thirteen point three six point zero six zero, and thirteen point thirty six point zero seven zero A of the Glendale Municipal Code, thirteen point three six water conservation.
Mr. Mayor, move A G1 second.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I was going to ask Peter just to come up in three minutes, three minutes, and tell us what we have here, so people at home--
Right, if we're asking them to voluntarily do something, they might as well know what is it we're asking them to do.
Can you give it to us in three minutes, Peter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Peter Cabunas, Water Services Administrator, I appreciate the lateness of the hour, I appreciate your indulgence in this, this is a serious matter that we're bringing to you, at this stage, we are recommending that you adopt a resolution implementing voluntary conservation of ten percent, you're, you would be invoking a portion of the municipal code, that in and of itself is a good precaution measure, your, your agenda item includes some of the hydrologic conditions in the state that are requiring and really making this recommendation come to you tonight. What I would like to bring to your attention is that in addition to a hydrologic drought, we're facing what is euphemistically called also a regulatory drought, so I would like to caution you that you should not be too surprised if later in this year, or early next year, we come back to you and recommend perhaps a mandatory conservation. At this point in time, the prudent thing to do, and what's being done all over Southern California, is a voluntary 10% conservation. We're sincerely hoping this message will get out.